All right, this time we're going to call it the order of the spring retreat of Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Wednesday, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one at twelve thirty P M. At the old Council Elementary School. And for the record, we have three commissioners here, we have one on the way, and we have a fourth commissioner who is present by Zoom, so we have a quorum present. So, welcome everyone, thank you for joining us. This is a bit of housekeeping, their restrooms at the end of this hall if you guys need to use it. And Derek has had some built-in breaks, so we'll kind of, once we get started, we'll turn everything over to Derek and let him go forward with it. So this time we're going to have an invocation and then the pledge, please stand.
Father, thank you for this opportunity to meet today, help us to have good fellowship and make wise decisions as we plan for the future of Franklin County. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we need to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting as presented?
I make a motion that we approved the agenda as presented.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Westers made a motion to approve the agenda, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Foster seconded the motion, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion will carry three to zero. All right, at this time, we're going to turn everything over to our county manager, Mr. Turner, to go through the agenda of each of the items. Mr. Turner?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, fantastic. All right, so essentially what we have, welcome to the spring retreat, this is something that we do on a constant basis, this is just a planned session, just to go through a few things, get an understanding of what our plans are for the future. So a little bit about the purpose of this, just to go through, so everybody's on the same page about that. Purpose of the retreat is for us to discuss the direction of the county long range, so mid to long range planning, so we're talking more in the three to five year plans, and how we're going to achieve those goals. This is not all inclusive of everything that goes into our planning, so we do have topics today, I could probably make a topic A through Z and then on to double A and beyond. But this is just a set of topics, not all inclusive of everything that we're going to be doing within the county. Whenever we're looking at this, we're asking commissioners to focus their energy on strategic planning, looking at just those things, those major initiatives that we have, how are we going to get to those, and then from that point, once we've made those decisions strategically, then myself, county manager, will then go forward with the departments to implement on how to reach those goals. So this again is just the agenda as it's posted, of the topics that we're going to go through. And all these topics are up for discussion, so these aren't just informational, some of these are a little bit more informational, but we are open to questions and discussion on any of these topics, so we want to make sure that we're talking through these, just to make sure we understand exactly what they, what they mean for us, how we're going to get to those goals, and anything associated to those. All right, so you have packets in front of you as well that go through everything on the agenda, slideshow, also specific information going through these topics. A lot of these are just backup documentation to just give us a glimpse into what we're looking at and give a good understanding of where we're trying to get them. So the first one that we're looking at within that is looking at our grants. So kind of with the first thought, I think I might hear about Franklin coming in. Is it down?
Okay.
We'll pause just for a second just so we can get him in here. All right, there we go.
Robert.
Um, how you do, sir?
Robert, there's a cheap flight box over there, bathroom's down the hall. We just got started, so.
Yeah, we just started, so you haven't missed anything. But like I was just mentioning to the rest of commissioners, in that packet that you have right in front of you is all documentation, the slideshow, and backup documentation for everything that we're covering today, so we're getting to the first topic of grants. All right, so kind of going through the topic of grants, we're just looking at that, we're looking to the future and that prospect of applying to more grants, and we just need to sort of have the thought process of how do we do that, what that's going to take for us to get those grants. Right now, we're probably in a position to where, within this fiscal year, we don't have as much opportunity to kind of go beyond the grants and pass some deadlines, of course. But what we look for in the future is different type of programming, so we want to think about our grants and applying to those from a programming standpoint. If we apply to a grant, then how does that facilitate to the county? So we want to make sure as we just look at those, and I've got kind of just a few grants listed within this packet to sort of think about and things that we'll apply to in the future in this next fiscal year. So looking at community development block grant. And as we go forward within the fiscal year and into the next one, we can get into more information about the individual grants and what that means, but these are just general grants that we can take a look at that can be helpful for the county as far as any growth that we're looking at, any development that we're looking at. So for instance, that first one, the community development block grant, C D B G, is something I would say typically a lot of areas use for either infrastructure projects, looking at sidewalks, those type of, those type of maintenance items that you have. Other things that we can look at, and I know that we have this issue with BLITE is something, the chip that's right underneath that, the Community Home Investment Program. So, for instance, with a grant such as that, that's an instance where we're able to get a grant, we're able to give a certain amount of dollars to homeowners to help rehab their homes. Now, I know some cases where you have actual BLITE and where it fits the state description of BLITE, it might not be possible to give, say, eight thousand dollars to someone to actually fix their home, sometimes they're beyond that repair. But this could be a situation to where if you have homes that are, you know, need minor sprucing up or whatever the case may be, they're able to apply to that grant through us to then fix those areas of their home. So those are the type of things we want to think about in terms of the programming, when I say the programming of it, is we have to build that structure to where we're saying, well, we're going to give that hundred thousand dollars, this is the way we're going to receive applications or disburse.
Could, could that kind of, could a chip grant be used to help pay the cost of cleaning up properties that the owners refuse to clean up or are not able to clean up? So for instance, if there's code enforcement?
So I think it does have some capabilities towards that, this one's not a hundred percent restrictive, but it is more of a minimal. I think it usually, I think it typically caps at about eight thousand dollars, something in that ballpark typically. So it could, so if we, so if we're thinking that could be the case to where someone needs it for that specific purposes, we would just need to outline exactly what that looks like for us, how they're applying the dispersments, and then the follow-up to how they're then going to use it and actually fix the issue. Just kind of looking at a couple of these as well, first responders, I just kind of listed some of these, because I think these are some of the maybe more attainable grants and easy to manage for us, just that we can maybe have a little bit of opportunity to go through and get these types of funds. First responders, addiction recovery, so I mean, I know we're looking at our inmate list, we do have people that have possession and whatnot. So those are opportunities that we can help build the community with and help that recovery process in some form or fashion. Looking at the facilities, direct loan, the grant program, being able to upgrade facilities. So there's a lot of options, and of course, this is not an all-inclusive list, but this is just sort of the first thoughts to that. The other thing that we have to think about too, when we're talking about grants, is we're going to have to think about the protection of, in the budget, having, say, contingency funds that are available for anything that requires a matching grant. So for instance, like the C D B G grant that first one listed, requires a matching amount. So we will have to, so we will have to, if we say we're going to shoot for getting more grants, we have to just understand that we have to have that contingency amount into the budget, and we can kind of talk through what we think would be more ideal. But it's just something that we have to that if we are ready to proceed with any type of grant funding, we're able to do that, and there's not a hold. I mean, of course, we can always kind of shift things around, but I would say it might be more important for us to think about actually having dedicated funds that we say keep in a contingency that are used for that purpose and any other emergency purpose that we see fit.
Do we have anything like that set aside right now for any grants that are outstanding?
No, we don't, we don't have that specifically set up.
Okay.
So what this would look like would be us putting into the, sort of, I guess, from what you see the budget, we would have a separate line item. So usually, I think that's five, three, seven, nine hundred line item for the G L. For that of actual contingency. And that money really is just sent there for approval for whatever we are going to go for, so this would be a situation to where, if we say we're putting a quarter million dollars within that fund for contingency, we can set up a structure for us to where I can come before the board and say, okay, well, we have this money here, we can get permission to say, well, I want to use fifty thousand dollars to apply for this grant or whatever grant may be. And it can be an approval process that way, so that if there is any contingency, you're able to track exactly what's been used in contingency for the course of a year. So it just kind of gives a little bit of a check and balance in that case. But, but I'll open up the floor to any discussion to grants that you may have or any questions that you may have.
I, I know that the volunteer fire departments, a lot of them are putting in for grants to try and get money for equipment and everything.
Yes.
Would that be something, maybe you could attend a association meeting to sort of let them know that, you know, we can help with some of this that, you know, they may be needing help with?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I know there's been, I know our fire department has gotten one of the grants, and I think there may be one or two other ones that's gotten them.
Is that what they applied for the first of the year, the double churches?
Yes.
That, uh, the G R N, am I saying that right? G R N C was going to help with?
Yeah.
G M R C?
Yeah, I think that might be the name, yeah, I know I just sent in a letter about the grant we just did receive through one of the fire departments last week. So, so yeah, oh yeah, so those are good opportunities.
You know, some of these departments may need some help in looking at how to write them or get sort of a good direction on what, how they need to go about to get to some of these things and all, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, and again, like I've kind of mentioned in the past of looking at grant writing and as we're getting to a volume of grants, we do have resources of G M R C. That can help us with that grant writing, which I don't mind helping them at all in writing any of those, but if we do start to get to a certain volume, depending on the timing, deadline-wise, then it'll be something where we probably want to reach out to G M R C. Get that assistance. I need to meet with them.
And it may be something good that we just go ahead and partner them with them, you know, but I don't know if all the departments know how to go to G M R C.
Right, right.
And I'm not sure who it was we used on the first grant that we received.
Right.
But I know, you know, we put in for a couple more grants since then and haven't got them, but, but I just know they're very big. Because like for us, we had to, we had to replace every one of our air packs because the, the codes were changing on what you had to have. And thankfully, we got that grant to replace all the air packs, and it actually gave us enough money to buy a trailer with an enclosed cascade system to refill air tanks.
Yeah, so I did meet with G M R C., I think that was maybe about three weeks ago, just kind of talking through that of getting that assistance from them. So they have kind of then at least made aware that that's something that we're going to be looking forward to in this next fiscal year. And even with the matching on some of those, like I said, it's kind of just a number to talk through down the line. I know the one that we just got last week that we accepted, I believe, was a grant for about twenty-two thousand, I think it was, and our matched portion of that was only about twenty-five hundred. So it just varies depending upon what the grant is, but a lot of the grants, as you'll kind of see, they really just want to make sure that you have funds to actually do the project. So they want to make sure if you're saying that you're going to, I don't know, build a road, you actually have the money to build the road if something were to happen with the grant funding. There's a lot of the premise to it, so you're kind of just a funds checklist for you. Any other thoughts towards grants or that process or any specific needs we may see in them? All right, we'll keep moving. All right, next topic we're talking about is just talking about S P L O S. And this is a little bit more informational on this one, just so we kind of are on the same page and understanding of that. Just looking at our S P L O S that's going to be coming up here soon. We know that S P L O S is important to what we need funding-wise, how we do a lot of things, the ability to get a lot of things done. So looking at how we're going to do that, we're really going to take the opportunity to use our social media, use other methods just to make sure that the community is strongly aware of what S P L O S does for us. You know, I think a little bit of looking at items like this is really just the community education and making sure that everybody just understands what S P L O S means, what it does for us, because usually a lot of times whenever people hear S P L O S, then they immediately think about just, well, I'm getting taxed. And that's just, and that's just the nature of it. But what we have to do and be better about within that is just giving the understanding of this is what it does. So, you know, it may be situations to where we're able to highlight that, you know, we bought a fire truck in those cases, you know, whatever the case may be, what we've used that for. I would also suggest that as we're looking at S P L O S and things that we're funding with S P L O S, we make that investment towards signage that, that is there. So you sometimes will see your, this, this park was built with the pennies from your S P L O S. Something along that nature that they usually have signage for, those are just things that really help give an understanding and highlight what the uses of those funds are, because if it's just sort of put out as S P L O S, then that's more viewed as tax. And anybody that says tax is not good. But if you're seeing what the actual value of it is, then in that case, we're able to show that, you know, yes, it is a tax, but it's also the thing to highlight too, is a tax that's paid for by anybody that purchases within the county. So people that are coming through here, and that would be the importance of the tourism, the people coming in from out of state, out of town, because they're contributing to that with their purposes too. So I think just information-wise, this is just something that we want to really highlight and put a focus towards on, out of our offices to make sure that people understand what S P L O S is, what it is doing for the community, and it's not just saying, well, hey, we want to incur a tax. Anything on S P L O S?
We, we've gotten a lot of questions lately, I don't know what it is, people want to know, well, how much of the S P L O S money came from the interstate, you know, where it sells? That's not, that's not sorted that way, is it? I mean, there's no way to pull down and say, well, this came, because what they're trying to say, figure out is how much came from out of town, and there's, there's no real way to do that, is there?
No, no, because even, even if they broke it down for something more regional to the interstate, that doesn't necessarily dictate that it's out of town.
It's out of town.
So it's not really, there's not really a way to break that down to say.
That's what I thought.
Who, who contributed in what ways.
Right.
But I mean, I, I would probably answer those questions from anybody in saying that, I mean, you got to think about when you have gas stations at the interstate, anybody that's stopping at those gas stations, and I mean, if you just drive by those gas stations and truck stops, you see trucks and cars there, right? So you're probably going to make a strong assumption that there is a decent amount of people that are coming from outside of the community that are contributing to S P L O S.
How, how long is a S P L O S cycle, is it, is it five, six years?
Uh, five.
Five years, yeah.
We can put a big sign up in front of our fire department, because S P L O S actually built, or built for our fire department. And I think we did that with the second S P L O S that the county got.
Yeah, so, so yeah, so I, so I think it's really important that we do highlight those, those type of things, just because it's, it, it just shows as people see that, you know, what those dollars physically went to. I mean, we could make a list of things all day, but whenever they can physically see this park, this fire, this firehouse, X, Y, and Z, where you were built with these funds, that's just an understanding that everybody knows this is where it went. And then, and they can ask that question anyway, we're happy to provide that if people want to know what that answer is anyway, but it just does give an automatic.
Our station's right on fifty-one, so.
Do y'all have anything out there, do y'all have signs like now, currently? I'm just, that it was paid with S P L O S?
No, we don't have anything like that, and I mean, it would be good to have that, because, I mean, at least two of our fire trucks were paid for by S P L O S.
I think I see it mostly for E S P L O S, because I think school system does a lot.
Yeah, but yeah, I mean, it'd be good to put a sign out there to let everybody know that that's what their S P L O S didn't went for.
Yeah, it's, it's just something to let everybody know, because if you don't know the difference in between the funding sources, I mean, then you just kind of think government paid for this. And we're more segregated to where we can show exactly, you know, general fund versus the various funds, what has been paid for in different sources. So I think that is an important thing, we can, I mean, that's something I think we could probably even look at doing right now and going forward, just to take a look and see what, what item we have purchased, whether it be the current or past S P L O S, and make sure that we're making the community aware of, of where that came from. And we don't have to designate necessarily which S P L O S it was, I mean, at the end of the day, if it's, if it's S P L O S, it's S P L O S. So we just want to make sure to highlight that that's where the funds did come from originally from.
This new one would be S P L O S six, or would it be seven, six?
Uh, this would be six.
Okay.
Yeah, S P L O S six. And those are the type of things that help us to really make sure that, that S P L O S continues, that cycle continues. So as long as, if people feel like it's of no value, then they don't want to have it. But if we show that S P L O S is of value, it's a little bit easier for us to go into those cycles and say, well, this is the value for it, you know, without it, okay, well, you don't have fire station, whatever the case may be, here's your value.
Probably need to do some kind of education too out there to let people know that this is not adding another penny to it, this is just continuing what we've already been doing. Because that's a big thing for people, they, they see it and they think, well, we're adding another penny, why are we doing that?
Right. Yeah, so, so I think just the way that we deliver messages is important, make sure that we're delivering those messages in that right way, so that it's not an added cost to people, it's just continuation of what we have been doing. So I mean, obviously with us being in S P L O S five, we've been doing this for a little while, so we just want to make sure everybody does understand that. Those S P L O S are very important to the community.
Yeah.
Anything else on S P L O S for anybody?
When money's not spent like, you know, I know there's money left in old S P L O S, well, how do we handle that when there's money left over in old S P L O S? Does it just sit out there just to?
So, so usually what will happen if you have money sitting in an old S P L O S is, whatever projects we've kind of already designated upcoming that qualify for usage on that, you might then have to go back and sort of use that one up, so if we had S P L O S three, then we would try to use that little bit of S P L O S three and then sort of move forward to get to the current, just to make sure we are using those funds.
We've used, didn't we recently do something, we used up what was left of three?
Yeah, there shouldn't be anything left in three.
So, so we're just now on four and five?
Yeah, it should just be four and five. Yeah, it should just be four and five. And then that cycle just continues, so we'll probably, I mean, there could be the likelihood if we get to a six, that we still have a little bit of four. But then there, we just sort of make sure we just designate whatever that project is, use that and go forward up to the current.
How specific do we get on, I've had questions before, how specific do we get on, on S P L O S things as far as?
Like project list?
Like project list?
Uh, and I think, I think going forward to me, it's going to be to where, and, and we'll talk about this upcoming, but for me, it's more we list out what those projects we have projected towards the usage of S P L O S, and that's sort of our C I P., our five-year plan.
Okay.
Just so that then people are aware of that, and we update, we update the C I P. Every year, and we'll get into that a little bit deeper later.
Okay.
Uh, but just make sure that you do have that listing out there and a plan for it. All right, any other S P L O S questions? All right, I wanted to take a second to talk too about the potential of T S P L O S. So we've kind of gone through it, talked about S P L O S, and, you know, we understand and we want to make sure we're projecting to the community the importance of all the S P L O S, what these mean, what they do for the community. I think that even though timing is a little bit tough, you know, having had the E S P L O S, then we'll have S P L O S, the potential of a T S P L O S. So kind of with the understanding of T S P L O S is a little bit more towards your transportation, so it's a transportation S P L O S. With that, that's talking about a little bit more the future of the maintenance of our roads. Now, obviously, we know that we have some issues with our ability to a hundred percent maintain every road. We do get the L M I G. Grant at about half a million, I think it is, but, you know, how far does half a million get you in the course of a year? You know, with it being projected that, you know, a mile of road could cost three quarters of a million, you know, depending on the process that you're using for that road. But it would be something to think about with thinking towards a T S P L O S, just so that if we can show the value in that too, again, it's another, what's the value add in that? And this would be a case where, yes, it is added tax, so this would be added pennies to the tax, to the tax base. But flip side of that is, the value of it is, is your road more well-maintained? So I mean, I guess as we kind of look at it, and that's why I have the slide as such of looking at, you know, well, we have, well, and we have all three of these, so it's a good interpretation for us of, we have dirt roads, we have some dirt roads, we do have some gravel roads, and we do have some paved roads. So now what does that mean in terms of a T S P L O S and how we can then maintain the roads? You know, does it mean that the dirt roads are more maintained, manicured, or up kept in some type of way? Does it mean we turn all the dirt roads into gravel roads and maintain them in that fashion? Does it allow us the ability to have more paved roads? At, you know, looking at that, that's the thought process that we want to have towards that and what we can do with those type of funds. So it might be a situation to where we're not necessarily saying we want to pave more roads, because, you know, if that T S P L O S ever run out, then you have to still think about the maintenance on the back end of that. But could it be a situation to where we're able to gravel more roads and maybe gravel them in a way that is more productive to us? Is it a way that with our paved roads, we're able to get, say, like a hot box to where we're filling in holes or maybe adding to the, the life expectancy of that road and not having to pave it as frequently? So those are a little bit of the thought processes as I look at T S P L O S and what we can do within that. The other thought that I have within T S P L O S two, that I kind of have in this, is the thought of, you know, we're looking at how we want to grow the county. And there's, and there's a lot of options for this of what I'm about to say, but, you know, we have a lot of roads that aren't properly maintained or aren't extremely well drivable, I guess you could say, and from the calls I get in some places. Could this be the opportunity that we look at that says, okay, well, we're asking people to come and build, you know, quarter billion, half million dollar home in such area, we could better maintain a road? Now, I, I know there is the thought of, you know, they knew that the road was not, you know, serviceable maybe when they bought the home or built the home, but on the flip side of that, for our thought processes, we want to think, okay, well, if we're saying we want to attract people and we want them to build those homes, you know, is that the image that we want to have as we're bringing more people into the county? So it is, it is a hard bargain, just because like I said, E S P L O S, S P L O S, T S P L O S would be right behind it. But long range, we're thinking about, okay, well, what would be that projection that we have as people want to move to Franklin County and build those homes? Is that a situation where we're more discouraging them because, you know, people don't drive their road and think, well, is, is this a county road? Is this a road that the county maintains, or is this, is this a private road? You know, nobody drives their roads thinking that, you know, ride on the interstate and think, well, you know, is this federal property or is this belong to somebody else? You just know you're on the interstate, federal property, driving in Franklin County, it's county property. And that would be the thought process, so thinking about that in terms of that type of thought, is that what we want to project?
I, I think long-term, last year, we were able to reduce the millage rate by a quarter, and that was the first time in a long time that we, in a lot of years, that we've reduced that. And we can't trade millage rate reductions for T S P L O S, but what we can show where possible is that, that, you know, we're conservative with our, with our budget and that we're willing to. But what we can show where possible is that, you know, we're conservative with our budget and that we're willing to reduce taxes gradually. You know, if we did a quarter a year for a few years, just to show people that in good faith, we are managing our resources and we're trying to reduce the tax burden overall. And that might be a way to help make it more palatable to pass a T-SPOSS, you know, at some point. Because it is going to coincide, you know, with the E-SPOSS we just did and the renewal of the SPOSS that's coming up.
Right.
But I think from a board standpoint, I mean, we need to look at it that way. But that's one way we can make it more acceptable if we're able to do that. And I know there are a lot of things we have to balance, but long term, I think that ought to be part of our plan. What do you guys think?
I mean, I think as long as we show that we're being fiscally responsible with the money that we're getting and we are trying to do, you know, whatever kind of cuts we can for them. And I think it, it would speak volumes about trying to do a T-SPOSS. So that, because, you know, I mean, the biggest argument that you hear out there is half the people in the county are paying all of the taxes.
And they're not getting services.
Yeah. And so if you can show them that, you know, we're trying to lower the tax burden on you by us being fiscally responsible. But we also need help in maintaining our infrastructure also. So in order for us to be able to keep doing that, a T-SPOSS is a very viable thing that everybody helps pay for, not just our taxpayers.
That's so much fairer. Everybody contributes to that. And it's people coming in and out from outside the county, but they're still using our roads.
Right. Yeah, so that is a good.
The complaints I get is the road condition throughout the county.
Yep.
I think it's way past time to update our roads. And, I mean, it's becoming a problem. I think we all know it's something we have to address at some point.
Well, that, I'm sorry. Quickly.
We can hear you.
Okay.
You're good.
Last year at the retreat in the fall, we talked, we broached the idea of maybe doing a few of the private roads, like scraping gravel, ditch to ditch. Dividing them up and doing so many every year, just so that in maybe a four-year period, they get, they're getting some attention, even though, you know, they're still. I just, I don't know, we need, we need to find out, is that legal? The county used to do that. But maybe that's not a legal use of funds to do that. But if it is, if it's something in our discretion, I think we should figure out what that would cost in terms of gravel and time. And see if that's something we can do too. And that way, people at least see that their road's getting some attention, you know, and that's a long-term solution, but.
Yeah, and I have had discussions with staff about looking at some options, what we can do and how we can do it. Because obviously I get those calls too, and I've had some people come in to meet and that's fine. I don't have any issue with that. But just to talk about that, and, you know, at the end of the day, they want some solution to their problem. You know, my answer doesn't get to be that, you know, hey, sorry, it's not our road, so move along. You know, we don't get to respond in that way. So looking at, so we are working right now to try and look at some longer-term solutions, see if there's some kind of, those type of things, the very light. It might be the minimum that can be done to that road.
Right.
Maybe it does help with the overall activity on the road. So we just do need to think in terms of long-term, whether it be a T-SPOSS, whether it be something that we're kind of setting aside money or allocating money towards. You know, doing the bare minimum to make the road at least tenable for them. Because I think that can get us into a little bit of a problem when we're talking about, you know, like I said, people looking at the road. They don't, they don't know the difference between a private and a county road as they go on that. And it's not like we're going to go out and put signs there that state such. But, you know, we want to make sure as people go throughout the county, there's that consistency within the product that's delivered. I guess would be the way to think about that.
A lot, a lot of those roads, I bet it's been ten, fifteen years since anything's been done to them. Because they're private roads and a lot of the times, the people that live on the road don't even realize it's private. And that right now, if anybody had to do anything to it, it should be the property owners, but they don't understand that. So maybe if there was something we could do even occasionally to at least give it some attention. Because even though it's a private road, the police still use it, the mail still uses it, delivery, school buses. So, so there is some argument that we, even if it's a private road, we should try to do something, you know, to make it better.
We've also had some roads brought up, brought to us. And I can't remember the name of the road now, but it's off of Carytown Road. And they come before us trying to get the county to take it over. There was one person that would not sign off on giving right away. And so we talked about doing ditch to ditch, but then I think it come down to the road needed so much work just to get it up to. You know, where it's in decent shape, that the county just couldn't do it at that time. And even if we're just going in there and doing the bare minimum to help with it, you know, maybe it's something, you know, down the line, we can take it up for them and everything. Because, I mean, unfortunately, not everybody on these roads is, are going to be financially able to. Or they don't have the equipment to help with it or anything like that. So, I mean, I think anything that we could do to just sort of help move in a better direction would really be good for these people that had these roads.
And T-SPOSS isn't an end-all, be-all. I mean, we don't give a T-SPOSS and all of a sudden, all of our roads are a hundred percent.
Yep.
It would take us some time. I mean, you do have those roads that haven't had any attention. And even if we work up to do the minimum up until a T-SPOSS is available, we're still talking about some year. It'd still be quite a few years before we really could probably catch ourselves up. So, I mean, barring, and there's still a chance that maybe some things change. Maybe we get a few big businesses in that greatly increase the tax base and make more funding available. That might be something that's possible that might accelerate it. But I'd probably still say, even if we did have the T-SPOSS, we're still talking about considerable amount of time before you could probably say all the roads are brought up to whatever standard we say.
We're, oh, sorry.
A lot of roads in the county, the county worked them. And then all of a sudden, these are not county roads, they're private roads. So nobody had the gall to send these people letters or anything. They just got, bang, they're not going to gravel it, they're not going to scrape it. There's one in particular of a prospect, it got so bad that the mailman wouldn't go down there. So they had to move their boxes out to the street. And that road's still that way. People that own it, who try to get signatures to go from ditch to ditch, well, they live way off. They don't, they may come there and hunt on it and that's it. So the people that actually live in there suffer from it. The school bus won't, can't go down in there. It's awful. And, you know, I feel for people like that. Coast and Rose, one of them. Those people just got cut off. And then there was a lady who had cancer. It was so bad that the ambulance couldn't even get out there to pick her up. But we, thank God, we finally got it taken care of. And this road off of one oh six, those people got done the same way. So, you know, people want to know upfront what's happening. Don't just leave me out here in the cold. I don't know. I mean, the sheriff's department have to go out there occasionally to serve papers or something. And, man, it's rough. So I wish there was something we could do, you know, to, these people pay taxes, but they don't get nothing. Boom, I don't get nothing for it.
Do, last year, we talked about that. Do we, do we have some sort of estimate? Did we do, do you know if we did like a revenue projection? I was thinking it was like one point five, two something million that a T-SPOSS might bring in a year. I can't remember.
I have a file, I don't remember exactly.
I don't remember the, it may have been higher than that.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly.
It was a lot higher than seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I definitely think it's a good place to start.
Yeah. Like I said, and like I said, that is still a little bit off in the distance for us a few years. So, you know, we still look at within this budget and going forward, is there something that we can do at a minimum to try to help that? And just communicate too with those homeowners because, you know, we don't, we don't want them to feel like they're just contributing and getting nothing out of the government. Out of these services. We don't want to have situations where all of our other services, sheriff's offices and everyone else included, either can't go down the road. Or they have trouble, or we're tearing up our, you know, we got to think about too, we're tearing up our equipment potentially going down those type of roads in some scenarios. So, I mean, then we have vehicle costs. So now everybody's got to pay for a vehicle to be fixed because of a road. So this is a little bit in the very broad, long, long range of planning to think about that and how we want to do that. But if we, you know, want to take a look at these plots and see what those projections are, you know, like I said, this is still off in the distance. We could take a look at what those projections are. We could take a look and see what that means to us, start to get that feeling and understanding. I'm starting to get roads information from staff just so we can sort of see and start to sort of put the puzzle together just a little bit better of what that picture looks like to me. But that could still be something that we talk about continuing and then make a decision at a later date.
You know, and I think too, some of these private roads, they are very close to other dirt roads that would do work, that are county roads. You know, maybe if we've got the scraper that's working that one road, they can run down, you know, that small private road that the county hadn't taken over and just sort of graded. And maybe we put a little gravel on it or, you know, or whatever, but we just sort of try to do something. You know, something else you get into is, excuse me, we got, we got called out to that, that one road there off of Carytown Road. Because they had a tree during the storm, a tree come down across the road. And they called the county, well, you know, the county said, well, unfortunately, it's a private road. We can't do anything for it. But thankfully, they told them, you know, call nine one one and they can get the fire department to come cut it out. And that's, you know, that's fine. We went out there and cut it out of the road and everything. But, you know, then you're also running the risk of you got personnel and a fire truck tied up. What if something else happened?
Yeah, if we, if we do that, SPOSS, I think we're going to have to add more people to our, I think the road department has been, had fewer people cut back maybe a decade ago. I don't know if that's ever really been added back. So that's something we're going to look at too. Is that adding another employee or two? Probably more equipment too. I know if we did T-SPOSS and we are going to do a lot more of that in-house, we're going to need more equipment.
But I think it might just be taking a look at and then as we go along, maybe make some decisions about whether we want to venture down that path or what that's going to mean. Because like I said, I mean, with us having the opportunity to, you know, maybe look at some of those roads and do even the minimum, you know. You got to think as we're going down there, do you really want those situations of go down a road about, you know, sorry, we can't, we can't help you. I know you're a Franklin County, but we can't, we can't do anything with it. It's not our road. Versus, you know, our ability to then maybe have some more resources that we can then help those people. We want everybody to feel like we're serving that general public instead of serving everybody and not be sort of, this is our set. And that you guys are sort of over here for us. So it's not a dismissal of some of our citizens. Any other T-SPOSS thoughts? All right. Up to building and land acquisitions. So kind of the thought within this that I have is just looking at the opportunity for land and building purchases. Thought behind that would be where do we see the county and its growth overall in the next five to ten years? An opportunity then when we're saying land and building acquisitions would be the prospect of, is it worth us buying a certain patch of land that might be good for development at a later date? Is there a building that we could purchase that might be of use to us or could be restored or sold for development at a later date too? So it's sort of thinking about the net present value of what those purchases mean. Because if we say, if there was a piece of land right outside of here that we said was good for development, that was for sale for a hundred thousand dollars today. You know, you got to think about what would the cost of that be three to five years from now? You know, it's not, it's probably not going to be that. Or what's the value of it? It's probably not going to be that same value. So getting in on the forefront of that and then taking a look at what we think the county is venturing towards is just a thought towards that. There's not any specific land that I'm thinking necessarily. But I think as we're just traveling throughout the county and we're looking at things or any for sale or whatever the case may be. It might be something that we want to think about in terms of, you know, would that be an area that, you know, the county could use? Or is there a development we look at even for ourselves down the line? Maybe it's an outside development, private development. That's sort of that thought too. It's that it gives us a little bit more control too, depending on those situations as far as what comes in. So as you look at any type of developments that maybe didn't want to buy that land or the building, we're in possession of it. So it gives us a little bit more flexibility to say, okay, well, vaping store wants to come and buy this building from us to put a vape store. Okay, is that something we want to do? Yes or no? Now we have the option of saying we can sell this building or not sell this building. So those are the thoughts behind that. You know, in particular, and I know that you have, I think, some documentation in there too, is just sort of looking at like the old DFAX building. That I think I have sort of a sketchy picture of in there. It was dark and there was no power, so it wasn't the best picture. But just sort of as we're thinking through some of these couple areas that we did at least take a look at that have come available or might have potentially been available. Is that old DFAX building that if there's a use that we would see fit now in the future? That could be something that's of value to us if we think that's appropriate. Also too, as you sit here in the elementary school, now we don't know the exact plans of the, of the school board and what their plans with this building are. But just looking at what the prospect of something like that, I know that ideally, we would love to have sort of one government center where we have all of our departments under one roof. Or, you know, good board of departments under one roof. How do we get to that point? It would take either us building our own building or it takes the renovation of a building. So that's the thought behind that. So any thoughts towards that type of planning and projection?
I think we need to take a close look at this building. It's not as bad as we may have talked about before. And it's an opportunity right here by the square to put everybody together. And it's got a big meeting space. It's got great parking. I think we should look closely at this building.
I think definitely, I mean, if we're going to look at doing that, I think we definitely, definitely need to look at this building more closely than the old DFAX building. I just, the old DFAX building, I just, I'm not comfortable with. This building, I think I would be a little bit more comfortable with looking at doing that because I think it could provide a lot of what we're looking for.
It has, it has so much potential. And you could put, you could put practically all the departments here, right? And, and some of the constitutional officers.
Yeah, that would be the potential of it. And even as we kind of think in those terms, and I'm by no means saying these particular buildings to say that we must. Or, you know, I don't have any dog in that fight, but just to present options. But as we kind of think about that too, and I think you have a diagram of this building too, and we'll take a tour here after a while. The thought doesn't have to necessarily be that we're using the entirety of the whole building. I mean, it's a big building and there's also the extra outer buildings too, office space, gym and whatnot. But it would be an opportunity to where if we think that's appropriate, you know, we can do the due diligence to see if the school board is even willing on this. We have not broached them on this topic, but we just wanted to at least kind of present it first. To see what the general thoughts were before we even talk, try to talk to them to see what their intentions with this building are. And if we're more in favor of looking at it, then we'll go to the school board to see what their intentions are. So it might not even be one that's necessarily available per se. But, you know, we at least need to, I think, kind of talk through that as we get into those opportunities that come up. Because, you know, there's sort of the two thoughts of it of. of the two thoughts of it of either we look at another building or then we have to think about the investment to put into our buildings because our buildings need work too. So do we want to invest in our buildings that we're currently in and what that cost could mean? Or do we look at the investment in, you know, an empty building and what that could be? So there's, so either way is sort of, either way, we're going to need to pay something, either to fix or to renovate. So, so it's kind of that thought process, but it just gives opportunity, especially when you have larger spaces. It just brings a little bit more opportunity to where we can bring everybody together as we are a little spread out. And though we're not terrible, we're not terrible on our distance as far as everybody being here, being in different buildings, it still is a little bit easier if everybody is able to be under one roof. It's a little bit easier to manage, more accessibility towards everybody.
This, this building, if we could acquire, for example, this building, I think it would be less expensive to acquire it and rehabilitate it. And that, we still have to think about, a big issue is jail. And so if we're looking at building and buying land and building a brand new building for that, I mean, for the one government center plus what the jail needs, I mean, this is a much more attractive alternative for part of that, that helps us handle the.
Well, and I think, I mean, I think for the immediate future, I mean, I think it would be great for us to have a big new building, everybody under one roof, have the jail, everything there. But I mean, when you look at it realistically, it's not something that's going to happen anytime soon. Whereas I think maybe if we look at acquiring this building, it allows us to step back and do a little bit more with the jail. That, that is really needing some attention. So, I mean.
This room, this building gives us a lot of room for like centralized record storage too. That's the big issue is becoming an issue for the courthouse. Well, if the court, for example, were here, I mean, there's lots of extra space that we'd have for them to store records on site and have them be accessible. Elections, some of those separate buildings could be set up for elections without having to build. And that, that building is becoming an issue that we didn't realize.
Yeah, we do have some major roof issues with our current elections building that we'll have to address. But, but like I said, this is just looking at those prospects and whether it be this building or in the future as other things, land and or buildings become available. You know, it's just a thought to kind of think in those kind of terms just so that, you know, for instance, if we were in a one government center like this and we pulled ourselves off the square, what's the prospect then of using those buildings, selling, selling those for development? So then you're talking about now we're able to build a square. So those are sort of my thoughts of just how that can work, what that can look like in terms of what we do. So it's, you know, like I said, not a guarantee, but I think it's something worth some due diligence. Take a look at and see, is it possible? What would it mean? What would those kind of costs look like? You know, is the school board willing? Those are the type of things that are just sort of in my head and thinking about that. Because I mean, even though we have our buildings on the square, you know, at the end of the day, it would be nice if we said, well, you know, instead of BLC being in a building around the square, well, hey, there's a coffee shop right there on the square. You know, so I mean, the community is able to then benefit off of that.
That ought to be attractive to Caronsville.
Yeah. Yeah. So then we've got to think in terms of, you know, what's, what's attracting everybody to Franklin County. You know, we know we have X, Y, and Z that are listed already, but, you know, that's something that has, that's a list that always has to continue to grow. We, even if we get to wherever we think is ideal in these next few years, there's always the next thing. Because as you can see from all the places within Georgia, you can practically go to, somebody's always building something that is the next attraction. So that's the next place to go, you know. So what's going to separate us and make people want to come to Caronsville? So on and so forth. And that's what helps build in that process to think of the county in that kind of term. Any other thoughts towards building land acquisition?
I just like to have the option to compare. I mean, I want to have like a one government complex, have a, you know, compare different, either a new building, renovate this building, something along those lines.
I, I think it'd be smart to reach out maybe to the board education pretty quick just to get some feelings on them and maybe keep somebody else from jumping in.
Yeah, we've got at least for a year. So, so they must not have, you know, a plan tomorrow, but you're right, we need to put out some feelers.
Yeah, I think I've only heard of maybe a couple of things that could be the potential for it. But, but it is, it is a situation where we probably at least want to give all the information and do our due diligence, just understand what it would mean. Because if they say they are willing, then we would then have a little bit of time because it will be happening for this next year. If they had been said tomorrow, we're willing, we could at that point start bringing people in to see what does that mean for us?
What we can do with it?
Yeah, what we can do, layout, different designs. I've already kind of given, actually have it on my desk to give to, to John, engineer, ideas that I have as far as how that can lay out and what that can mean to see what's feasible. And then we can kind of go from there. But we can start to, at least start that process. And if, if we get to a point where we say, you know, yes, it's a go and that's what we want to do, we're even more easily say, okay, well, we've done the due diligence towards it. Okay, let's go forward and proceed. So I think that would be a huge win for us, getting everybody under one roof and not having the individual buildings that we need to maintain. And yes, there's going to be some work. I mean, it's an old building. I think the renovation of this building was last in the mid eighties. So yes, there's going to be some things that have to be repaired within this building. We kind of know and understand that. But, you know, is it still cheaper to renovate this building versus building, building from scratch? I mean, at least the old cinder block build is always going to stand now with things around it and those are the things that usually have to be up kept.
I think, I think it'd be good for the public too. I mean, you, you have one building that everything's at. You don't have to, you know, try to find the addresses, the tax assessors and then go out and try to get, which they're together, tax commissioner or elections, everything is in one place. It makes it a lot simpler.
Anything else on building and land? But if, but if it's okay with the board, I'll go ahead and reach out to education.
When we break, can we, can we kind of walk around?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was about to take a little break. But, but yeah, I'll go ahead and reach out to education and start that process just to at least see what their thoughts are with the use of this building. See if there's any future plans that they have at this time. If no plans, then we can start to, I'll come back to the board and we can sort of make any decisions that we want to make based off of that at that time.
That sounds good. Anybody have objections to that? Okay. Ryan?
He's with somebody.
Okay.
All right. But we're.
Essentially on buildings and land, let's talk about the jail. And maybe we're going to build a new one where we're at.
I'm open to suggestions.
Would we, I mean, are we, would we want a new one or we want to kind of go along the lines of what we talked about before, expansion and renovation?
If you do expansions, it's going to be a lot cheaper because, but if you go for a new one, you're looking at about seventeen, eighteen million dollars probably at least.
And our, what was our, when we were going to do it before, what was that, about four or five? So, and that would, I mean, the expansion would still serve our needs.
It would. You, right now, I think we had a hundred and maybe nine this morning totally just including the ones that have out. We wanted to add, I think it was an extra ninety-six beds. That would give us ninety-six and seventy-sevens, five hundred sixty, something like that.
You know, I mean, even talking about doing the expansion, I still think that would kind of be smarter for the time being as, as we as a county prepare for the future and do, and maybe doing that one new complex.
And property is not an issue over there. I mean, there's room to.
We got room to expand.
To expand.
Early expansion, yeah.
Okay. How many acres is over there? Or how big is that area?
So, so I think that yes, it would be less expensive for us to think about that and expansion, which I think would still be fine. I don't, I don't think there's necessarily anything wrong with the jail as current standing.
There's a few things that we're working on them too.
Yeah. And I know there are some things maintenance wise that we have to do, of course, but, but, you know, still the thought of, I mean, as we're getting to double digit millions of building a new facility versus saying adding about a hundred beds essentially for about four million.
So how, I mean, how, we need to think about how we would fund it. The referendum for, and that was for bonds, didn't pass. But how, how could we go about funding that? I mean, if we said five million for an expansion, and how long would that take? Because I, I mean, they have an immediate need down, but we need, I know anything we do would probably, you know, it's not going to happen overnight, but we need to be making some steps toward, well, how do we fund it?
So I think it's, it could be a potential, and I'll have to kind of look at it a little bit closer. We have the ability to fund that through fund balance even. It could be something to where we say, over these next couple of years, as we say, as we do save money, we're going to allocate that money saved to go towards that. As we look at the audit just a little bit later, then I can show you a little bit of where we've increased fund balance to some degree. There's some things we need to work up, work through, I think, financially first, but I think that could get taken care of in this next year. But that could be potential uses of that. We can take a look and see if, if any portion of that could qualify Sploss.
Is it, is there any, I mean, are there any grant funding available that would help with parts of that, like pieces of it?
So the CDBG, if we apply for that, that could probably get some piece of it. It's not going to be a huge piece of it. So, so even as we look sort of at the grant funding towards that, we, I'm probably saying if we're talking, let's just say four million.
Well, now, that's, that's what priced last year.
Well, yeah.
It's probably, it's probably.
You're a lot on your map today.
So probably, if you'd be probably thinking six million.
The other thing that we got to have to think about too is when you expand, your operation costs are going to go up each year. So we have to be ready to prepare to absorb that too.
Right.
So we need to. And I can't remember, what was it last, I mean, the estimated like the first year, was it around half to a million, something like that?
I think it was because you got, you got to add two more per shift, I think it was.
Yeah. That would sound about right because we're still talking about the additional utilities, talking about additional staff benefits and all the things that go with it. So it would be a portion of that that we still have to think about on the back end of it and what's going to be recurring. But we could, I mean, we could still look at any of those type of grant funds or whatever's available as far as the upfront funding to get it done. And we'll just have to see how long that building would take.
Are there loans that we could take out for parts of it too? Kind of like we did our water system?
So, so I think there are a couple of loans that are available that we can use for that too. I'll have to take a, I didn't take a look at that in preparation for today, but I could take a look at that to get a little bit more information for us on that portion of it. But there's probably a combination of all of the above. So probably it could be a combination of looking at grant, possibly either full loan or partial loan and then some of our personal funding within that that could be available there.
The, the care, the, the extension of the cares funding and the funding associated with the pandemic, maybe there's money in there that we're eligible for that we could set aside towards that.
So I know with them looking at infrastructure strongly within this side of it, there might be, there, there might be, I know, I know we were going to try to take a look at a little bit of broadband with that too.
Yeah.
But there, but there might be something that we can set aside within it towards it too. So we'll just have to kind of take a look at the overall funding projection and what that can mean for us. If, if we are building, you know, saying that we're building for an extra hundred beds, you know, it at least does give us that room for growth. So I mean, I think at least then we're probably in good shape for X amount of years, I would probably say. But, but yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I think we're at about 108 or 109 this morning. So I mean, we know that we have.
It's a real pressing need. I mean, we know that. We just have to figure out a way to do it. But we need to take some concrete steps toward that.
Okay. Yeah. So I'll, so I'll take a look at what that kind of funding could mean for us. And then we'll talk about this a little bit later too, just with looking at our CIP, capital improvement plan. We just need to kind of take a look at that as we compile that just to then allocate what all funding goes towards, what projects. And this is, and we'll talk about it more if this gets to where as we lay that out, that's where we have to think about those decisions of is there, are there other things that we need to put a halt to or initiatives we need to put a halt to and push back? So as we're thinking about a five-year plan, we'll get into that just a little bit more of what that means. But, but we'll go ahead and take a break right now.
One question for you. Only do you think we save any money by not having to, like, house out people? We save any money by bringing everybody back here?
You, you would, but you, you would look at that versus us paying our, every monthly payment we pay plus transportation, the court. We hear Lake, we haven't do the court because we, virtually, but they fixed the start hitting back in. So we, I think we could actually save some money. Like I said, but you're not going to see the money going out to the counties anymore once we get it built. But you still got that payment, whatever we get for the new jail.
It'll save, it'll save us some money in the big picture, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So, so yeah, it's sort of one of those that it doesn't necessarily show money savings.
We won't save or save.
Yeah. So, so for instance, instead of us paying five thousand dollars in a month for outhousing and what that means, transportation, housing and whatnot associated, it translates a little bit more to in-house.
Food.
Meals, staff and what those increases are. So it's, so it's, so it's sort of kind of a saving, but sort of almost a break even in some respects.
Saving in transportation costs, wear and tear.
Yeah.
So some of them might be not so obvious.
Yeah. So it's not something that will maybe be overly present because you might still see that cost kind of balance out, but, but you won't see that outgoing cost going to another county. You'll just see it being within us, within our structure is how that'll look. All right. All right, cool. Well, if no other questions, we will go ahead and take a break.
Should we, should we recess for a specific period so people that are joining by Zoom can come back?
Yeah, I guess we should probably recess because if we're going to take a tour, I don't have time to on that. We'd probably say maybe.
It's, what time is it?
One forty-one.
So what time do we want to say that we'll start back up? Just so that people know.
Do you think thirty would be enough to, to?
Is that? Okay. So, so what time is it now?
One forty-one, so.
So let's say two twenty?
About two, let's say, let's say.
Oh, no, two ten. I'm sorry.
Let's say two fifteen.
Two fifteen, okay. All right. So without objection, we recess for until two fifteen PM? Okay. We stand recess. All right. At this time, we'll reconvene and it is two fifteen.
All right. So back to break. The next thing that we have on the agenda is talking about our planning and zoning. So we have our planning directory here. Scott Delo, you can talk about that for us. Scott, if you want to jump into.
Yeah. So y'all see on, on this upcoming, let me think, April, May, board commission meeting, it'll be when we look at the, the new subdivision, the new development ordinance that we've been working on since probably October. Now that was, that was something that myself, the county engineer, the public works director got together on it and we hired a third party to help us write this. It's, it's, it's an update, something that's, that's been long needed an update. As y'all can tell, there's actually going to be, there's two more subdivisions that have already been applied for. So we're, we're seeing a lot of growth. We're seeing a lot of new development and a lot of new subdivisions. But, but along with that, the way this, the new development ordinance is written and the way it's laid out, it's designed for where we can, we can turn it into what's called a UDC, a Unified Development Code. And what that would, what that would entail is basically rewriting the zoning ordinance is how they are now. So I know we've got a current, we've got a moratorium on, on commercial development. And what this would give us an opportunity to do is to sit down and actually update it to where we are now currently as a county. Back in two thousand and five, when this, when it was originally written, it kind of filled the, filled the job. It, it, it filled its purpose. We, we haven't done hardly any updates to the zoning ordinance since two thousand and five. And the, the growth that's coming up this interstate, we, we got to do something to address where we're at with our zoning regulations, with our development ordinances, with our, you know, development codes to ensure that we, we stay ahead of the growth that's coming. As it is now, you know, some of the stuff that's been passed, there's a lot of room for improvement as far as some of the subdivisions, some of the developments. They meet what we currently have on the books, but, but there's a lot of room for improvement. And the guy that has helped us, Jerry White, he's the one that's helped us with the. And the guy that has helped us, Jerry White, he's the one that's helped us with the current development and subdivision ordinance. He's a very, very smart guy. He's got a PhD in urban planning. I'm not ashamed to say he's smart, and I'll probably ever be when it comes to this sort of thing. And I'm, I'm glad that he's been able to help us, because he's, he's actually taught, taught myself and taught John and all of us a, a good bit of stuff to think about. But we, we are, I am, you know, requesting over the next year, the funding to be able to, to proceed with this. And we've actually gotten a quote from him, and his team would be able to help, you know, write, rewrite the zoning ordinances. And we could break it down to, you know, right now, we just have a commercial industrial district and just covers all industry. A lot of places will have light, you'll have medium and heavy industry. And I think that's kind of the direction we need to go, because there's, you know, obviously with what's, what we're dealing with right now, and say a distribution center. Well, those two things currently right now would fall into our same, you know, commercial industrial zoning, which they're obviously not the same type of land use. There's going to be different requirements that need to be thought about and placed on, you know, those heavy, light and medium ministries. And he would also, he's also going to be able to, or he would be able to, if we wanted to proceed with it, re, you know, relook at the zoning map altogether, which, which is something that needs to, that needs to happen. Back in '05, when it was done, there was a reason for it being done. I understand the purpose, but it was basically, they took a green paintbrush and just said, everything's ag. And then we've had to kind of fill in the pieces as we go. So even if, I mean, there's, there were some pre-developed subdivisions, some, some commercial use, some industrial use, that was already in operation, that all got zoned ag intensive. So really, it's time, we need, we need to start looking at, and then, you know, in my opinion, you know, we want this, we, we, we want industry and, and residential growth and commercial growth. We want to be able to kind of concentrate those where we say they want to go. Obviously, you know, the industrial and some of the commercial growth, we're going to want to try to keep it along that I-85 corridor as much as we can. And then, you know, outside of the city limits, you know, or outside of that industrial growth, maybe look at, that's where we want our residential stuff to go. And then we also need to, in my opinion, look at, on top of that, having some sort of an ag protective or an ag buffer zone, where it's like, hey, this is just ag. We don't want industry in this, we don't want residential developments, we don't want subdivision developments in this. We want this to stay the rural, you know, ag part of Franklin County. And, and they would have, Jerry White's, his team would have the ability to do all of that. It would take some, it would take some GIS mapping, it would take some, you know, working with the tax assessor's office to see how, you know, get the most updated parcels, see what each, track the land, I mean, you, you just probably have to go through each parcel of land and say, this parcel's being used current, not what it's zoned currently, but it's being used as industry or residential, and kind of piece those puzzles together. Currently, there's no way, there's, there's no way that I, I could sit down and do. I mean, I'm, I, I, it's, it wouldn't be something that we could do in-house. It would have to be farmed out. But he, he has already gotten us a quote on that, so that'll be something that hopefully will be worked in the next year's budget.
What kind of, what kind of cost would that?
It would be around $30,000, but that's including all the GIS mapping.
Yeah. What kind of timeframe would, to do the whole thing?
Um, he originally, so for the subdivision and development ordinance, I can remember, it was like four months to do that, and then, once we got that done, he said it'd be another six to eight months to get the rest of it done. So we could, we could have the whole thing finished by the end of next, you know, next fiscal year.
Could he help us with this revision of the CI right now? In the timeframe we have the moratorium?
Um, I can, I can, he, he's coming up tomorrow, actually, so I'm going to, I'm going to talk to him about all that stuff tomorrow.
That way we can, that would be, that would be good to do that, you know, at the first bite.
Right. And we could, it'd be one of the things, we could, we could go ahead and say, look, we're, we're going to, we're going to change our CI to light, medium, heavy, and then when we go to, say, we want to incorporate a UDC, we just plug that, we don't have to change anything, we just plug that into where, where it belongs.
It'd be good to align that with our, with a comprehensive plan and see where we need to change comprehensive plan.
Right, right. Yeah, I think that the comprehensive plan, it's, it's, the comprehensive plan is mapped out better than what the zoning districts are currently. I mean, if we followed kind of what the comprehensive plan is, it was updated in 2019, and kind of merged the zoning with the comprehensive plan.
I was going to say, we need to get those two tied together.
Yeah, because, yeah, right, right now, they're not, they're not.
They're only using the same language.
It's causing a lot of controversy. Yeah, absolutely. With the citizens right now. Absolutely. And, and, you know, the comprehensive plan is what we say, this is what we want it to be. This is what we're looking for, and this is how we want it to look. And unfortunately, the zoning map, like I said, it was just pretty much, here's a green paintbrush, and then we'll figure it out as we go. We're kind of at the point where, uh, we're, we're past the point of needing to, to get those two kind of more in, in line and in sync. So that's one of the best, that's, that's the biggest project that I'm, I'm wanting to accomplish in this next year from a planning zoning perspective. You know, we've got the, we've got the building inspection stuff going on, and it's, it's been going incredibly smooth, I think. We've gotten some new, new faces on the planning commission, we've got some, some of those positions are about to come up as well, so we got a lot of good things going in the planning department. But the amount of phone calls and inquiries that I'm getting every day on, and I've got an email right now that I just looked at from somebody wanting a commercial lot to develop something. I didn't even read the rest of the email. But daily, it's either subdivisions or commercial development. And I've got two meetings next week with somebody who wanted to do some commercial stuff. So if we don't get ahead of it, it's going to be hard to, it's going to be hard to catch up on the tail end of it. The next thing that we, that I'd like to talk about is Gumlog. So I think everybody here is aware of Gumlog, and know what, know what the potential for Gumlog is. But there's a lot of, a lot of what we deal with from the planning department and from the code enforcement department, and a lot of complaints that we get in from the Gumlog area. So we've actually been talking to some of the, uh, some of the citizens up there about possibly incorporating, yeah, letting Gumlog become its own city. There's, some of the citizens are right now currently kind of going through that process, filling out their neighbors, see if they can get enough people interested in it. And if they are, we've already said, hey, look, we'll, we'll hold a town hall for y'all. We'll, we'll walk you through these steps, you know, we'd have to get in contact with Alan Powell.
What, what has to happen? I mean, do they, do we have to have a petition, or can we just request through legislation? I mean, I know it has to be through legislation.
It's got to be through legislation, but there's certain criteria that they have to meet.
There's some mapping that has to happen with that as part of the plans. There's a list that I can send that to all the commissioners, just so we see that. Right now, it's just kind of finding, it's been a little bit more of a feel-out, like Scott mentioned, of as I've talked to anybody in Gumlog, I mean, practically, if they say they're from Gumlog, I've asked them, has there been anything restricting them, or anything that's been opposing them from doing that? So I'm still waiting to hear back from a few people. I've gone and talked to some folks last week, and then I talked to a few people at the Catalysts Association too about that, just to see if there was first thing, anything that has restricted them from doing it. If there hasn't been anything restricting them from doing it, then I think we can move to the next step of saying, well, do you want to do it?
What was the response? I mean, how did they react to that when you talked about that?
Most of them had never thought about that before. So I've kind of talked to them a little bit about it. I think there was one gentleman Monday, Monday night, or last Monday night, that kind of talked to me about, they had a push, I think, for it at one point, but it just maybe fizzled out. So I guess a little bit of the past and the details of that's hazy, as far as maybe exactly what happened. But I've kind of just talked to a few citizens about it and what the prospect of it means, what potential benefits of it could be there. So this is a situation where if they were incorporated, it does mean that they can qualify for funding. So that, so like we talked about grants and that broad spectrum of grants, they would qualify for all those grants as well, because they'd be a government organization, a government entity. So that's one of the big benefits that we would see within that. So you're talking about CDBG, you're talking about CHIP, you're talking about potentially L-MIG. I mean, it'd be minimal if they ever got that, but still, they would qualify for L-MIG. Qualifying for any of that, that realm of grants and funding would be there. So that road structure could be benefited in some way. If they were qualified for that, that's an opportunity to where, you know, we're saying, you know, let's look at doing the minimum that maybe we can do. Maybe you have situations in that case to where we can partner with them to do a little bit more. Could be the potential there. So I think that's one of the big benefits I see of it, in asking that question to the citizens, is then when they have that type of funding, that structure, they can have their own planning and zoning, you know, and, and we, and we obviously would help them with that, because we want to have a relatively consistent structure throughout the whole county. You don't want to go from city to city and see absolute night and day as far as what the structure is. So it would have to be sort of talking through that point with them of, this doesn't mean you're becoming just your big HOA and getting out what you don't like. It has to still be a fair process to where there's structure. It has to be something that is still, I think, related as far as county and other cities within the county, so that we have that type of consistency to a high degree as far as the services being offered, how that's functioning. Now, as far as services offered, I know that is one stipulation. They don't have to actually physically serve, so as long as they have a contract essentially, like with LaVonia for their water, as long as they are able to show a contract or a MOU with that, those are.
They could start moving in that direction to do a lot of their service.
Yeah, yeah, so as long as they have that MOU with, with LaVonia towards that, so it's just really make sure they have formal agreements, make sure a couple of those other zoning things that they have in, in place. But things that we probably either already have, or things that the county could probably help them to get. But that was just sort of the prospect as we talked about it in some of the calls that I had received from Gumlog, and it was just sort of the thought of, okay, well, you know, maybe this could be something that benefits them and helps them sort of not, not only get some of the things off Scott's plate as far as what he deals with there, but it gives them a little bit more control as far as how they view their own community, and also then the funding piece to that.
I think that's worth pursuing. Do you all think?
Definitely.
Do you remember, Robert, have we ever, has the county ever talked about turning Gumlog in? All right, looking to see if Gumlog will be a city? I don't remember it, but I haven't been in the county that long.
Not since I've been on board.
I think it'd be a good, you know, opportunity, that being the lake community, they could, they could develop that area how they, you know, they could, they could really benefit from that a lot, in a lot of different ways.
It opened their eyes too, that, because a lot of people don't realize Gumlog, I mean, before that lake, that was all farming, and so after the lake, yeah, everybody rushed to develop it, but you still have big farms in and around it, and people don't get that. Why are they building a chicken house right next to my house? Well, that's always been a farm.
Still a farm, right.
So that would help them manage that better, I think.
Right.
Yeah, so just give some opportunity to it. Like I said, I don't know exactly what would come up of it. I don't know exactly what the citizen response is right now, but I think it would be something worth pursuing, just because I think in, in terms of future usage, it just gives them a little bit more leverage as far as money available. They would have to just form their own mayor council, but those are relatively simple things to do. And then, of course, getting the legislation. If we got to the point to where everybody's on board with that, and we have those other pieces in place, we can make a call to representatives to make sure we get the charter and the legislation that we do need. So it's not a, and like I told them, it's not an absolute quick process. I don't know time-wise as far as exactly how long that takes. I would have to guess, depending on the pieces that we have in place now, what would need to be obtained? It could be maybe a year to two years, would be my guess.
Might have to be phased in.
It's possible. Like I said, we would have to have to see as far as those requirements, exactly what they have. Of course, they would still have to get a mayor council, so that's talking about an election. So the requirements that are faced with that too. So there's some pieces of it that can't be immediate, but even if we're talking about a year, two years, you know, that's still something working towards, and that, once it's in place, then we're able to have sort of a, a, a little bit better ability to control the things that are happening, or they can control things that are happening within their community. Any questions about, anything for Delozer?
Anything else for the planning department? That's all I've got.
Okay, perfect.
Appreciate it.
And, and kind of too, just as I've talked with Scott about it too, it's, it's probably an opportunity that as we're looking at ordinances, we might not be able to get to that in this year necessarily, but it might be an opportunity for us to take a look at the bulk of our ordinances. So that might be a, a, a not next year, but maybe a future planning thing, just to take a look at those, make sure that we're updated. I would say we want to take a look at as many of these as soon as we possibly can, because again, like he mentioned, at the growth, that's our infrastructure. So I mean, I know we talk about infrastructure, and a lot of towns are talking about roads, we're talking about sewer, water, whatnot. This is also infrastructure. So the way we do things is, is infrastructure to how we operate. So looking at this type of infrastructure is important for us too. So we want to make sure that we are, so, so it's kind of like the situation that they had in, in Atlanta to where they, you know, allowed the scooters to come in, and all of a sudden, people were getting run over by scooters. They didn't have anything in place to manage how that operation was going to occur. So in, in result of that is that they ended up having to sort of react, and they ended up banning, banning scooters, because they're getting left all over the place, and people getting run over, a whole lot of trouble. But it's because they didn't enact something ahead of time to say, okay, well, this is how we're going to manage the scooters when they come in. It was more of a, scooters are here, we have this issue, now what are we going to do? So that's sort of the situation for us. Of course, they'll be getting run over in the street with this, but it's a situation for us to where if we say we've got the ordinances in place for whatever type of industry and/or businesses, residential, they can come in, and we have that standard, then that way we can better manage the way that things do come in.
The, as, as far as us redoing the zoning, I mean, is that something that the IBA can help us fund? We talked about that last year, they were supposed to totally revise that, and that kind of got dropped by the wayside. Commercial industrial.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that we could, we could.
Ask them to go and have.
Ask them about, yeah, exactly. Because, yeah, I remember them, they said they were going to rewrite it, and we haven't seen anything on it, so.
It's, it's smart to have a contract out. There are a lot of errors in that, like the, in the planning and zoning, it will refer to planning and zoning commission and the commissioner. Like if we had a sole commissioner, I think that was a template.
Right.
So there are a lot of mistakes in there that really don't.
That don't apply anymore.
It may give fodder for lawsuits in the right situation.
Exactly, yep. Yeah, there's, I mean, there's just a lot that needs to be, I mean, from, from home-based occupations to, to, you know, retail side of the house, to industry, there's, there's a lot of stuff that, that has changed, and we haven't changed with it, and, and it's, it's, it's becoming an issue.
Well, if we could get that, if, if they could help us do that by the end of June, that little small piece, I think that would be better than us trying to do it piecemeal, and then have to redo it next year. And it might help with current issues.
Right. And I think, I think, and the way it would, it normally works is that UDC, you, you kind of incorporate, a unified development code incorporates kind of all the ordinances you have, which would be like Derek was saying, we'd have to look at the ordinances we have on the books now, because there's going to be a lot of those that are going to need to be updated. There's going to be some that we don't have in place that we're probably going to have to adopt. But it kind of just merges everything into one document that, that you can go through and say, hey, this is, this is everything the county requires. This is how my sewer line is going to have to be laid out if I put a subdivision in. This is my setbacks for an industrial use. This is, you know, this is what a home-based occupation needs. So I mean, it has it all, all in one spot, and it kind of, and it's a fluid document too. UDC is a lot easier to update and change and amend, and have to amend the zoning ordinance, but then you got to go back and amend the standalone ordinance, and it, it just makes the whole process a lot smoother.
Let, let me ask you this too, because, because I have had people bring this up to me. By redoing all of that, could that alleviate some of the timeframe of somebody applying for a conditional land use permit? As far as, I mean, honestly, some of that stuff doesn't even need to come before the board. It's things that the planning and zoning commission can handle.
You're, you're going to see one in, uh, in May. It's a home-based occupation up in Gumlog. It's, he's, he's, he's landscape architect, he's going to be, he's going to be in CAD doing landscape architectural design, and he's got to get a business license. Whereas current zoning regulations are, is anything home-based occupation for residential, single-family use has got to be a conditional use permit. So he's got to go through that whole process just to get a business license for him to sit on his computer all day. And it's, it's stuff like that that needs to be, and, and there's certain zoning laws in the state of Georgia that we have to follow, like, you know, you can do it between, it's 15 to 45 days, we have to advertise it. And so we would have to look at the calendar and say, look, this is going to give us time to, you know, us having only one newspaper a week, that slows the process down a little bit too. But I think there is opportunity to speed that process up when we rewrite this, for sure. And stuff that we could designate, hey, this, this specific piece right here, the planning commission can handle.
You know, and that's, you know, that's why I'm wondering, because, I mean, like chicken houses.
Right.
As, as long as it's in a, is zoned ag.
Right.
They meet all the setbacks.
Right.
And everything.
Exactly.
Why does it have to go past y'all?
Well, there's, there's, and it's how, it's however we have set up, I mean, I have talked to Bubba on this a little bit, but there's a lot of counties that the planning commission. on this a little bit, but there's a lot of counties that the planning commission, they have the final say-so. They only go before the planning commission. I think there's, most of the time, it's anything that's, if it's going to be a zoning, you're going to rezone, all that has to be come through the board commissioners. But a lot of times variances and conditional use permits are handled solely by the planning commission.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm just trying to think of a way because, you know, it does lengthen the time span. And it's not any fault of what y'all are doing, it's what y'all are having to follow.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, now, what we've got going on right now, I understand that coming before the board and everything.
Right.
And, but, you know, some, some of this stuff that is just real straightforward.
Right, I know, I agree, I agree.
There's no issue, you know, and I can see, you know, if a chicken house is wanting to go in and there's some opposition by a decent amount of people, then that come into the board.
Right.
To be taken care of, but, you know, I mean, I think there's a lot of straightforward stuff that.
There is, there is.
Y'all are wasting your time on just having to sit there and listen to make a recommendation when y'all just say, okay, yeah.
I think we got six or seven this month and probably three of them shouldn't be, I mean, three of them should be cut and dry.
I mean, I think it's that stuff that, you know, that y'all know what you're doing.
I agree. And some, I mean, some of the stuff, and it just depends, we would have to decide how we want to, how we want to structure that. There's a lot of stuff that, you know, I could approve myself and there's some stuff the planning commission could approve, some stuff that have to go over the board commissioners. And we would just have to outline what it is that we say is.
You'd have to have some kind of appeals probably, but this is a good time to make sure all our processes are right, like requesting a delay.
A delay.
How you'd handle that and what's the penalty if you withdraw? Do you need to wait for you, because you're essentially wasting our time.
Right.
And you're gaining that by if you wanted to reapply, you're just paying the cost.
To reapply, exactly.
But it's still, it's taking our time.
Yeah, so that's kind of the good thing about as we're looking at overall ordinances and whatnot is it's a way for us to take a look at how we have done things and is there a way to streamline the way we like to do things? It's not a situation to where we're saying we're trying to just completely switch up the way we're doing things and mess up the way, or try to be, not understanding of maybe somebody in the past process they had to go through, but we always want to make sure we're looking at how we can be more efficient for people going forward. So this is, these are those opportunities we have to where we can say, okay, well, structurally we want to push this away from the board and we want to go more to planning. So those are the things that we can take a look at and we just have to, we'll just have to make that decision of exactly how we want to build that structure. So as we go through that process, if we're able to do that, then that's where we say, okay, well, we want to change this. You guys don't want to see chicken houses anymore coming before you. We want to push that to planning or whatever that structure may be and how that moves, then we can essentially say we're going to write it in whichever way. And I think that will be something important for the citizens too because a smoother process, a shorter process, it's not to where it's having to drag out to where we're talking about maybe I have to wait months before I can get a yes to something I'm just simply trying to do.
And it's also, it's also kind of gets difficult to approve some of those planning commission members because they say, well, what's the matter? We don't, you know, we just make a, we don't have a say-so on anything. They kind of are like, well, what's the point of these inhabitants here? So, yeah, I agree, there's definitely a good opportunity to.
I mean, I just think there's some things that, that the planning and zoning can take care of because they, they know.
Right, I agree, I agree.
You know, it's something that makes the timeline quicker for whoever the applicant is.
I agree.
And being able to move forward with some of that stuff instead of waiting for y'all to make a recommendation to us and then, you know, we meet two weeks later or whatever just for them to hear us say, yes, we approved based on the recommendation by the planning.
And that's, you know, current state law, state zoning regulations, you only have to have one public here by state law. The way we do, I think there's, part of our charter, we've said we're going to have two from the county. So that's, you know, we're doing, we're doing more than what's required by the state when it comes to that, that side of the house, which is what's caused the slowdown on some of that stuff.
Well, and I mean, you know, I think if, if anybody had a question of feeling like, you know, they could trust the decision of that board, I mean, then that would fall on the board of commissioners because we're the ones who ultimately appoint those members, so.
And that's where you build in that appeals process. Most of the time, the appeals for something like that, if it was the planning commission that made the decision, the appeal board would be the board of commissioners.
Yeah, and that would be fine.
Right, and that'd give y'all, that'd give everybody a chance to at least, you know, be heard by y'all if they wanted to.
If they wanted to.
Right.
That sounds great.
All right, appreciate it.
All right, thanks Scott.
Thanks Scott.
Thanks Scott.
So just going forward, we'll still take a look at it as we look at budget and we'll also talk to IBA about the possibility of funding, actually with a ticket tomorrow. So we'll talk about that, possible funding.
I think that's reasonable. I mean, we, we raised their tax revenue and they, that commercial industrial directly affects their role, so why, they should be able to help us with that.
Yeah, so I think that's worth that conversation. And we'll also just take a look at overall ordinances and as we go through that process, again, we'll take a look at the overall structure of how that does work. And it might be worth taking a look at that for all of our boards and how they work in totality while we're doing that. I mean, I know it's a lot of stuff to try to review and digest, but probably over this next year, as we're looking at planning for other boards that we do have, maybe we want to look at what those structures are, what those mean, do we have the right processes set up so that, you know, it's not something that maybe the board needs, the board commissioners need to deal with, but they can handle or appeals that come to you. Those are all the things that we can look at within any of these processes. So we'll take a look at that within that as well. And also we'll continue the conversation of Gumlog and looking at the potential of them becoming a city. So like I said, as I do get the feedback from citizens, hopefully during this next week or so, then I'll just see where that takes us. And like I said, I offer to them that Scott and I would come out there and do a town hall for them, lay out with that entire process, unfortunately there is a page that just lays out the exact process and what has to happen.
That's a, that's a great idea. Are they, they're probably the most densely populated area in the county, aren't they? I mean, they're close.
Yeah, yeah, I think they're, if they're not the most, they're right up there. So I think it would be a good opportunity.
They could help, if you had a city of Gumlog, they could probably do more, even more to help promote the lake for the county.
So, so kind of, so kind of a thought towards that would be, we don't necessarily as the county have sort of a, I guess, a tourism per se department, but that would be something to where as they formulate a city, they could develop their own tourism department if they want to do something like that and be, and just have that, we do some of those activities like IBA and whatnot, but they would be one centrally focused on something like that. So there's a lot of possibilities within that. So I think it would just be an opportunity to as we look at it and we present that to them, you know, I don't, I don't see an overall lot of negative effects of it. I mean, and I've been trying to read through it, take a look at that and see potential negatives towards it. I don't necessarily see.
The biggest thing that they're probably going to say is, well, we'll pay city and county tax, but they'll have a higher level of service and it will be the services they want.
Yeah, so that's kind of really the only negative is then we're talking about the taxes again. But again, I think that's the presentation, talking about, okay, yes, you do have those taxes, but you are going to have the ability to qualify for funding. You're also going to have dedicated funding of your own that you can decide what you use for within those limitations. So it's a lot, I think the net benefit for them is a lot higher than just simply the taxes. All right, awesome. So those are the actions for planning and zoning. So kind of as we keep rolling through here, talking about the employee handbook and policies. So what we've taken a look at and talking to staff, we've looked at the employee handbook and our policies overall, and the last time that it was updated and adopted was about two, 2014, 2015. My general belief in kind of looking at these type of topics would be especially policy, you always want to review policy probably every two to three years at the minimum. Reason being is that there's always going to be changes. So as we're looking at this, and again, this is another thing that will take a little bit of time and would probably be something we would hire out, contract out to do. I've reached out to Vegas County, but they actually updated theirs last year, I believe that was last October, I believe it was. And they even have policy geared towards pandemics or pandemic slash influenza is how current it is and what that would mean for them. So just kind of in the thought of things changing and talking about that kind of timeframe when we're talking about six to seven years, there's a lot of change that occurs within that six, seven year timeframe. Again, this is another thing that I look at as infrastructure as far as the operations and what that means for the operations. So as we're getting employees in, setting a clear standard of what is to come, you know, within this first month and through various situations that I've learned, we don't have certain policies in place and that can be restrictive for us or kind of put us in a bind to where we can't do certain things. So I think this is something that we have to take a look at hopefully over this next year to just generate something more current and make sure we have the things in it that we want to have within it. We would probably try to see if possible, actually the company that helped Vegas County with this works a lot through ACCG, so if we're able to work with that company and get this done. It is, you know, it is a lot more policy and even looking at theirs, theirs is about this thick, it's about an inch and a half thick, but it covers a lot of ground, covers a lot of situations. It doesn't leave ambiguity to where we aren't sure of what's going to happen. And I think that's where we need to move towards is the thought of there doesn't need to be us trying to figure out, you know, can we do this or is this the way we're supposed to do it? We would still work through Bubba as well through that, just to make sure we're doing all the right things, of course, but we just want to make sure that there's not that ambiguity in situations to where we either can't act on something because there's uncertainty or we have situations that linger as we've kind of had going in the past. We want to make sure that we're very clear-cut and make sure that we're able to make the right decisions, quick decisions as we're going through any situation that may occur. Any comments on handbook and or policy? That'll go handbook, but also our general policy structure too. So we just want to make sure we're taking a look at all of the above. And like I said, I know some of these are a pretty big undertaking as we're talking about reviewing this much documentation and or rewriting this much documentation, but I think as we're just headed towards the future, we just need to be thinking about these things. We need to go ahead and get things in place now that are going to affect us in the future so that we don't run into situations that negatively impact us because we've been, you know, waiting and waiting and waiting on something to happen.
The law changes so often that that gets outdated in a hurry.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, that's why I say probably every two to three years and usually a process that's good within that is even if you're just simply doing a review, usually you have the ability to just say X policy was reviewed on this date. So if there's not even a change needed for it, it's still being reviewed. So there might not be a change to it, but you want to have something that's giving you a sign-off to say, we still looked at this, there's no changes needed, or there's changes needed, we made this update on this date, or it was at least reviewed on this date. That way you're kind of keeping yourself in tune with the law with any of the changing times that there may be in situations that may change. So, you know, we want to just make sure that we're protecting ourselves and make sure that as we're taking any actions, we have something like that, that's documentation that's backing us up. We always want to make sure that whatever action we're doing, whether it be disciplinary or whether it be anything within the realm of personnel especially, or a action operationally we're taking, we have something that can back up the action we're taking. Everybody good on this one? So I'll still work to kind of see what kind of close we can get towards that and see what that means for us. I know, I know we're probably looking at quite a few things budget-wise that we're thinking about and that's again where we're going to have to think about that and what is our priority, but these are, I think, important things that we need to just consider. And might be depending on pricing on some of these items, it might be opportunities to where as we look at the budget within this fiscal year, we have funds that we can go ahead and initiate it. So there might be the potential towards that too. All right, talking about merit increases. So I know currently we don't necessarily have an absolute structure towards what merit increases looks like, but I think that's something that we should work towards and we can kind of talk through that just a little bit to make sure that we're thinking through that, we're on the same page about what that could mean. I think in your package you do have a sheet that sort of shows what a COLA could mean, what merit increases could mean. It should be a numbers page that you have in there. And structurally, I think what I gave you is just sort of looking at overall COLA status. I think I gave you what, 1.5% and 2% maybe on the COLA and then a three and a five on the merit. So essentially what that means is that we would look at an overall COLA, we can decide whatever a COLA is year over year. So if you said, hey, we want to do a 2% COLA for everybody in the county, that of course would apply to everybody. So that whole number you see under COLA would be a number we would budget that would be COLA going towards all staff. That second set of numbers that's talking about merit increases, this is where we would need to implement having evaluations. And essentially from that, if we say that we're going to give evaluations with the averages being somewhere in between, you know, well, I guess the average would be probably about a three, you're talking about some people that you may have that may be scoring at 1%. You could have some people that are scoring at 5%, that would be your top performers. Usually as you get people that are scoring at the top N percent, there's usually some type of documentation you want from their supervisor that's showing, you know, exactly why they're doing that. I know some of the pitfalls that I could probably point out from this specifically, even from the last place, are people giving the high-end percentage with not having any detail to their evaluation. So these are things that we would have to have full cooperation from all department heads of making sure as they're going through evaluating their people, we're evaluating them fairly, we're looking at exactly what people are doing and we're then scoring them accordingly with that, with that written documentation that tells them exactly what they're doing well, what they're not doing well, if they're in that 1% range, we want to initiate having sort of a management development plan so that we can work with them to improve whatever it is that they're not doing well at. On the other end of that, we do want to reward those high performers. You got a question?
I was going to say that the 3% would be total, not, we're not looking at like 2% for everybody and then we would add an additional 3 or an additional 5 or it'd just be total.
So, so when looking at that, then you're kind of talking about whatever you set the COLA to be, it would be in addition to. So, so that would just be that determination of us saying, okay, well, we have the funds to where we can, let's say, give 5% total increase for everybody in the county if we looked at that number. And I think that total number is somewhere in the ballpark of about 600K. If we're saying, okay, well, we're able to give a total of 5% for everybody, then that's where the breakdown of that is, is like what does that equal as far as a COLA overall? And then what would be the average based off of scoring on merit evaluations that the department could have? So we'll budget, so if we said that total is going to be 5%, we're going to essentially budget for about 5.5% to cover, to cover the balance.
But that, but, say, I would get, I would automatically get 2%, but then I could get up to 5% if I was a superior, but not 5 plus the 2. So in other words.
Right, yeah, so it wouldn't, so it wouldn't be everybody.
That's what I was thinking. I just want to be sure.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it wouldn't be everybody getting the COLA 2 and then everybody getting the 5% total. So that would just be what the max is.
Yes.
Somebody could get, so somebody could in theory get 7%. Somebody at the minimum could get 2% would be the, would be the bottom end of that. So COLA for everybody, but then whatever that allocation we decide towards a merit would be based off of valuations. And I think that this is something that does make it fair, you know, like I said, we want to be able to reward the people that are performing well. We're not saying we're absolutely penalizing the people that are not, but it gives us in place a way, a mechanism to be able to give raises on a year-to-year basis.
I mean, could we have a system where, you know, everybody gets the COLA and then we say to supervisors, all right, you know, you need to identify your top 5% performing employees and they get the 5%. So then they have a way to, because it is hard to evaluate employees, but then that helps them to think toward, well, what, who are my, who are the top 5% rather than trying to do it necessarily on end of it. who are the top 5% rather than trying to do it necessarily on end of it? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and yeah, and however we decide that we want to set that up, we can, we can set it up and.
That could help control the budget so that everybody's not, because everybody shouldn't get it. I mean, it ought to really be for the high performers.
Right, so, so kind of as we look at what the averages of what that means is essentially if you took an apartment, then you're probably talking about really being at an average of everybody getting pay raises being around 3, 3.5%. Because you're going to have some lesser performers, you're going to have some higher performers. But yes, you can ask them to identify who those absolute high performers are and them say, okay, well, this is, and the way I guess they could look at that as far as an individual standard is, these are my five people that are the top performers that are getting 5%. This is the standard I'm basing everybody else off of. Can be a way of thinking about that. We would want to encourage everybody just to understand and as we look at that number and whatever number we said is, okay, the COLA and the merit increases that we're going to, that we're projecting, you're still essentially taking that merit projection department by department. So if you took, sort of say, looking at the numbers within that and you took an apartment and you projected out 5% of what their payroll is, that's the number that they're working within, whatever that number we set. So at that point, then that's kind of the number they have to give. And if we're falling outside of that, then that's where we have to talk to departments about, you know, what that means. Are we looking at some cutbacks that we have? But I think it would be a consistent way of us being able to look at departments and the departments being able to look at staff to determine, you know, you know, how, how do we want to reward or assist our employees and get it better? Like I said, too, if somebody is scoring in that lower percentile, then that's where we need to think about developing plans for them and really help them to where they can become a better performer. I know it doesn't necessarily save everybody in, in all situations. I mean, sometimes you just have employees that just aren't going to be their employees. But I, I think for us overall, for the county, I think we have a lot of people that are good employees and that stay here with us. And this will just be a way to kind of help with them having something that they're looking forward to through the course of every year. Now, the, now the only thing is to it is that you have to make sure everybody understands if we're setting these limits, they are kind of limits. So we have to budget towards it and we just have to plan for it. We can do anything essentially per se that we want to do as long as we're planning forward.
Are you thinking of implementing this next year or is that going to take a year to develop the merit side of it?
I, I think, I think it's going to take a little bit first with us looking at the prioritization of some of these other plans that we do have and what the numbers would mean as far as payroll status for us. I, I would like for us to be able to do that within this coming year. And I think, and I think there's opportunity that we have within that, that we can do it within this next year. Because like I said, even that number, those numbers you see there is not a huge number. So we're not talking about, you know, millions of dollars that we're talking about there. But this will be a good way, I think, of really goodwill towards our staff. If we're able to go through and say, okay, well, we've looked at this, we're going to do a COLA of X amount for everybody and up to X amount for merit increases. We'll just have to work with the department heads to make sure that we're then really educating them on what that process would mean. I think I included in there the example of the, of what that evaluation could look like.
Correct. That's a really good, help do an objective evaluation.
You know, so yeah, so that just gives opportunity to where we would just need to educate them on how to utilize that as a tool at that point. And once we do that, if they're able to, usually, usually I would probably say you want to do evaluations kind of that November-ish kind of range with it to be in effect in January. And what you do with that and the way that looks, and I have a model that I've started working on just a little bit within the budget. It's not the actual budget form, but this will be something I'd have to add to where essentially, kind of like how we talked about having a line for contingency, there'd be a line for salary adjustments. So within salary adjustments, this would be to where we would include whatever that COLA, whatever that total merit increase is, plus the cost of SSI Medicare. So the 6.2%, the 1.45% would be included in that. So you have that in one line item to then be allocated to those departments as you go through that process. Now, like I said, you're going to budget just a little bit over what we're necessarily saying as far as percentage wise for coverage. It's, it's not, like I said, it's not a huge number. So if we're saying that that total number is going to be 600,000, maybe we budget 650, 675, something in that ballpark, just as we see fit the, the need for usage. In my past, we haven't been in situations where we've used that total salary adjustment line item. And that's sort of almost been like a quasi other contingency to some respect. But if you just, if, if we budget it properly and everybody really takes a look at that and follows that, it's a real easy and consistent way for us to do that for the staff.
Well, in the last few years, we have been able to consistently give at least a COLA. We haven't been the place where we could do the merits because we don't have an evaluation system, a formal one. But I think that's very important. I mean, to me personally, that'll, our regular raises ought to be a priority because in, in some, certain areas, we're not comparable to other counties. And that's going to take time and we can't wave a magic wand and fix that overnight, but we can do it stepwise and, and be financially feasible. But we don't need to, we don't need to be stagnant in that area. And the merit would give, would provide employees with an incentive to do even better.
Yeah.
But everybody, we all have to be on the same page county, each constitutional officer. And that take, is going to take, I mean, everybody's got to get comfortable with whatever valuation you have because it needs to be consistent as possible. And that's hard to do, I guess, across that many different groups.
Yeah, and, and it does just have to be a situation to where we are kind of thinking, I mean, you know, we obviously want to reward our employees, but, you know, we don't want to feel like, well, I need to give everybody five. Or I need to do this to make everybody happy. You know, at the end of the day, you know, we do have to kind of think about the county in terms of being a business. You know, and it's not that we're trying to think harshly and, you know, all the staff that I've met, I love all the staff and they do a great job. And I would, I would not take credit for anything. I, I would give that all to staff. But we do have to still think at the same time that, you know, we have to operate as a business. We got to be fiscally responsible.
We do.
We have to think about the ways that we're doing these things and how we can do them in that type of mindset. And if we get to that point and everybody stays on the same page towards that, then eventually we kind of do catch up as far as the numbers are concerned. It's not a huge hit to the payroll every year over year that we're talking about, depending on what that percentage that we select. And if we, and, and it gives us too, the opportunity to where you can, as a board, make that determination. So if it's a thinner year to where we say, okay, well, we don't have as much money to be able to give towards this, it can be COLA and we're maxing out at 3% of payroll. If it's a better year that we think is projected, COLA, we're maxing out at 5%, 7%, whatever percent that you want to say. And we can run those models to say what that means. So that's the opportunity that there is within it to where there's, you know, the COLA is a little bit more set. And usually COLA, I just gave a 2% on there, but I think it's projected more at like 1.3 this coming year. But that's where we can say what those numbers mean to us. And then we can make, we can decide then what the opportunity for movement is within that. So, so I think that would be something that we can get in place in this year. I think we just have to work to educate all department heads of what this type of evaluation looks like and make sure they're comfortable with being able to do that. We don't, we probably don't have the opportunity to where I could sit with them on every employee, of course, but, you know, I can help them with understanding what an evaluation like that means, how to do it. We can do workshops towards that and make sure everybody understands that.
We might have a year where we do the evaluations and hire a COLA before we actually implement, just so people get comfortable with the system.
And that's fine too, whichever way you want to roll.
My, I, I think this will help benefit with, because I think everybody's going to have those employees that are good employees. But you know they've got more potential and you're just not getting it out of them. I think this, this may be something that is an incentive to them to say, well, look, you know, if I take this next step and I do this much more, you know, I'm capable of earning this much. And, and you know, maybe that helps incentivize them to go that extra step.
Yeah, and I think it does give that opportunity to where you can set goals within that merit increase process to where, I mean, like I would tell people, it's typically, I would say it's typically hard to get a five. I mean, I, I did a, I think a relatively good job even in Lawrenceville and it was hard for me to get a five because they didn't usually let people get fives. But however we feel like, we both think that needs to look like is the way we can build it. And then we just have to be consistent throughout. So if we say that, that's, that there's a certain way we're going to do it, a certain standard to how we're going to do it. And yes, some of the unlocked potential, maybe that's the person that you give a four that you say in their, their evaluation, well, I know you can do X, Y, and Z, take on more responsibility or whatever the case may be. And that's the thing that takes them up to the five. So there's a lot of opportunity within it and how it is built is objective. So try to make sure you're taking feelings out of that. I mean, I know that's not easy for everybody and, and I understand that. And, you know, but we have to just make sure, like I said, we're thinking about business of the county and how we're operating the business of the county. And this is a more fair and consistent way of doing that. It's also good for documentation because if you have someone that's scoring fives every year, then I mean, we probably need to see what else they can do. Maybe, maybe there's more opportunity that they can grow within the county and look at things. Maybe there's a position we need to create that maybe instead of being this, being part of the crew, they're the crew leader. There's opportunities within that that can show us and help, and help us see what they can't be. Also on the flip end of that, if they're a lower performer, then you're looking at it saying, okay, well, maybe they're not doing well in this. And just because someone's not performing well in one area, doesn't necessarily mean they're a bad employee necessarily. So I've had those situations to where somebody was working within the courts. They're terrible in the courts, moved to a code enforcement officer and they became supervisor. They were really good at that. So it might be opportunity to where we just don't have the right people in the right place. That can always happen too. So it just kind of helps you see what's, where staff is as far as their development, their performance, and maybe make sure that they're either in the right place or we're utilizing them in the right type of way.
Well, and the better our employees do, the better the service we provide. And that, that directly impacts people and it helps retain good employees that might move somewhere else, which directly impacts, especially in law enforcement and EMS where they're, you know, saving lives literally every day. I mean, we want the good, we want the best people, we want to be able to keep them.
Yeah, and, and I think this can be a step to at least have something that, you know, like I said, it's not a guarantee and we're not talking about giving them double their salary, but at least this can be something to say, well, typically the county is getting this and I know I can look forward to this. So I can work hard at knowing that I'm going to probably get myself that 4% or 5% on merit. Plus I know I'm getting that COLA, so I might be able to get 6, 7% this year. And if you're, and if you're going into every year sort of with that mindset, you're going to work hard to get towards that 6, 7%. But, you know, if you know, okay, well, I know I'm not getting anything, well, hey, maybe there's another county, the city that might be able to offer what I want from that regard. So it's just something that I think we could venture towards and sort of help usher in to have something that gives us just that consistency. And like I said, I have the evaluation format created within that to take a look at and we can, and we can still adjust that in whatever way we see fit too. If there's better questions that we want to ask or better evaluation. I mean, this is basically coming from another government. So I mean, it's generally, I think, some of the things that are asked within that. But I think that's something that we could probably try to shoot for and we'll take a look at what that means budget wise. But I think it's something we could probably handle within the budget even within this coming year.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
So I think, so I think sort of the action step towards this will be thinking about maybe percentage wise, what we think would be appropriate. So COLA, so thinking about those separately, COLA and then separately merit.
Yeah, this is a great idea. I mean, it ought to be our policy to do these kinds of things. There shouldn't be a debate every year, well, are we going to give employees a raise? We, we need to, the question ought to be, like you said, well, how much? And then having a merit system, they have a little bit of control over that.
Right, so, so I think that would be the next step I would just encourage. Like I said, just sort of thinking, we can go with a standard COLA if we want to do that. Or, or like I said, if you just want to do just a higher COLA within this first year.
And work out the keys of that.
Evaluation is fine, whichever, whichever way that you'd prefer. We don't have to make that absolute decision right this second, but that would just be something to kind of think about. We will kind of have to, we will have to make that decision within this next about month. We will have to have that within about the next month so we can just budget for it. And then like I said, we'll make sure that as presented the budget, I think it'll probably present just a little bit differently than what you've seen it. But you'll see then salary adjustments, line item.
Correct.
That'll be that COLA salary benefits.
Because that's going to be a little variable now.
Yeah.
How do y'all, how do y'all feel about that?
Is Ryan with us?
He's on here, but not.
Not with us?
Not with us, right.
Okay, gotcha.
Oh, oh, wait, wait, wait. Here he is.
I, I agree with you.
Okay.
You have a merit increase versus just blanket raises.
All right.
All right, so I'll, I can, I can run more numbers than what's presented in there just to give an idea of what those options are.
Yeah, maybe some projections for like, like, I guess, two and three, or two and a half and three, or three and a half, something like that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can, I can run them practically from one up to seven. Be easy, just drag and drop on the spreadsheet. So I mean, I can get that to you pretty quickly, what that would mean. That was just a general kind of look of what that could be there. And also too, just taking a look at what that form looks like, just to make sure we're comfortable.
Yeah, because the, the constitutional officer is going to have to use that. We need y'all to look at that and see how that's going to work and what you think might need to be added or taken away.
And, and, and it can be a situation too, to where as far as constitutional, that it's some slight variation to that because obviously with doing a little different job than what everybody else is doing, there's that little bit of a difference that could be the evaluation method. So we can change it and alter it to where it's fitting like what the sheriff's office needs, especially in, in those type of fashions. So that's, that's not a problem to do. The ones I've got are more just for salary, non-salary employees. But we can always still have another tier that says, okay, well, constitutional officers. And make sure that it fits the needs of the sheriff's office so that, so that they're really getting the proper evaluation towards what they do. That this can sometimes look at, look more like a office staff evaluation in some respects. So, but also too, for the departments, we'll have all this information, slideshow materials that'll go out right after we finish or tomorrow to make sure that everybody has all the documents and everything that we've talked about, that I've told a lot of them. So make sure they have access to this. And then we'll start the process of just talking through with the departments of what this looks like. I'll sit, I'll sit with the sheriff separately so we can take a look at what that one needs to look like for them. All right, anything else on this topic? No? Okay, next topic, like we kind of talked about a little bit, is thinking about capital planning. This will be something that's going to be a little bit different for us in how we're doing it this year. And we will have to really think about that a lot just to make sure that as we're looking at capital planning, we are prioritizing. It's something that I've started to try to work on with the departments. I'm still trying to make it around to everybody with this. I have gotten this back from some. But just making sure that we're working through that, looking at what their capital needs are. The instruction to the departments and how they look at that is we're making sure to look at the capital needs in a five-year window. So it does follow a lot of what the overall comprehensive plan will look like to some degree. I do like comprehensive plan, I've read through it. I kind of like the more breaking down into looking at a five-year stretch because that's more realistic. I mean, looking 20 years down the road, it is difficult because there's a lot of change that can happen within that kind of timeframe. But as we're looking at a five-year window, we want to look at what the current needs are and start thinking towards what the projected needs are. So this is going to challenge departments a little bit more to think in terms of, okay, well, I maybe know I need a vehicle this next year, but when's my next replacement coming? When, when is the next? We don't want to just singularly think of what I need next year. We want to think out and think, okay, well, in terms of anything I need capital wise, how much stuff do I need? What is, what are those needs and what's that mean over a five-year stretch? That way, as what happens with this in, in this particular form, and I think you'll have that form, is then we prioritize that by department, what their needs are. So if they had five capital items they're listing, okay, what's priority one to five? So there might be the off chance that number five gets stretched out to a further year. So you do that for every department and then we're able to see, okay, what are their priorities? And then borders at that point, able to take a look at that to say, what are the overall priorities? And we have flexibility to sort of move things as we need to and push them into out years if that's the case that needs to happen. There's things that we will just budget over year over year. So like for instance, for the sheriff's office, we would look at vehicles year over year. We'll, we'll keep looking at options as far as what vehicles mean for us. We'll eventually take a look at things like an Enterprise to see if that's a viable option. If not, then I'll, I'll create a plan for us to do that for vehicle replacements. But those are things that we need to look at every year. So if, so if the sheriff knows, okay, well, So if so, if the sheriff knows, okay, well, I know I need to replace two, two vehicles every year, that's going to be on his capital plan. If sheriff knows, okay, well, I know I need X, Y, and Z, year one, year three, year five. We have that listed out to where we can identify that. And then that way we have a better fund things. So usually it's not a matter of if we want to get things in a lot of cases, it's a matter of just making sure that we have a plan as we're looking towards that. And if we're looking towards it and making that plan, it's a little bit easier for us to then say, okay, well, this specific funding is going towards this, so on and so forth. So if we do that, then it gives us a little bit more flexibility and then we know what's coming down the line. There are going to be things, of course, that do happen. You can't control pit maneuver, you can't control a lot of other things, can't control a car just breaking down. There's a lot of things that you can't control within that. But at least if you're only having to sort of deviate from some of these one-offs in your plan, you're still in relative control of what the funding is and what that means for the county. So it just gives us a little bit more structure and just a little bit more gauge of what we're doing on the overall scale.
Is it, is this something, I mean, to me, that we could reach out to the rural fire departments and help them with? Because I think, I mean, do we do that, are they included in this? I know they're not exactly.
I've talked, I've talked to, I've talked to some of them that I've talked to about some of their needs. And I think a lot of it for them is going to come. So even even though it is something that may be a SLOSS fund for them or a grant fund for them, it's still something we want to know is coming. And sometimes within these situations, if you know what's coming, and just like we kind of talked about with fire before, if you give me a list of fire items, there might be something that qualifies for a grant that we can apply to. So so we'll still get in contact with all the fire departments to know needs. I've started to get some of that information back. But if we at least know that, we can better, better see what the funding needs to be or what could be. And whether it be SLOSS, whether we need to look at grants, whether whatever the situation may be. So it'll be all inclusive for everybody and how we look at that. I I'd strongly encourage the fire departments to really look at grants because there's always usually in this day and age, a lot of grants that can be available for fire. So I mean, that's, we just need to look at creative funding and how to do that without dipping into the tax base as much as possible.
Andrew Murphy is the new president of the Fire Association. He was just elected when?
He was elected, no, like, he'd been a councilman a year.
No, I mean, for the.
Oh, for fire, like, a month ago, yeah.
He's on the Loney City Council, but he'd be a good person to help because he's got, he has some new ideas and that would be somebody good to.
I reached out to him.
I talked to him and told him to, I don't know, I don't think you've met him. You remember meeting him, I don't know if you've met him yet.
I'm not for sure.
I think you maybe have him at Andrew. He said, maybe, I don't know.
Is he tall and slender?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's pretty young.
Okay, okay, I met him at the community meeting of the Loney.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, we just chatted briefly.
Maybe you want to get with him and go come to a fire association meeting? I don't go to many of those, but the next one, hey, when all they knew where they are? It's not this coming Tuesday, but the next Tuesday is at at Loney.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the last one they had was at our fire department, I think.
Oh, is that the last two, is that our work session Tuesday?
Eh, maybe.
Yeah, I think, I think they do have.
Yeah, that's right. It came up before and Barry Thorn couldn't come.
It was on the 27th, so we won't be able to, I'd say.
I can still, I can still catch up to them at least.
So Andrew maybe and we can, we can meet up, y'all can meet up on whatever we can do.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can meet up with them individually right now. Maybe we could get it, maybe, maybe we can arrange it at some point where maybe I can step out of a work session to go and meet with them for one of the work sessions if possible. Get someone, see if I can get someone to fill in for me if anything.
Yeah, he'd be a good person to talk to. He's, like I said, he's got a lot of good ideas and he could help implement some of this with them.
Yeah, so yeah, we chat just briefly.
Well, and you know, I think too, with a lot of the fire departments, they tend to look at their big stuff, what they may need. Because I know like with us, the big thing we're looking at now is replacing our small tanker and everything. So that's, we tend to focus on big stuff. We don't, you know, you don't stop and think about the turnout gear you have to buy. And you know, all of those kinds of things, you don't think about that year over year, what that is. And you know, that might be something good for, for all the fire departments to be thinking about. You know, what is it that you're, you're using that you, you know, you're going to have to replace at a certain period of time?
Right, right. Yeah, so I think, so I think, yeah, I'll be with them. I actually probably will see them, if not four, then I know they have another community meeting, I think May 6 or something like that. So I'll see them again. But but yeah, we just need to think about planning and make sure everybody just starts to get into that mindset. That is a little bit harder or wheel to turn sometimes, getting people to think more broadly. But that's something over this next year that we just work hard to, you know, really get in there and start getting them to start thinking in terms of year over year. And you know, sometimes you get kind of caught up with thinking about next year and what I'm, what I'm doing this year, what I need to do next year. Once we start getting to that mindset and everybody really starts to see what that picture looks like, you start thinking out just a little ways. And it just gives a little bit better planning for everybody. All right, so kind of talking just briefly about departmental growth and sort of thinking of our planning for the future. You know, again, we have a lot of things that we're looking at over time, but there are just a lot of things that are going to be pertinent for us in these coming years, I think would be important for us to really think about. So kind of as we're thinking about growth of departments and and when I say growth of departments in disrespect, I I kind of more mean the formation of of departments, the growth of departments within the county, not necessarily the growth of a department within the county. So I know if we were to extend like the jail, then yes, that impacts sheriff's office. That would be growth within the department currently formatted within the county. But this is more of the thought of departments that we maybe don't have. So sort of thinking about that in that vein, starting with IT. So I think this is something that we do strongly have to think about. I think there's a few thoughts in terms of IT that we're a little bit limited on. I think just having number one, a person that manages IT solely is, 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 is difficult not having that position because it sort of relies on maybe me or the department head be the IT. I can take you a little ways within the computer, but I don't have that as a skill set. And I'm not afraid to admit that it's not being a part of my skill set. And I would probably say as far as department heads, that's not a skill set that they maintain either. We have the risk too, that when you're talking about not having that, maybe we aren't as secure as we need to be in some aspects. I mean, I know for sure things just as simple as changing our passwords every 90 days, some of these standard things that sort of come with an IT department that we don't have and are a little bit too much of an undertaking for for me to really keep up with, are things that we'll have to think about in the future. As we grow and we have that future growth, your risk grows. So as risk grows, you know, we've all seen the ransomware attacks that have gone, gone on with different, with various cities or whatnot. You know, that's the last thing. And more of my fear of what could happen down the line. We want to try to make sure that as we do grow, we have that opportunity to have someone that's managing the risk for us. As we have a managed contract right now, it's great to have what we have right now, but it's a little tough because, you know, number one, we're at the whim of the company being available for us in that moment. So what if we have an IT emergency, is he available? It's going to have to call us back, are we waiting for some emergency to happen? They're going to keep up with things like the update of equipment. We will look at things like a Dell lease, lease program, let's see if that's something viable too. So that we're having updated equipment because I know, I think, number one, I believe it is, needs to update all their computers in this next year too. So it gives us a little bit more planning in that perspective as well for for somebody being in that type of role. But those would be one of the roles that I think is going to be something that we need. It would be easier, like I said, if we did get to a government center. That it is a lot easier then because obviously if we just said we were in this one building, we have an overarching network for the building versus the difficulty that we have right now of there being the multitude of buildings and having to manage through the IT and the.
It'd make one person very feasible because they could just be working on this building.
Yeah, so 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 it's a, so it's a few factors that kind of play into that, but something that I think is going to be necessary. And I'll kind of go through all these thoughts and we can talk about it. Looking at GIS next. GIS can be something that we contract out. Either way that we are committed to it, you know, we have to think about what that's going to mean for us. Now, GIS can be used across multiple departments. So you're talking about planning, water and the tax offices being able to use GIS. Especially when you talk about water in particular. Water grows at about 10% a year, so you're talking about adding 200 meters a year. We're already committed to tracking all the meters through GIS. But then who's updating the 200 a year? So I mean, that would just be a thought that we want to keep in mind, who's updating that as we add meters, what's the timeframe? If you do have a person by chance, then that would be something that that person would do and maintain the tracking of the GIS system. Also too, then that would be something I think would fall under an IT. But that would be just the opportunity with them. There's a lot of capabilities within GIS even beyond just simply the tracking of meters and whatnot and does push information out. So that would be something that a person could do if we get down to that down the line. Last thought towards person, well, probably not last thought towards person, but next thought towards person would be looking at something like animal control if we ever want to get into that type of business. Right now, the marshal, I know they're deemed with keeping up with some of that, but I think that with what we have right now from a code perspective, they don't have time to do both. It's kind of either they need to look at animals or they need to look at codes. I don't think that there's really the ability to look at the two of those at the same time with a person. So if that's something that we wanted to get in the business of, then there are, of course, all the other portions of that that we have to think about in terms of building, structure, staff, so on and so forth. But if that's something that we deem important and that we want to get to, that's something that we can do.
That, that defects building would be, I don't know, that might be something where you could have for combined animal control and maintenance and have them in the same and be have a way. Because what, I've been working on that ordinance that, you know, we talked about last fall. The the big sticking issue is going to be with animal, the animal shelter would take animals that we impound. But the problem is, a lot of the times that's going to be after hours and they do not. They were very clear, they didn't really, really have a way to meet deputies and people after hours. They have a catch pen, I think, that's designated for a limited number of animals for like Loney PD and maybe, maybe even Hart County or another municipality. But they don't want to have to have somebody come over there and intake animals after hours unless it's just a dire emergency. So what we would need is a catch, a holding pen overnight or maybe over the weekend that we, if we picked up an animal, it could be put there temporarily until the animal shelter opens. So we, we're going to have, we have to think about that if we're going to have an animal ordinance. Because otherwise it just won't work, it'll, it'll fall apart. And we do need it, we, we need something like that. But we just have to think it through and it has to be something that everybody's on board with, or else it just won't work. And I'm talking about law enforcement, the health, I mean, even the health department because of rabies control. With the animal shelter, everybody's got to agree in for it to work right. Where are we on our marshal, are we, I know.
So so we actually did the first, so we actually put it on Indeed. So we've got about 40 applications right now.
Forty-four?
Forty-four applications at this moment. So we put it up there for a month, I think it was, so it's got like two weeks left on the listing.
It said it should be.
So three weeks, so three weeks about on the listing. We'll, we'll go ahead and probably keep that listing up for the duration. And then we'll start pulling applications, start sifting through those, which I guess I go through them a little bit now since never gives them to me as they come in. So so we'll start sifting through those with the duration because we have found that Indeed is probably our best avenue of, I don't think we were using before, of being able to get applicants and get a little bit broader variety. I couldn't promise that out of state is going to necessarily pan out per se, but we still have some set of Georgia applicants, I think, six, seven, something like that, that we've had most recently. So so we'll start going through that and hopefully get somebody hired shortly thereafter to get that deal.
Talking about the IT side. I, I've had some dealings with it here lately as far as the company I work for. They, they finally hired a full-time IT guy. And before him, it was basically, we had two guys at our central office that, they were kind of our go-to people, but they could only take you so far. And then they're like, oh, let, let me call so-and-so and see if I can figure this one out. But now that we've got this IT guy, he, he was at our central office location and everything, but he has since moved to Florida and he is still able to handle everything from Florida force. And you know, IT's, it's just getting even more and more important as, as we keep going into the future. And I learned a big lesson about the malware and all that. We, we had a quarterly managers meeting down in Alabama at Yellowwood Manufacturing Company and they had just gotten hit. And you know, FBI was in there, everybody. And the owner of the company is, is actually the guy who was in the Yellowwood commercials, the cowboy yellow fellow. That's actually the, he is the owner of the company. And, and he was telling us that, you know, within 30 minutes of it happening, his IT guys had all of their systems shut down and had everybody out of their computers and they still got in. He said, you know, you think about it, 30 minutes was, was really fast to get our computer system shut down as spread out as we are. He said, and they still got in and they were wanting 500 million to turn all the stuff back over to them. And he told FBI, he said, you can tell them, they can keep it because I ain't paying. He said, well, they're going to, they're going to release all your customers' information. He said, it don't matter, he said, there ain't nothing in there that can hurt my customers. And he had his IT guys, they were 80% back up and running within two weeks because of what his IT guys did. And going back in and doing all these, and I don't know what he was talking about, all these special firewalls and everything. And he, he told us, he said, if it wasn't for our IT group, he said, we may be bankrupt by now. And so a- as we're going into the future, it's, it's just going to get worse. And you know, all, all he knows is it's a group in Russia that did it. And he said, you know, here, they were trying to hold us ransom. And they're over in Russia. He said, they, they're not even here, they're not even in the state of Alabama with us. So I mean, IT's, I think, is getting even more important a- as we keep moving into the future. And I think it's definitely something we need to look in, into having at least one person who can, who can take that over and, and sort of control it.
Yeah, and I, and I think for us being spread out as we are, we're in hires.
Yeah.
The servers, I, I know there's probably the need to look at servers. I can't explain what that means necessarily, but I know servers reach capacity and got to have more servers. But I mean, the thought of us being web-based and some of those things that I know our IT guys did. I don't know, like I said, I don't know what all those things mean or what exactly, how you get to it. But with us being all spread out and all in various servers and different platforms, I just think we're at extremely high risk because we have everybody on a different system. You have several people on different systems, you know, how are we managing all those systems, servers, capabilities? I mean, if our server was to be full by the time we got back to the office this evening, I could, I can, I would, I'd just say, okay, I'll see y'all tomorrow. I would know what to do with that.
If we were in one building, that would make that so much easier to have everybody on the same network and to manage. So.
So I, so I think it is something that we really strongly, I would recommend strongly that we make a plan towards. Because if we, if that's one of those, like I say, I mean, if we get behind that, there's just nothing we can do. We're just sort of beholden to whomever.
Sitting in the water.
Yeah, we're, we're sort of sitting ducks at this moment. So I think it's something that we have to kind of think about and make towards. I mean, I think there's probably several things that would kind of look through everything we do that structurally, if we had it, it probably makes life a little bit easier for us, but I think. us. But I think, um, I, I think IT to me is probably the number one priority. Uh, I think at some point too, I didn't include on this, uh, but even thinking about finance would be another department, department we don't have, uh, but I think that will be something that's important for us to think about too. Uh, and it's not a knock to our current structure, how the clerk is, is currently performing our finances or in between what I do as well. Uh, but I think it's important for us to think about, you know, that as we grow as well, because, you know, we're not talking about a couple of dollars here. Um, you know, we're talking about some of the small cities and their function, like an arcade or, you know, some of the smaller cities like that in towns throughout that have, you know, a five, four, five million dollar budget. You know, I mean, that's manageable. You're probably not messing up a whole lot of stuff. You're probably not in danger of really having issues and planning and whatnot. But we're talking about, you know, 22, 23, 24 billion. And then if we're growing and as we bring in businesses, that number grows as well, that's something that we have to think about because that's a lot of money. And that's, and then as we're still getting, you know, funds and grants on top of that, we're talking about maybe capping out here in the next couple of years at 25 million, 25, 26 million. We have to really think about and be careful with how we're handling those funds, how we're investing any additional funds we have and having somebody that can be dedicated to just simply looking at these things. I try to look at our investments a little bit, um, kind of getting out of the storm a little bit. So I mean, I'll, I'll be able to start maybe looking at a few things, but I mean, our, our finances can be beholden to my availability. So it's a little bit of, of that that we have to think about and how we're doing it and what that's gonna mean for us. So we just want to be careful in those terms of how those things are. But even, even still with that being the thought too, IT, IT is more important to me, uh, looking at that as far as priority when we look at those. So I think that's still something that we just have to sort of think of a plan as to how we can, how, what that looks like, what that can mean. Uh, we can draw up the items as far as saying, okay, well, if you hired somebody at X amount of dollars, this is what the initial would be and this is what year-over-year that number would look like and layering those in. But, uh, but I think that's something that we're gonna have to talk through and just make a plan towards, just so that we're putting ourselves in the best possible situation going forward.
I, I think having an in-house IT person is more beneficial, not, not anything against who we're contracting with or anything like that, but when you have an in-house person, you know.
You're the priority.
Yeah, you're, you're his focus. So, you know, that, that tends to make things a little bit better for everybody.
School works, Captain Holst. It's random. God, I'm supposed to just come to me. But any, any other thoughts towards position control that we have or any thoughts towards developing a plan and looking, looking at that? But I guess what we can do as next steps is we can take a look at what maybe average salaries would be.
Yeah, look at maybe budgeting for that in this coming fiscal year.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start with, I can take a look at what some average salaries would be looking at some of these positions and what that would mean year-over-year as far as adding into our payroll, just to see what that would be. And then when you see that, then we can probably make a decision to say, okay, well, all right, well, we're, we're comfortable with IT. They're gonna cost us, I don't know, $65,000 a year. This is what we want to budget for and, and maybe go in that route if you're agreeable to that.
Do you know how much we're, we're paying for the contract service?
Uh, I don't remember that right offhand, but I can get that.
We, we need to, look, we can inquire with the school system. They have a great, they have kind of a, they have an overall technology director where they have specialists in every school and some of those guys do a fantastic job. So what we, what we would offer somebody probably would be comparable to that. And we might could even look at some of those.
Go ahead, make the school system mad. Just one of their.
Yeah, still one of their employees. But seriously, that would, we, it, it, that would give us a good idea of what we should pay somebody of that, on that, you know, at that level.
Yeah, so we, we can take a look at that and make a better decision than, than if we say we're agreeable to that. Then at that point, we can try to budget ballpark that kind of number. Uh, and also too, thinking, jumping back to merit increases that I forgot to mention too, is as we sort of look at that and implement that, we're probably gonna want to take a look at too, uh, timing as far as when someone's eligible. So usually you have like a six month or a year that you have to be on staff before you're eligible for that increase. So.
Yeah, that, that's a good, that's a good idea.
I forgot, forgot to mention that. But, uh, but as we kind of think through that process, because obviously you wouldn't want someone starting in October and then all of a sudden.
We, we did that last year. We said that when we did our COLO that that would apply for any employees 12 months and above, and when an employee reached 12 months during the year, then they were eligible for it. That's a rea, to me, that's reasonable.
Yeah, so we can still follow that, which is something to kind of think about as we get into increases. Uh, but, but still back to the IT side of that, we can take a look at what they're paying some of their specialists and see if that's some, a number that we want to incorporate in that. I think still as we kind of look at these others, animal control is a decision, an overall decision we have to make of whether we want to be in that business or we don't want to be in that business. So that's not necessarily a today decision, but that's something to think about. Uh, and then if we say we do, then we can start looking at the pieces of that and what, and how that layers into what we do. Uh, I think as far as maybe an IT, GIS, uh, maybe finance, those little ones, we probably want to take a look at to see, you know, what's our priority? As we're saying, IT is our priority, okay, how do we layer that in? What's next? How do we layer that in? And what will be our projected plan towards that? So that as we can go year-over-year budget, we can go ahead and be planning for those. Good on that.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, and before we take another break, I was just gonna talk just briefly, and this is just more, a little bit informational towards healthcare, the fault towards that that I have. So as we're kind of looking at healthcare, um, I mean, obviously we know that our healthcare is, is pretty expensive. It's rate, it's going up every year. It's probably rate about 6% every year that healthcare overall goes up. We want to think about how that impacts our staff. Want to make sure they have good healthcare too. Uh, want to make sure that they're able to cover their families, um, I think in current format, that, I mean, we don't have really anybody on the family coverage, um, because it's just not affordable for our staff. What, what's the answer to that? We don't necessarily know that right this second. Uh, I'm actually gonna meet with our, I've, I've met with our broker once before. Uh, we'll talk next week, I think next Thursday, I believe it is, again, about healthcare because the renewal should be out now. But what we need to think about probably more in terms of the future is the thought of our healthcare and our structure towards that and looking at options. What I've instructed our broker towards for the future is, I, I told him I don't really want to change anything for this year. Uh, number one, it's a little late in the year for us to try to do that, so I don't want to spring on the employee something new that's gonna change their healthcare and they'll not really have time planned for that. Uh, but I think going into, once we finish this renewal, we're gonna immediately start looking at what options could be based off of this year's renewal numbers. Uh, so it won't be a hundred percent true to the fat figures, but it'll give us an idea of what's possible. Um, I know in the past, there has been a time where we've done self-funded, uh, but I mean, I think as we sort of look at that and what the options are out there, I think it's worth putting everything on the table just to see what's there and seeing what that means to the county, to see if there is a better option that might be manageable for us. Uh, you know, we want to make sure that the staff has healthcare. Uh, I mean, I, you know, would hate for any of them to not be covering their families because they simply can't afford it and their family maybe not have healthcare if something happened. Uh, so I want to try to see if there's options out there that might be doable, that are more affordable and, and what that means. I don't know, like I said, what the structure is. We'll work through that and we can continue to talk about that through the course of the year. But we'll take a look at that just to see every option available. Uh, like I said, I know that self-funding has been tried before here and I think it been, from what I understand, didn't work and maybe there's some missing information or whatever the case may have been.
How, how does that work? I mean, does that mean basically the county pays the insurance, I mean, pays healthcare costs for?
So, so the county, uh, just take, the county takes on a little bit more liability in some cases towards that. So for instance, um, like City of Lawrenceville is self-funded, uh, and basically they would pay claims up to $130,000. So you have a, so you have a stop loss. So whatever they would hit $130,000 per an individual, it means that once they paid $130,000, insurance covers anything beyond that for the course of that fiscal year or calendar year, whichever way it worked for, uh, that company. So once they hit that stop loss number, 130K, they don't pay anything else in healthcare coverage for that person.
So is there an insurance company that the county would contract with to cover that shortfall?
Yes.
I mean, cover it beyond that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So yes, so, so that would be a situation, that's kind of how that works whenever you're fully insured. So in the, I guess the good thing about being self-funded can be that we then control everything. So if there's, uh, looking at negotiated rates, looking at how things happen within the healthcare structure, we, we have control over it versus when you're talking about being fully insured, you're kind of just being dictated to by the insurance companies themselves. Now, out of it, I couldn't say whether one works better than the other. Um, it's more about financial position and kind of how we want to do things. But, and there also are some more hybrid options within that that we'll take a look at, uh, as new things are coming, because you have more healthcare groups that are coming back to the Northeast Georgia area. Uh, so there might be opportunity that we can get some better deals, uh, depending on what we go towards. But I've instructed the broker and we'll kind of keep, like I said, working through this throughout the year to see what those options are and what they mean for us. Uh, and, and like I've told them, if we are looking at any of these other options, then they need to make sure that it'll be another situation where if we were looking at that change seriously, they'll come and explain these changes to us, uh, so that we fully understand what we're getting into. Uh, I don't want to get into a situation where we're changing how we're doing healthcare year-over-year. Uh, you know, want to provide some relative consistency for the staff so that, you know, you've got yourself a doctor and you go to that doctor, you know, you don't have to think about, well, next year I might have to change my doctor and then the year after that I gotta change my doctor again, or I can't go to this hospital this year, I gotta go to a different hospital the next year. We want to make sure that they have the best coverage, uh, I mean, but not at the sacrifice of it being confusing or it being something that, you know, people just at the end of the day don't want to even use because, because we're not operating well enough. So we have to just look at what all those options are, what they're gonna mean for everybody, uh, and then what we're comfortable as a county doing, uh, within that structure. Uh, we'll still look at other options, fully insured, so like an ACCG with coverage. Uh, so, you know, like I told them, uh, every option you have, I want to see and we'll put on the table and we'll eliminate the options on the table as we go through that process. But it's something that we need to look at in whole, uh, because healthcare is not getting any cheaper. Uh, we want to make sure though that our staff, we're already saying that our staff is underpaid, so if we're increasing costs toward the staff, then how are they covered? Uh, so we want to just make sure we're doing the best things we can do for them at the end of the day. Uh, so this is a little bit more of an informational, because I don't have backup information towards this particular topic, because we, like I said, ju, the renewal just came out of last week. Uh, so he's just started working on that and we'll talk next week to see what that means as far as our current structure in that renewal. But we'll take that renewal number and start working towards what the options are so I can get more information once we've had a chance to talk through it and sort of see where things lie. Any questions healthcare-wise? Not a problem. Well, we have another scheduled break, uh, up. Do you want to recess again for just a few minutes?
It's 3:51, how, do you want to do like 15 minutes, 10 minutes?
Yeah, we can just do like maybe 15 minutes.
Okay, so let's say it's 3:51, so let's say, well, 3:52, let's just say 4, 4:05, that's, that's not quite.
That's fine.
Is that all right, everybody? Recession until 4:05?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we reconvened at, what time, 3:0, no, 4:05, I'm sorry.
All right, almost there. Closer at least. All right, so just talking through a little bit, um, government media, just so we're thinking about this and how we're doing things. Um, so in your package there, if, if it's of interest to the board, that if you want the opportunity to where, uh, for commissioners members have an issued cellphone, uh, so you can separate that from being, from your personal being, uh, just like I have a cellphone issued to where it's, I guess as you kind of think about that in benefits terms, it keeps it to where your, your personal cellphone isn't the item that's available for open records versus, I mean, not that there's anything bad necessarily, so say on your phones or whatnot, but it just kind of gives you a little bit of separation, uh, from home and job sometimes. But what you have within your package is a list of, uh, I believe the Android phones and pricing and also a list of the iPhones that are available through our Connex that will be available for you if you wanted to go that route.
Did we, did we look and see, I mean, sometimes they'll get like Verizon to do a discount for an organization, but I figured to make it easier, we might could do a thing where there's an automatic upgrade every two years. So when somebody new comes on, I mean, you replace it with a.
Yeah.
You know, and keep the equipment up to date, I guess.
Yeah, and, and they will upgrade that. Uh, I guess it kind of depends on which route we go. Uh, we can get more specific information, so we'll say whatever phone is chosen.
I, I tried that when I first came on, because all that, all that business with Hillary Clinton. So I got a new phone and it, it was hard to keep up, but then we had the, the GRP request. I can see where we probably, and if in the future we have, with current issues, we have any open records request, it's a lot easier to manage that if we can just hand that phone with our official business on it and let them download emails and print them out than us trying to have to sort through public and private. I mean, well, how do y'all feel about that?
As many calls as I get, it drive them crazy if they try to get them off mine.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So if it was only one, it would just be us having to communicate the new number and insist. The other problem I had, uh, elected officials would call me on my home phone because they already had it and it was hard to say to them, call me on this other phone, which kind of defeated the purpose after a while, but we would have to, we, that would be a transition.
I, I mean, I think it would be better for whoever is on, on the board, because like you said, I mean, I, I use my phone for work, I use it for my personal, I use it for this, you know.
As may I use it for everyone.
If they, if they, you know, that GRP deal, if they come in here and wanted everything off of my phone, I mean, they probably have my phone for two or three days, going through their, all of the, the text messages that I got over and, and everything, so.
Is, is the county e, email system, the .gov email system, is that kept on a, where, where are those emails stored? Are they on a server or are they just directly on your phone? Because like, with mine is Gmail. I can access that from any device and print off every email, but do you have that capability with .gov too? Where is it stored at?
It's a Gmail.
The .gov is? Okay, so, all right, yeah, so, so you could, the other thing I thought about, we could copy all our emails. So she always had a copy of them whenever the requests come, but you can imagine she would spend all day answering email. I mean, sorting through her email to see what she had to answer and what was just copies.
You know, liked me.
But there, there ought to be an easy way to, to do that. I, I don't, I, there's more focus on that. I could see an issue where we would, we would, you know, be a target if they, they'd say, well, you, you know, you're using your private phone and you're mixing private and public. Why did you do that? I mean, there's a good reason why we've done it, but maybe it's time to change that.
Yeah, and it makes it easier too, so as you have any of those transitions or where the case is, so like a transition right now, so if anybody were to not be on the board going forward, well, that's your phone. So you're gone. So, um, you know, and whatever may happen, I mean, maybe if there was a, is, yeah, I mean, technically you can come back and give the information, but.
Can we still have?
Yeah, it, it can still, it can still be difficult. I mean, if you moved or got to be, somebody passed away or whatever the case is, just lost information versus a phone that's handed down. So even like for my phone, the county phone, you know, I can just hand this to somebody. They have the information or upgrade or they can download that information and get a new phone, whatever the case is, it's available information if it's needed.
Well, and I guess my thing is, if I went and got a new phone tomorrow, all the text messages that are on this phone are gone.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, you know, if I don't keep this phone.
Right.
You know, so how would I, you know, they started asking for those text messages between me and whoever. I don't have no way to give it to them. And I mean, unless, you know, you go back through the carrier and somehow.
Do they keep record?
Send you a copy of them.
Do they really keep records of that?
I don't, see, I don't know.
I've tried to keep my county ones, but, you know, I'll erase personal ones and the next thing you know, I've erased. One I didn't intend to erase.
But, I mean.
Oops.
I think for the situation that we're just been through, if it goes through it again. I mean, I think transparency-wise, we would be better off with a county phone. Just because, like you said, if somebody did an open records request and wanted to see text messages or whatever, there you go. And you don't have to worry about, you know, they don't see any of your personal stuff or anything like that. But, I think also too, it directs anybody calling you from the county to that one phone. To where everything is in one place, it's there. And when you're done, you know, you just give it to whoever else is coming on and. Because I know, I think when Commissioner Jakes, when his term was up, when he didn't run for reelection. I think all he did was everybody that had been calling him, he just gave them my phone number. And I started getting all of his phone calls.
Right.
And, you know, whereas even I, I mean, we represent the whole county, but I wasn't necessarily in there, you know, I wasn't over their district. I was still getting their phone calls instead of the person who was over their district.
Yeah, that number could be attached to a post. And then, no matter who's got it, we post that online and then when that post changes, you change the person's name and the email address and the phone number stays the same.
See, that's another thing, what Amy said.
I did have a question.
If somebody calls me.
How many people in the county currently have county cell phones?
I am zoning.
Probably a handful.
Does Bob? Department head?
What about John? Nick does.
So, probably no more than fifteen?
Just a handful, yeah.
So, we would just essentially be adding, how many, just five commissioners?
Five. Right.
Any other personnel that we're considering adding?
Do we need to do that?
I don't.
Well, we have office phones.
Right.
For communications.
Right, yeah, and I guess, I guess that does play the bigger factor into it is that you guys don't have an office. So, I mean, it's a little harder to say, okay, well, I'm just going to go and check my voicemail and call when I get back to the office. You just have just simply this one line. So, there could be maybe one other staff member consideration for a phone, but that's probably the whole, that's probably one other staff member that I would be thinking.
The other thing. We're working with AT&amp;T, is that right?
That's right.
I'm good friends with the regional Verizon person, he handles government in northeast Georgia, cities and counties. Would you like him to quote, you know, comparable to see if we can see somebody on the plan as well?
Yeah, we could do that. I don't know our terms with AT&amp;T, but it's still worth taking a quote to see whenever that term does run out. Or if we're able to make a switch, if that's some potential savings there.
The other thing, if everybody has the same kind of phone or similar phone. When we have like meetings by Zoom, everybody's got the same equipment, that makes it a little easier if there are connection issues. But, the other thing long-term will probably be to think about some sort of even a mini tablet, something we can receive electronic records on. Because that would make communication like for meetings, packets and stuff easy to have. But, I mean, we don't necessarily have to do that right now, but that's something we need to think about technology-wise to add to that.
Yeah, I think, I think my thoughts in terms of tablets and getting to that point will be to where, I think, once we have that structured IT. To where we're a little more secure. Because ideally, whenever we do the budget, I think it would be more ideal even putting like the budget document on a tablet for you to review. Versus printing it out, I mean, I mean, it was something I wish we could have done in the past. Because I mean, printed off, well, when I first started, seven hundred pages per, per person is, is a lot to do. So, if we're having, even having digitally and have more things digital, it just makes it a little bit easier.
It does.
For staff, saves a little bit of money and also it's something that's easy for you to carry with you.
It's easy to access past records.
Yeah, yeah.
Without having to sort through a filing cabinet.
Yeah, because when you're talking about trying to carry around a seven hundred page budget book, I mean, like who's, who's taking that anywhere outside of where they have to be? And reviewing it, so, so it makes it a little bit easier of access and, you know, potentially more secure. Instead of that getting left somewhere where the case is. So, but yes, if, but yeah, if we want to look at it both for Verizon and if we also want to look at commissioners having just a set post phone or phone number. Like I said, we'd always be able to get into situations where we're upgrading that phone every two years or whatever, whatever we need to do. To make sure a good move for us. And also too, usually a lot of those big open records requests don't usually come in immediately. It's usually more of a time lapse that you maybe have a year, a couple of years, depending on what it is, before those are coming in. So, with a term, I mean, if that happened in the last year of somebody's term and then they're gone a couple of years. I mean, to track down records and to hope that they didn't upgrade their phone or lose track of all those things in the course of a year or two. It's reasonable, it could be viewed as reasonable, but at the same time, then if it's citizens viewing that. It can look like you're hiding something or, you know, they just aren't going to view that in a positive light. Versus us being able to take a phone back from somebody, download the information, have it stored wherever. And then if we have to access it, it's a friendly.
That email's a huge thing with our last records request. When I did that on my emails for just, I think, a year or two, however long, it was between four and five thousand pages. So, imagine, I mean, she'd have to print them out and then before they cancel it. So, think about, I mean, it's a huge amount of data that potentially is lost. When somebody leaves the board.
Well, and I think too, I mean, when, you know, like me for example, you know, I'll be stepping down at the end of this term. Whatever I've got on that phone, whoever comes in behind me, I give them that phone, they've got information on there. So, that way, you know, if there's something that somebody calls them about or texts them about, they can maybe look back through text. And get a better idea of what they're talking about and be able to answer questions better or whatever.
Or at least electronic records, like documents.
So, I mean, you know.
We have thirty phones that we use down here and about five that we do.
Okay, so that's.
What was the question number you said?
Thirty.
Thirty phones?
So, that, yeah, that's a lot more than I thought.
Does that include the Sheriff's Department? Does Sheriff's Department have phones too, or?
That is what we pay, I asked if phones and then five.
I think that is because when we do the phone, the phone, the checks and things, that, I mean, it's a fair number. I didn't think about that.
Cody, we re-are.
I just kind of have people's phone numbers, I just call them, I don't usually think about it.
So, Verizon or AT&amp;T, we might could get a substantial discount if we don't, maybe we already do. But for, you know.
It's worth making the comparison. Because I mean, that was.
Say so, we're going to switch to Verizon if you, if you can't match their, you know, they'll do it.
I mean, that's how you do that, you have to do tables.
I mean, we're having all these Verizon towers come up, so.
Verizon has a lot better service for Franklin County.
I do, I do think Verizon does, I was a diehard AT&amp;T, but I feel like that we get theirs in more areas. I don't know.
Verizon, about forty years, same number.
Wow.
And when I changed phones, they read it, I got five hundred, I used to have five hundred and fifty numbers.
Imagine if you had to memorize all this.
The people used to call my house a lot and they would chew my wife out. And they thought, and she said, whoa, 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 I'm not his secretary, I'm his wife. Oh, I thought I was calling his office. She said, no, you call this number, she gives him my cell number. But, but as a commissioner, if somebody calls me about an issue and I don't know them. I try to find out what district they live in. And I said, whoa, you need to talk to Eddie Western, there's whales or Kyle. And I tell them, call your commissioner, because I, I'm not going to make a decision or tell somebody lives in your district or his district. That, you know, they're not my district. So, I want them to talk to whoever's the commissioner, because in the past, it has created a problem. You know, the wrong person tells somebody something and it, it ain't going to be that way, you know, it creates a big problem.
So, probably what we need to just look at is as far as preference. The board, the board would just need to decide, preference-wise, do you, I would probably say you want to probably try to get similar phones. I mean, it doesn't have to be the exact same model phone per se, but iPhones, if we're going to get iPhones, everybody get iPhones. Androids, everybody get an Android, because I know sometimes that communication factor in between the two, something is. So, the board wants to just take a look at that and whichever way you prefer. I have Android, but, you know, I have to go with what I, just for you guys.
What do we, what do you use?
I've got iPhone.
I have iPhone.
I have iPhone, but it's, I've got a grandpa phone.
This is going to step up for Robert.
The reason.
So, he'd have to learn either way, it looks like iPhones.
This is the way that the army guys use this phone. And they keep telling me they're going to quit making them. And I said, well, what they going to make for the army? Because I want one of them. Because crawling under houses and stuff. And my wife's got iPhone and I said, I'd tear that thing all to pieces, I'd mash it flat.
Put it in a case like that, you won't.
Yeah, leave it, you could leave that in your truck or something. Turn it off. What Ryan, what does Ryan, ask Ryan, is he on there, what he has?
Ryan, he has iPhone.
Okay. iPhone.
You can get a lot of information off iPhone, but you get a lot of information off of this and once you figure out how to do it, just learn.
We're going to change your order, Robert.
All right, so that brings us up to thirty-five total phones. So, we'll look at getting, and I think there's different iPhones on that list, I believe. I guess just depending on which iPhone you prefer and what it is.
Give me the cheapest one. That'd be fine with me.
Yeah.
I did try to get the cheapest one I could get, I think my phone probably cost about two hundred. I tried to get one that was going to be five G compatible, just so that whenever that does come.
That is a good idea.
So, so that was the one, that was the only thing, because I think there was one that was like ninety-nine cents on my list. But, it wasn't, it wasn't going to have that compatibility, so just in the event that whenever we get to that point, yes. But, whatever phone you prefer out of that, we can get that phone across the board. We'll go ahead and get the phone in cases, some type of type of case so that at times, once we get those.
And I think too, I mean, like we could put on our voicemail, you know, say whatever we need to say. But then at the end say, you know, if you're calling about county business, please contact me at this number.
We'll just need to change the business cards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so it'll take a little bit of time, but I think, yeah, in between that.
We'll just have to kind of even text messages, just saying, hey, can you send this text to this number?
Right.
You know, we, we have county phones now, so we can keep up with these records.
Yeah, so I think that'll just make it a little bit easier for everybody, but I know it's an extra phone to have to carry around. But, I mean, it's not that bad carrying two phones around for me, but I mean, it just makes it a little bit, little bit of separation to where, you know, you can take care of your personal business and not have to worry about, you know, this business interfering in your phone with that and record retention.
And you can put a note on there on your voicemail, I return these calls at a certain time of the day. And then you don't have to necessarily carry that with you every second of the day, you could come back to it and return those calls. That might be, I mean, there's ways you can manage it.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily a keep it in your pocket every minute of the day type of situation. Because the old situation would be a little different, because understanding would be that everybody has a paid job. So, with that being built in, yeah, you can just put that turn it at whatever time. Just gives you a little bit of separation and record, it tells us know whatever.
Do you think this is something we're going to need to take a vote on to authorize that? Or is that something you can just do with your discretion?
I think I should be able to do that.
I think, I think so.
I'm pretty sure. So, yeah, so we could get that in good hands.
The other benefit, let's do it, and the numbers will be similar too.
Yeah, yeah, so we can probably get that, we can probably get that probably within what, the next two weeks, I think. But just, yeah, but just take a look at the issue phone.
Or do you want us to look at Verizon and whoever gives the best deal? Because it can essentially be forty phones, since we do reimbursement. But, usually with takeovers, they keep the same number.
We could probably, I think we could probably at least go ahead and get the model number, because then we could still at least get.
On this, on this list, the newer iPhones, the smaller ones are less expensive than the.
Yeah.
So, that's probably, you know, the twelve.
Or some of those are the pros.
Yeah, what is V O L T, what kind of, what does V O stand for?
What usually?
Oh.
The V O.
V O L T E, like, like four L T E, this is V O L T E.
Who should I have the Verizon contact, reach out to as far as going to a call?
Okay, that's a good idea.
Okay, that sounds good.
He's asking who?
Oh.
Who should he reach out to?
Oh, who should he reach out to? Oh, he can reach out to me.
Derek.
Okay. I'll give him the call.
We got an updated number, there are currently thirty-five employees already, so we would be upping that number to forty.
iPhone twelve mini.
Yeah.
That's the one that has the five G, is a twelve, if we're going to go that route.
And they're not, I mean, they're as inexpensive as any of the others, in fact, a lot less than some of them. The twelve mini with sixty-four gigabytes, that should be enough for just county stuff.
Yeah, like I said, at least whatever happens five G wise, at least the phone will be compatible. Not happening just about within like six months.
All right, that sounds good. That's something we probably have needed to do for a long time.
Okay, so we'll get information from Verizon about that and we'll try to hopefully get that resolved in the next couple of weeks. All right, the next thing within this is, and I just want to kind of talk about government media just a little bit. Just, just to make sure, you know, we're all on the same page about what we're doing. Because, you know, we are undertaking the process of really working our Facebook and social media from a county perspective. Trying to see posts, actually, if it actually is put up, Caleb probably put some of those up too. But, just as far as how we're managing our social media information. We just want to make sure we're consistent in the information, so that it's just one point of focus whenever people need information. Like I tell people in the meetings and go to like a chamber where they have questions about things we're doing. Let them know that, you know, my account is the official source for Franklin County. Because obviously with having like the stop rendering and things that are being sent on there and having various venues of information. We want to make sure we're just consistent about that and that we all know what's being posted. You know, just only caution us just to be careful with our posts, you know, not to single out Eddie. And not single out Eddie, but just, you know, in comments, you know, it's not to single out or anything like that. But, you know, we just all have to just be mindful of those things, just be careful, whether it be in response, whether it be in posting information. And just make sure that we all know, if there's information that you want to put out on, on your pages, I mean, that's fine. You know, just shoot us a note of, you know, that you're sending out something, just so that, you know, as we're getting any phone calls towards that, we just know. You know, if there's something we need to respond to as far as comments on there, just, you know, let us know. Because we just want to make sure we're getting those calls and whatever the case may be, we just want to make sure we know what's out there and not there being a surprise to it. Because I'm out to a lot of meetings, I just want to make sure that I know what's there, what I, what I kind of need to be prepared for. I'm not really a surprise person, I did not like the surprise party I had once upon a time. It's not my thing, so, so I do like to just kind of walk into meetings, I don't, you know, I like to be able to walk into those situations and know what's there. And know what to be prepared for, so it's not an ambush in some of the releasing information once they, like I said, if whatever information is released, just shoot us a note. That we kind of know what's there, what's not, and not be like, oh, that's, that's, that happened, you know, we just want to make sure we're prepared. We're all consistent.
Yeah, and I'll say too, that we, the board, in light of recent events, has done really well about not commenting publicly about issues that are, that are before us. That we have to make a decision on. It's different if we're deciding something that doesn't involve a third entity. But, if somebody's, you know, asking us to make a decision like planning and zoning. Then it's important, we don't, you know, that we be open-minded, we're supposed to be open-minded until we make that decision. And I, I think everybody's done a good job of that, we've been, we've listened fairly to each side, we're listening to each side and then we'll make our decision. And that way, we're, the county is less likely for somebody who has an adverse decision to say, well, you were biased or you were never going to hear me out to begin with. So, I think, I think everybody's been good about that.
Yeah, and I apologize for my comments on social media, I just.
Well, but yours were directed at that application.
Well, I was fed up that night. I was, I was kind of tired of all of us being labeled as thieves and crooks and everything. And if it makes y'all feel any better, my wife got on to me about that too.
And Eddie's been, and I called him that next morning and checked on him. And Eddie's didn't, and I called him that next morning and checked on him.
I enjoyed the private jet flights out west myself.
But no, I mean, it wasn't anything that Eddie had that was bad, it was a comment. Well, it was just more of a comment to make...
That was a joke.
Yes.
Yes, that was a joke, everyone, but that was just to kind of make sure, you know, just, I kind of just mentioned this so that everybody just be aware, because as we have these type of situations, and whatever the next situation is, you know, we're just being mindful of it, because, you know, I obviously don't want you to get yourself in trouble or whatever the case is, too. So, I mean, just to be mindful, so I kind of just made, put that on there to make mention of that, not to call Eddie out in that way, but just to, just to, just to at least bring it up so we are all aware of it.
No, I shouldn't have done it. I will say that. I shouldn't have done it, but...
Well, I thought a lot of them were very reserved compared to what I thought you might would say. So, I don't, I mean, I think they...
My frustration boiled over that night.
No, like I said, that was fine, because it wasn't anything that was commented that was directed towards the company or that, the particular situation, but more directed towards those specific comments. So it wasn't a situation where I felt like we were in any danger, but, you know, I mean, it's just something, something for us to at least discuss and make sure we're talking about, so that we're, make sure to be just mindful of that, being careful, because, I mean, you know, that's only happened this one particular time, but we just want to make sure that it's just mentioned that we discuss that and just be mindful of it, just to be careful along.
No, but if anybody has ideas about things that they want to add to social media or you have some point, please just make sure they email us to let us know if you have some ideas, or even our website, because we want to grow with the use of it, because we want us to be accurate enough to date.
I think, too, if we could get some kind of, I say, community awareness, but, you know, there's different groups in the community that will do things every so often for a community or for some special reason, you know, if they could let us know, you know, we could help them.
You have a calendar, too, though. Are you getting any response, I mean, are y'all going out searching for your posts, or are people sending you information to display? That may be something that has to grow.
I personally see things that I see on my, many has really reached out yet, but we also have to be wary when it's like outside organizations, the government. There are certain things that we don't want to attach ourselves to, so we want to make sure that we're consistent with everything that we do now for clinic, although Franklin County promoting it as Franklin County, it's still something that affects our citizens and our community. And it is from like the health department that's promoting it, and their home that reaches out and wants to provide information about a nursing home. That's just something as an organization, so... We actually hadn't, it was an organization out of Atlanta, about basically provide free advertising. That's what it kind of... So we want to make sure consistency is there, but...
Do you have a, is there a form that people can fill out to, if they want to put something on there to submit, like it's the same for everybody?
So we have like an internal form, or our departments would do, but for like citizens, we don't really have that, because...
Just, yeah, if you just even limited it to name, date, time, and place, then you're not really, and you're right, you do have to be careful about some things, but then you have, you can be consistent with everybody. It's not really advertising, but if it's a community event versus a business.
Because our county was generally made for just events for the county.
For the county.
Yeah.
Yeah, and even with the vaccine rollout, that's Public Health through Livonia Community Awareness Group. So, I mean, there'll be opportunities to have, you know, we are trying to be as protective as possible of our social media, the information to go to anybody within that as much as possible, but, you know, we want to make sure we're just careful about the information that goes out, how it goes out, you know, it's not to make us look like a scripted show or something, but, I mean, we just do, you know, getting good information. I mean, we're working on, we do kind of have relatively a plan of how we do it. I mean, probably seen those posts already, like the library, we would be one thing promoting and how we that, the...
County Manager Friday.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good thing.
You know, things like that, that we kind of do already have, that we've developed, that we'll keep working through. We'll get to a point where a little bit more community education through our site and through a lot of those videos that I'm doing or whatever the case is. So we'll keep developing that as we go. I think we have a general plan of what we think that looks like, but we do try to just keep close watch on how that looks and what we're putting out there, just to make sure we're the most protective things in the best interest for the county, away from a lot of individual groups, unless it's something that broadly affects the county at this particular time, maybe in the future, and we're more developed, we might think about how we look at that a little bit differently, but at this time, it's probably a little bit more tight-reined to it of how we want to do that.
One more thing, I noticed on y'all's emails, y'all had the nice little signature with the new logo and all that?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Can we get a, how do you do that, or can we get that for our email? I think, I thought it looked good.
Yes, and that is something that Derek and I worked together about, wanting to make sure that we implement it throughout. So he, we're gonna talk with our department heads to make sure that they want to utilize it too, because we added the court's to our email signature, but I can create it for you and walk you through how to implement, to use it, because it is, you know, usable where it's linked to Facebook, it's linked to our website.
Okay.
So it is useful that way, too.
Okay, I'll just call you one day and we'll do that.
Yeah, that's why I'm glad you noticed. We appreciate that.
That's all Ashley, I literally just rubbed my hand. I didn't do anything at all. But, yeah, that's all Ashley. So the plan with that will be that we get consistent, too, in how we look as we go out, too, so we will here over some time, get all the departments to have that as their email signature, that relative format, just so that as we have information going out, you know, I believe strongly in everything we do looks the same and how we do it. Down the line, we'll get to some other things, and as we get policy written, we'll have some policy towards email response time and all those type of things that are personal things for me that I don't like, but right now, we're just sort of working to get towards those things and just being consistent. I think those are, like I said, little things, but I think they're important for just the overall look of the... Almost there. Alright, so what this next slide is, is this is just kind of what I've drawn up in terms of processes, sort of as we're looking at how we look at board appointment procedures. Sometimes I think there's been a little bit of confusion as far as exactly how we want to do that, who's on a board, length of term, when they're off the board, how long we want to post that, and some of these things that we just want to make sure we're strongly procedural on, just so that there's not board appointments that are just sitting or out there from months on in. There's a difference in procedurally doing that versus maybe just somebody doesn't want to do it. So, I mean, if we had a situation where people just don't want to do it, then, I mean, we can look at what that means, but as far as procedurally, we don't want to have that be the case due to issues. So this is just something that I've kind of drawn up that I think might be agreeable upon for us. This will be something that you guys will have to make decision towards and how we're doing that, to say yes or no to this. But I think this will be something that's ideal, that gives us procedure as far as board appointments, just so that we are consistent about it, we're able to track that information. Kayla knows, we're able to see what's there. So just looking at this, the boards that Franklin County have appointees, like I said, keeps track of appointees' terms and minimize gaps where no appointee is in place. So sixty days from the end of term, board commissioners will notify the clerk as to whether the appointee will have their appointment to be renewed. If it's just upon renewal, the board will notify the clerk in writing of this renewal, or option number two, have the position of the board appointee be posted. The clerk will post this for thirty days. This way, it just gives us, like I said, minimizing those gaps. We know who's in there, if there's ever a question to it, we can answer those questions easily. So I think it just gives us a little bit of a procedure just to shore up things, but if the board is agreeable to this, I think this is maybe a route that we go that helps us just with kind of keep a track of board appointees for us.
Now, if we have an appointment coming up, and even though the person's wanting to go ahead and stay on, do we still have to advertise it for thirty days?
I don't think they have to advertise it again for thirty days.
As long as they're wanting to be renewed, and we're in agreement, we can just keep right on going with it.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I think as long as then, as long as you'll give a writing to Kayla that that person's gonna renew, then we'll at least have that for a hold.
Nobody's been letting me know. So I don't know who's been on for how long terms. You know, we don't want another airport authority.
This has been a tough thing since I've been on the board as far as being kept up with, and I think it's been that way for many years before I ever came on the board. So it's, I mean, the airport authority was kind of embarrassing when it was brought to our attention that we hadn't made an appointment in twenty years. I mean, that was kind of embarrassing.
That was mainly for, that was for the chair position, because we had a member, Bill Flowers, something was appointed in like fourteen fifty, but not consistently. I mean, you're right, it's still embarrassing that it was not done on a regular basis.
Still supposed to make two appointments, you know, or at least review them.
Every, every four years.
And that had never been done.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that was done by the IBA.
Yeah, but it was, it was, it was theoretically, yeah, it was theoretically. I mean, we didn't catch it, but it was...
And that caused a mess, too. But, I mean, just in general, board appointments have been inconsistent, because it's been hard to keep up with, you know, whose time's up and everything, so I think this is a good move to kind of get that under control.
Yes, I would appreciate this, because I've been beating down the doors trying to get the bylaws to the undertow of all these boards.
Make a Google calendar that's just boards, and you can put, you can put them in, and then you can, you can put in when they've got to be renewed four years later, and then it'll send you email. I mean, you know, that might be a way that would keep it, without you having to put a lot into it.
That's the other issue I'm running into, didn't know about it.
And they don't, I wonder even, have they even met in the last year?
I'm trying to track down every single board, getting when their meetings are, because I'd like to have all this on the website, too. The public deserves to know if there are public meetings happening for these committees. And when I get phone calls, it's embarrassing when I have a position open and I don't know what to tell the person. Like, I don't know, I don't know what's going on. So I'm trying to get that information consistent in a chart, so we can answer those questions and have that information readily available. The other question that I had, because with letting people renew and roll over, this may not be a possibility at all, but how many times do you want to let the same person roll over in that position?
Well, I think we still have to vote on it each time, even when they're rolling over.
I don't think they have to.
I know, but I think we should, yeah. Even if they want to, they just need to notify you that they want, that they want to, or that that board wants them to be reappointed, and then we can consider it. That way, there's a track in the minutes ultimately, even though who wants to look through all that, but still, it would just document it.
And, you know, we went through that with one member of the IBA, too, that we, that was an appointment board, they had been on the IBA for many, many years, because they always just said, you know, "Yeah, I'll do it again," and so I don't think it was ever really...
Acted on.
It was, I think it was voted on, but nobody ever really just looked in to see if anybody else wanted to serve in that position, so...
So I guess, so I guess in kind of thinking about that in terms of sort of the renewal, you know, maybe we do want to think about, you know, maybe that be the case of it's a decision of advertising, maybe a decision of we think about term limit if we want, I mean, you don't necessarily have to do term limit, because you could just say, "We're gonna advertise," and if you don't want to select that person again, you don't select the person again, that would be the case.
And that might be different for different boards, depending on their bylaws, but maybe Bubba can help us decide if we, but I think we probably ought to advertise every time, because we've got to make a vote.
Yeah, yeah.
And that way, everybody has a chance, even if we don't select them, they have a chance to say, "Hey, I want to do that."
So, yeah, so we can, we can make it that way and just...
Hey, Bubba.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, so, yeah, I mean, your point's a good one. I mean, these boards are created various different ways, some by local legislation, some by county ordinance, some by state law, and so, you know, it's, I think, I think probably what has created the difficulties is just kind of assimilating all of those, all of those sources, and all of them are going to have kind of slightly different, different sets of rules that are gonna apply to them, so, hey, it might be hard to term limit them across the board just because of that, but we can work through it and figure out a policy at one time.
Yeah. I didn't realize Bubba was on the call.
The best thing probably is if we can get that overall listing, if we can get people to cooperate.
I'm out of chat, stay out of trouble.
Thanks for letting me do all the talking, I guess.
The biggest hurdle I have right now is just information gathering, trying to get accurate, updated information, because I've been having cases where I'm getting copies of the bylaws saying term limits should be this, and that's not what's being followed. Yeah, so I'm just trying to get...
And I think that's where, I mean, if it's in their bylaws that there's term limits that have to be followed, I think that's where we have to step in and make that, that move to make them correctly follow what the bylaws say.
Yes, and I think once we are able to compile this full list, then that way, it can better enact where we can notify whenever someone's term's coming up for you, and then that way, whatever decision needs to be made, or whatever falls within the bylaws, we're able to more track that closely. So once we have that together, we're able to put those notes in, and if we have a separate calendar for that, of being able to say, "Okay, well, X is done at twelve thirty-one of the year, you know, sixty days out, we're gonna be trying to make marks to know that, so that we can plan for it accordingly, and however their bylaws fit within that structure, then we can, we can bring that to the board and, you know, go wherever, whichever route that takes us."
If we don't find a new within thirty-day extension, how do y'all want to handle that? Because it is hard finding people to volunteer.
Are we having to advertise in the papers or just keeping it on the website?
Well, that was my next question. We've just been advertising on the website, and part of that is because I have a lot of information, so, you know...
I would say if we don't have any applicants, then we'd need to do it by thirty-day increments. But if we have applicants, then we could look at them after thirty days and decide that we want to pick one of them, and then I guess it would, it would depend on what we decide.
Yeah, and it might be a situation where once we get all the information better compiled, then we can better know about what we desire out of that board appointee, so then we can have, you know, description, a good description, we can post it on website, we can post it within the paper, too. It'd be clear and consistent information time over time, to where then, yeah, then if we do get to a situation where we don't have anybody that wants to do it, then we can enact an extension towards that, and then we can kind of see where we need to go at that point, if I can on that. But, I mean, I guess I would probably say, we probably at least maybe have one person in most cases coming in for these, and if we need to get a little bit more creative, I guess we could always go to Indeed and post things on there, workwise.
I know, I'm the liaison with the rec department board, and I know they have been without a member for a while now, and it's not been by their choice. I've talked with the rec department, the rec director, and he says it's in their bylaws that if they miss so many meetings, then, you know, they're talked to about it, but then they will be ruled that they're no longer on the board, and in turn, there needs to be a replacement name. But there was, I don't know if there was just some misunderstanding or miscommunication going on or what, but, you know, I know, they're still in need of a member.
And it's our appointee?
And it's our appointee.
So we just need to, we need to do, if that person's been off, not been present for...
No, they have not been present for quite a while now, and, you know, they were, they were called about it and everything, and, you know, they just haven't been back to any of the meetings, and, you know, it is in their bylaws, if you miss so many meetings in a row, then, you know, you're contacted about it, and then they'll move on.
So I guess in that case, based off their bylaws, and Bubba can chime in, I guess we just need to document that that person has missed X amount of meetings, and go from there, enact that we're going to open that position?
Probably that board has to say, "This position's now vacant."
Yeah, so that would be my, my recommendation would be to make, I think typically that request would come from the board to say, you know, by virtue of this person missing this many meetings, his position is vacant, please appoint a replacement.
So if you want to get with the board...
I'll have him do that.
Tell him to write in.
Just to make sure he's getting rid of it.
Yeah.
What I'll do is I'll tell him to send it through email.
Yeah.
That way it's, we've got it.
Right.
That'll work.
Handle it, okay. So I think, um, so I think just as, as we make that effort, or as Caleb makes that effort over this time period, we'll just try to gather all information about boards, bylaws, make sure we're following that, and whatever way we need to create a form that helps us track that and sort of know what's going on, uh, within those, we just need to be, make sure we're just aware of that, and it might be something that, um, on some type of basis that, that I report on, um, that, through the course of our, our work sessions or, or regular meetings, um, just to see what we've got going on, or any updates to that as, as we get that fully compiled, so that you're able to stay abreast of everything happening with those, or if there's changes upcoming, or whatever may be needed, just so we stay on top of it. So that might be the idea, that we kind of sort of look at managers' report in that kind of way just a little bit, so we can just make sure we're getting good information to you and, uh, things that are gonna be useful. Building that. Um, so the next thing ahead on here was just talking about building security, we've kind of talked about it just a little bit, um, just as we're going through, uh, like I said, if we're in, you know, one building, obviously that's a much easier thing for us to do, is sort of, is kind of like the IT situation, uh, to where if we're in one building, it is a little bit easier, um, I, I think just over some time, we just have to think about building wise where we are, security to those, um, I, I would probably say a, a little bit of risk to those too, um, you know, like I said, I mean, I don't think that everybody's out to get everybody or anything like that, or trying to be doomsday necessarily in that type of way, but, uh, but I mean, obviously, as being someone that does have to make some difficult decisions, uh, that affect people's lives, then, you know, it does put staff that's in the office, building with me, or whoever's in the area with me, into some type of relative danger or potential, uh, potential of. So we just want to be cognizant of that and think about that as we're kind of going forward. Like I said, if we end up getting to a point where we're all in one building, pretty easy fix, uh, we kind of have the one entryway, you know, it's not a issue, but, uh, you know, just keep it in mind that governments, you know, governments and churches are usually the easy soft targets, uh, that people usually go after, uh, when they're mad, uh, and for us being in situations where, you know, we had a water customer that was mad and, uh, a little rude to staff, uh, this past week, um, so I mean, we have those situations that are gonna happen, and when you're dealing with people, their money, their lives, whatever the case may be, that, uh, you know, I think we just need to be aware of it, uh, I don't know that I have an absolute plan of how we can handle that right this second, probably my, my plan is probably taking myself out of the front office, and, um, I think John's gonna, the engineer's gonna move, uh, to public works, and I'll move to the back of the building, so at least they're gonna run through a couple of hallways to get to me.
Don't worry, I'm in the front.
You know, not, not to say that I'm gonna make, make us a body shield here, but, but obviously you can see me through the front window.
Well, we could have put a, like we talked about, a door there, a secure door there, and maybe go in from the main, you're where you're at, into Rachel's, so there's some escape routes, and then you can secure and keep people crowded in front.
So the doorknob situation, I didn't even think about that being like a security thing. Remember the door for.
Oh, yeah, 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 maybe couldn't get out the door. Yeah, well, I, I just came back and thought they had locked me out, and I was like, man, I did a really bad job this first three weeks. So, um, but yeah, I mean, that, you know, those are options, so whether it's, uh, courting in off areas, or whatever the case may be, um, and even for disciplinary procedures, I've already talked to the sheriff to make a deputy available, uh, just to be there, uh, be close by, and also be the escort whenever they're leaving, um, it, it's sort of just the danger of the situation too, uh, situations we've had to where, uh, disciplined employee, whatever that looks like, and then needing to follow them to their workspace to then escort them, you know, there needs to be some separation as we're looking at those type of things procedurally, um, it just protects us, uh, to where then they can't say, well, you know, he fired me and then he came down to my office and whatever the case is, uh, so it's just looking at, uh, things in an overall securities perspective, I mean, uh, and, and like I said, you're gonna have people that are gonna be mad about things, uh, I, I had to run into those situations being an absolute problem, uh, it, it, I don't think anywhere that I've been, uh, but, you know, it's just something that we do have to think about, that's just the, the day and time that we are in, so we just want to make sure we're proactively thinking about it in some respects versus, uh, having to name a building after somebody with the negative things having happened. So it's just something to think about, uh, you know, and with us being in all these separate buildings, that it is also very difficult too, uh, because, I mean, you can't have a security guard in every building that we have.
One building, security cameras, that would make that a lot easier.
Yeah.
Those kind of situations.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, with us being so separated, it does make it very difficult because, I mean, we can't obviously have, uh, sheriff's deputies going building the building, to walk in and check on us every hour, or whatever the case is, we can't have someone sitting there, uh, but yeah, if we did get to, of course, one building, it immediately resolves the issue, because like I said, one entry point, uh, cameras, uh, probably if you had to have metal detectors or whatever type of, uh, access points, uh, it's a little easier at that point to manage through that.
If you, if you had, if you had one building with some, at least one court there, you're gonna have bailiffs which answer some of that.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, that was usually, uh, I think whenever I worked with Fulton and worked in Roswell location, and yeah, you had courts, so you always had, you know, you had sheriff's deputies there, built-in security, so those are the type of options that we have to look at, and, um, you know, just ways, uh, I guess besides me having my, my secure door and staff being left up front, just looking at ways of, of protecting all staff and making sure that, uh, that everybody's okay, I mean, we do have situations, you know, like in elections to where they primarily keep the door locked outside of an election season, and then they let people in as they do come, just so, you know, secure, I mean, there's only two people in there, uh, have that mindset.
I, I guess it, I mean, just, this is just me thinking right now, I mean, the, the two buildings that are probably the most least secure, that face the most, uh, negative feedback is gonna be the commissioner's office and the tax commissioners. And I, I really don't know how you secure the tax commissioners the way they're set up right now. I think in the commissioner's office, we could possibly put a door there before you get to going down the hallway, and maybe we could put a door before you come in there to where Rockies typically at, and maybe we just cut a, a windy, a glass window and make them pay through the window to, and confine them to that one little spot, maybe, you know, that way if they're angry.
Yeah.
They're, they're just in that one area, you know.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I, I, I think those are both the, the most vulnerable right now.
Yeah.
But as far as upset citizens and everything, because.
Right.
That's where you, I mean, that's where most of your complaints are gonna be heading to us either.
Yeah, 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 and, and like I said, it's not to be alarmist towards that, but I mean, we do just have to keep that in mind and make sure we're thinking about these, there's crazy people out there, stupid people that do stupid things, so we just want to make sure that we're, uh, keeping some thought in mind towards staff, if that's an option or, uh, you know, door, you know, doors that court often that are sort of a security barricade for us, uh, whichever way we have to think about that. We just have to make sure we're just putting some thought into this, it's not a today decision, uh, but just something that we probably just want to think about and consider, I mean, like I said, if we do pursue, uh, the one government center and, and that's a, a feasible thing, then however long that takes, we'll probably hold off maybe until that, uh, comes to fruition, but, uh, you know, and like I said, if we do get to that, then yes, uh, so we don't have an issue there, but, uh, but you know, that's another thing with IT as you kind of get in down the line, as we get into IT and that type of structure, than having like key codes, I, I think this is the first place I worked that didn't have key code entry, uh, as you go in, and it's not something that we necessarily needed, we're not huge, so it hasn't been a big issue for, for us to need it, uh, but, you know, a lot of places do have that, where that access is a little bit limited as far as where people can go, uh, within a building, and even if they are mad, or whatever the case is, or if they accidentally walk some way, they can't just easily walk into something or access certain areas, so it'll just be something to kind of think about. Uh, any other questions or comments, security wise? All right, just kind of talking through the audit a little bit, uh, and like, like I mentioned before, uh, they will come in, present the audit, um, at the work session, or upcoming work session, so they'll come through and talk through, uh, the, the general basics of it, there's, um, within your package, I did include within your package a sort of a draft of what the financials look like, uh, so we should have that copied, and I can kind of, and I can walk you through that just a little bit, uh, if, if you want to see that, uh, right this second, but the basics to it is that essentially with that, that's gonna show you the revenues and also the expenses, uh, so as you're, as you're going through that, and I'll pull it up for myself, I can tell you exactly what it's looking at. So as you're going through this, uh, that first column that starts with the, with the revenues, uh, that's just gonna go through all of your classifications of revenues that were collected, uh, through the various funds, uh, so looking at your emergencies, loss, so it gives you the total of twenty-two million, four hundred thousand and change, uh, below that is gonna show you what those expenditures are, and way that'll work, that'll go through the classifications of general government and beyond, and that gives you total expenditures of about twenty-point-five million, uh, so additional revenues, so as you continue to go down from that, that's, that's in excess, like I said, one-point-eight million, means that we've sold something, probably on gov deals, so that gives you, but that change and funds now, is that our fund balance as a whole, as you're going across all those lines, so fund balance just within the general fund, uh, increase button, but an overall, uh, fund balance increase, less revenue, less expenditures than revenues, um, as you kind of drop down below that, it's gonna show you what your original fund balance was, so as you drop from fund balance July one, the original, you can just drop down all the way to your new fund balance, uh, one-point-eight million, that, that increased our fund balance overall, so an overall third from eleven-point-three million, thirds are from eleven-point-three million to thirteen-point-one million. So, now, the thing, uh, and he'll probably talk a little bit about this, um, like I said, we just to kind of go through how this looks and what this means for us, if you see at the bottom where it says the fund balances across the board, the eleven-point-five million and then the negative two-point-four million, that, that's one financial thing we're gonna have to clean up, so what that means is that we weren't transferring funds from the general fund to the nine-one-one fund, oh, I don't know exactly how long that had been going on, and this probably should have been something the prior auditors caught, uh, but I guess did not, uh, but essentially, uh, the nine-one-one fund has a negative fund balance. Now, as far as financially, does that hurt us? Not necessarily, uh, that doesn't necessarily, our position is a positive thirteen, but what needs to happen over the next couple of years, and, and we'll take a look at this, I, I talked to him, and we'll, we'll take a look at this at the end of this fiscal year, if we have another big windfall to where we have that gap of excess revenues versus expenditures again, so like we have the excess of one-point-eight million here, let's say we have that again at the end of this fiscal year, we'll take that number, that fund balance, that additional fund balance, and we'll put it towards this two-point-four million, or whatever number it turns out to be, uh, to try to get a chunk of that out of the way, and then from this point forward, we'll be moving funds from the general fund, fund balance, to cover the nine-one-one balance, balance on a yearly basis, so essentially what, so I, so I would have to just guess that probably it looks like maybe in the last maybe six or seven years, maybe they hadn't been transferring funds, uh, but essentially what we should be budgeting for and planning to do is probably transferring about four-hundred-thousand dollars to five-hundred-thousand dollars, depending on the year, from the general fund balance to the nine-one-one fund balance to balance, and so that one should read basically as a zero to you every year. Speaking in, uh.
What, what is the emergency nine-one-one budget, like EMS or dispatchers or?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so your nine-one-one service is EMS and whatnot, so, uh, so they all fall within this, so usually, uh, they're gonna operate at a, at a, at a minus rate of income percent, uh, but, uh, but then at the end of the year, what we have to look at this is making sure that fund balance, so any fund that you have, uh, you either want to be positive or zero. You never necessarily want to have funds that are calculating that negative, so whenever we go through this, this year, we're gonna try, like I said, if we, if we are able to get a chunk of it within this next year, the end of the year, we'll do that, uh, but I told him if we're not able to do that, we'll just plan for, whatever the number comes out to be at the end of this year, we'll just make a plan of seventy thousand dollars, or whatever the case needs to be over time, we're not gonna take that number at one time because like I said, it's not, it's not negatively impacting, so we want to just make sure we do take care of it, but, uh, if we're not able to do it all, it, it, kind of, from there, once we catch up, then we'll always make sure that at the end of the year, there's a fund balance transfer that covers this.
But on the, on the total there, for the fund balance of June the thirtieth, thirteen million, one, how, how much of that is the actual reserve fund that we have? Because it's not listed on here.
And it's probably on another page, I only, I only pulled this one page off, since this was still the draft, we hadn't finalized everything when I put this together.
Yeah.
Um, we can go through that, I'll, I'll make sure he addresses that whenever we.
Yeah, last year's, uh, we were told it was two, I won't say between two-point-six and two-point-eight, and we pulled some of that to, to, to add in the raise to the budget, but, uh, I, I just wondered how much, how much of that kind of were we worth at the end of that year?
Yeah, I'll have to go back into the fore.
Okay.
This is, this is just, uh, the one page that I pulled and separated out of this.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure to kind of highlight this particular section, um, the only other thing I wanted to kind of highlight within this is just kind of being through the findings, so we did have ten findings, uh, within the, the audit, so this audit that we're finishing now, so I know the prior auditors didn't have any findings, uh, so I just wanted to make sure as we're talking about that in public forum, that we understand that is, auditors, uh, this is their opinion to how you should operate, looking at what our findings are within those ten findings, and I didn't print this off just because we still, like I said, we're, we just kind of finalized what we were, uh, out of this yesterday, but he'll report that and he'll have that copy whenever I get it, but out of those ten findings, then essentially with those findings, we're talking about procedural issues, so procedural issues that you're talking about within that are things like, uh, how money is handled, so for instance, you know, if I'm the person that is doing, uh, receiving, you know, I need somebody to verify my receiving, those type of things that we don't have in place, so it's just the two-step processes so that the same person that is maybe handling money isn't also doing another money handling than that, these are basically just opinions that look at your risk towards fraud, um, so like, for instance, in like the video, they always show, uh, within like Carlebans and whatnot, is a lady in Illinois that over the course of her career stole like fifty million dollars, because she was doing a hundred percent of every cash handling activity, there was nobody ever viewed that for her, so the only reason they caught her is because she was on vacation one year, and then somebody else had a question, and then as they started to unravel that question, then that's when they realized that's how she was funding her horse farm and her show horses and all that stuff, um, so, so this is kind of the basis of where this comes from, yeah, it's a true story, um, but this is the basis of where that comes from, is just looking at, making sure you're minimizing the risk, uh, so a lot of these things we'll be able to put into place, uh, going forward, uh, but it's also something too to where they're gonna be back in five months to do our audit, uh, we're probably gonna have some of these things to be recorded on the next audit as well, uh, reason being is because they just finished the twenty-twenty audit, we're only two and a half months away from being finished with twenty-twenty-one, so we really don't have enough time to necessarily go through and correct those, um, at a time length of value, if it were a situation where it was July one and we were able to get those things implemented and, uh, or it had been happening from July to December, and then we implemented from January to June, they would give us credit for having fixed the issue and not reported that finding, uh, because, but because of the length of time, and us probably essentially having fixed it for about two months, I would probably bet we're gonna see those audit, uh, but it's not something that I, I think is a little worrying, uh, I think it's just more of a, uh, informational that, um, the goal, of course, is always zero findings, but we're getting to get towards that, but typically, like I said, this is an opinion from an auditor, and also too, you do have the factor of changing auditors, so as you change auditors, you change opinions, so last auditor obviously didn't find any issue, uh, with, uh, with this auditor, their opinion is that they see that there might be changes, so that's kind of, uh, just the, the sort of perspective to have as they're going through that report, uh, and whenever they come and do that at the work session, uh, for any questions that you may have, uh, but, uh, but I think still overall is that I think we're still in number one, good financial position, and then number two, I think, like I said, with those only being procedural issues, then we're in good position as far as what the auditors are finding, not finding some major issue that we have that is hardly corrected and put in the set.
I, I think something that I found out kind of concerning, and it was about a week ago, I had one of our former constitutional officers had called me and just said, I'm glad y'all have hired a new accounting firm to do the audits, and I said, why is that? And they said, well, not one time did that other accounting firm ever come to my office and discuss anything with me, didn't go over any numbers. with me. Didn't go over any numbers or nothing. And I'm like, why are you telling me now? You know, we should have known that back then, that they weren't coming and meeting with constitutional officers, you know. Makes me wonder, you know, did they meet with any department heads or, you know, so I'm, I'm go ahead and we're back with who we're with.
I'd say they did a thorough job, it sounds like.
Yeah, yeah. They did a good job and a little format what we're doing to what's gonna fit their opinions. So even just aside from those procedural items, from a reporting standpoint, we'll, we'll, we'll fit a lot of things that we're gonna do. I told them, I do have plans to change financially how we report and how we are logging information. But we're not gonna change anything in coming fiscal year. We'll look at next fiscal year at some different little things, nothing, nothing major. That's just out of control, but just the way we're reporting yours and some just minimal reporting items to review as you're looking at the budget and reports of how things are in there. So they're minimal items, but I told them, let's leave everything as it is right now. So we can at least make sure we can do it. Then going from there, I pretty well know exactly. Out of that, we can start working towards that and we'll get those things that were following in compliance. Make sure to consult with them as we're making those changes. We, we talked through pretty well everything that is following in line. But if you do have questions about it, just as you're kind of thinking about it, once I do, like I said, get the official final report, then I'll send that to you. This is just the fact that we've made. Any other audit questions?
Questions? Okay.
All right. So we kind of talked about it a little bit. I know there's been either the phone calls I've gotten from some of y'all or phone calls you're getting just about a litter problem. So this is just a very loose slide about what we can do with that. So just kind of thinking through a few options that we may have within this. So and I have had that from some citizens as well, looking at like Gwinnett County does, a few other areas like Keep Franklin Beautiful or some of those type of organizations that are out there. You know, if we can get the backing and get the support of the citizens to really buy into this and spearhead it, you know, we could probably help to be associated to like a Keep Franklin Beautiful type of organization that in us helping to support it in ways. Again, that is something where we have to really have buy-in from the citizens to make sure that they are gonna keep it up. You know, but in terms of organization wise, that would be a route to go. We could form, I mean, really, the citizens can form their own coalition if they really wanted to just do that, if that's something they're actually gonna do. But it'd be a little bit more up for the citizens to make that decision of how they want to proceed with that. You know, there are, like I said, and we can partner with those organizations to support in whatever way is possible. But I think it is something about in terms of programming wise, what we want to do, how we want to do. I think we'll kind of talk a little bit about, you know, it wasn't meetings about, you know, a sort of forgiveness day and, you know, us setting up some dumpsters and everybody bringing whatever you have, tires or whatever. I mean, if you have to set up multiple dumpsters for the different types of recycling or ways that needs to go out, you know, it's just something that we can think about how we want to do that. But again, even if we set up that type of day, we want to make sure prior to that, we're really getting involved in the community to where they're gonna upkeep this. Because have the one day and then the rest of days, the trash getting piled back out there. I mean, yeah, it's clean for a little while, but now it's back to what it was. So we really just want to make sure we're thinking in terms of who's we can partner with that might be interested in sort of being a spearhead and then us just partnering with them. I do have listed information up here about gentleman that reached out with Tyler Jarvis, his organization of firefighters that they go through on their off days and which is, this is just a little bit of the numerical that they gave to me about it of how they do this. So looking at from zero to up to 49 miles, looking at 50 to 99, 179, 60 per mile, and then over 100 miles, they calculated $120.50 per mile. So again, it's just, I think it's just something we need to take a look at from an overall standpoint of we have the community backing to keep it clean. I think it would be worthwhile at that point if we get that type of backing to say we're going to hire this firm or whomever to come in and maybe get the initial cleanup. But then we want to make sure that it's standing as much as possible. And then we can still have a conjunction with that, the inmates can still help kind of fill in the gaps.
What if we had them do the county, the state roads maybe twice a year and partner with, see if we could get with the Chamber of Commerce to help us do, to keep, let them spearhead the Keep Franklin Beautiful and let us provide them.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, what if, you know, we do something like with the Chamber and they reached out to businesses and, you know, a business said, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take so much of this road and I'm gonna keep it, you know, our company will make sure we keep it clean. And then do we put, you know, you see some signs up that says this, this road kept clean by such and such company, you know, or something like that. And, you know, maybe if you can get the businesses involved, you can also get citizen groups involved along with it.
Close the high school or something or.
Yeah.
Only thing.
Sorry. Look, I think I emailed all y'all that picture the other day. I had to stop and take, I mean, how do you lose the front end of your car and just leave it laying on the side of the road? I mean, that just blew my mind.
Was that on Gerard Road?
Yeah.
We found car parts.
You know, I mean, there's just some people that don't care. But I think, I think, you know, with the phone calls that that we've gotten, I think we do know there's a lot of people in the county that does care. And so, you know.
Company that I retired from, I noticed from where their place was out to 320, it's trash city. So I went to the president of the company and I said, Kent, I want to mention something to you. When you go out to 320, have you ever noticed all that trash? I said, you go back the other way and there's not any. So that tells me that the guys that are driving these trucks are throwing trash out. He said, we'll take care of that. They had to go out there and pick all that trash up. I mean, a lot of us employees, wherever they work, like over on Gerard Road.
Talk with them.
I mean, it's.
I mean, I went out there just in front of our, our location where I'm at, and I filled a big trash bag up of trash, just picking up in front of where our location's at. You know, it's, I think if we can get the business involvement and community involvement, I think we can maybe get a handle on it at some point. But it's, it's gonna take a lot of buy-in to do it because of where we're at right now. I mean, you know, it's, it's kind of embarrassing.
It was like all they need to do is just set a match to it and burn it off. Heck we're picking it up.
The bad thing about it is it reaccumulates so fast.
Volunteer firemen come out and keep it calm down.
Yeah. Only thing about the state roads is the state, whenever they come to do the bushhogging, they have a crew that'll pick up trash. I hate for us to have to pay for it when the state's gonna do it for free.
But how often do they do it?
They do it two, three times a year. I mean, we probably didn't even want that. But they, they'll, whenever they bush hog, they'll come through and pick it all up. So I hate for us to pay.
Yeah, if they're doing it often enough.
Yeah. For us to pay and the state's gonna do it for free. So.
Right. Right. Yeah. And it might be worthwhile just taking a look at sort of how often they do it, if they're doing it two times. How does it look in between those times? Is it worth in between the times to where we need to hire or is it minimal? I mean, you know, kind of think about it in that term so that, you know, if we are gonna pay for it, it's because like it's just.
When do you do it when they're not coming the next week, you know, to do it? To make it time it, time it right. Do it in between their time.
I thought the sheriff, he says, he said the inmates can't pick up. I don't know why. He said they can't do state roads. They can only do county roads. I don't know what the, I don't know what that is. But, but he, they are doing something.
Yeah. I mean, but still, I mean, you could probably take every inmate out of that jail and have them pick up trash, and it's still ain't gonna make a dent in it right now.
Yeah.
People have gotten so bad.
Yeah. So, so we can partner, I can talk to the chamber. I'll get a regular call tomorrow and talk to them, see how they can help us to sort of build that. And if we can start to, number one, I think, get the businesses to buy in, see if they'd be roadway or, start there with them. And then if we can start to get that and start really pushing the thought social media wise, really start to get people to see that and start to think it was out there. So I mean, I think there are a lot of people that do care about it or else nobody would be getting calls to it. But, but I think we just need to sort of corral in wherever the problems may be. Because I know even with some areas that kind of cut through roads that people were cut through there and that's where they're sort of tossing trash all the time, the tires especially, the things that you might have to dispose of.
Is there fines for litter up here?
I'm sure, I'm sure there's fines, but.
If Matt told me he couldn't find, he couldn't, if litter was coming out of a car, he couldn't, that he couldn't find.
Maybe the cities would help us with this too, like in addition to the chambers. Because they have invested interest in it too. Maybe we're all on the same page.
If it's coming out of the car, then it's a moving violation. And that's, that's why the marshal would look at that jurisdiction over that. It would pad it in, then law and course of.
Thanks, Bobo.
Matt also wasn't.
Deputized.
Remember the county, we could provide a sign, get a logo made or something, provide a sign that if, if, if businesses sponsor, that give them kind of ad placement, you know, either like Harbin Lumber or, you know, any, any business could, whatever road they sponsor, have a sign, a little logo made and have their logo or just, just their name, have their logo, but have their, their name and their business who sponsored it, Ford Club or something.
I'm glad you said Harbin because I guarantee you, Harbin Lumber will take a stretch of road or whatever because the owner actually come into my office one day. And even though he's really not running the company anymore, he's still the man. And Baron come to my office one day and he, he asked me, he said, I just want to ask you, have y'all noticed the litter in this county? And I said, yes, sir. And we, we are discussing it. He said, you know, it's downright awful what people will do. And, and he, he talked about it a lot. And, and I know Harbin would get involved with it because he would make sure. And, but our CEO was very big on it too, because it's not uncommon for him to send out emails that, you know, to all the general managers that, hey, you need to be making sure that either you or somebody at your location at least once a week is picking up trash out on the roadside in front of your location. So.
Yeah. So probably starting with the businesses that it has.
You might consider speaking to the probate judge as well because that's, that's an opportunity to connect it to per. I know as a, as a judge in other courts, I'm always looking for community service opportunities for, for folks to do. So that might be a good one.
That's a good idea.
Great.
Can the magistrate do that too, or is it just probate?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. We can talk to them. So I think, so I think it is one of those that we kind of get from all angles. And then, you know, businesses talk to, talk to the courts, see if they'll make that kind of their primary assignment for us if it's possible, or at least keep that in mind for them. But then also to give that signage for businesses that do participate. So we can kind of just partner with the chamber to try to help them in that respect. But I think two, we'll still maybe want to, as we kind of get this all put together and get that community buy-in, social media, still think about maybe a business like this comes in and does.
They hit it hard the first time.
Well, yeah, whatever stretches we, we think is fitting for us. But also two, then still having like a community day where, you know, if you got those things that are hard to, or recycle, computers and maybe we could partner with like document destruction to pick up computers, lumber and tires, all those things that are a little bit harder to necessarily dispose of or that people, you know, try to just toss out in, in open areas. So, so I think we'll just have to kind of hit on all those angles.
Commerce, I was just gonna mention, that's where I live. They had just, they're doing a big spring event. They're doing all their festivals and stuff, but they're doing that day. And it had delineated, you know, technology, two computers per person and so on and so forth. So you could bring tires and all these weird random things, like big items that need to get rid of. But there were limits. If you wanted to go over it, it also told you the price per. So that way, like if you had a whole ton of this stuff, here's your freebies. Here's what you could pay for anything additionally.
Right. Yeah. Fulton and Gwinnett have those type of days. Fulton's dumps. Yeah. So what is the thing in terms of pricing for over what's said? I know Fulton's dump, if you just pay non-resident $25, $25. But we can think about some type of overage of what that means and how to do things. So I think, so I think as we kind of look at that, these would be overall things that are on a continuing basis. And then maybe as we need like that little bit of extra, then we're talking about the inmates being able to hit certain patches or a company like this that can still hit like some of those little patches. I prefer us not to get into the big number paying out necessarily for it as much as possible. I mean, yes, we have to do it for that initial to kind of catch us up a little bit. And then everybody is helping to maintain at that point, then yeah, that's I think, okay. But I think on a consistent basis, we probably don't want to get to where we're just simply paying out. It gets a little bit more buy-in. I think if, you know, citizens or businesses or some combination of all of the above, they have to go, you have to go pick up trash yourself, it's different from knowing that somebody else is gonna do it for you. So also I think we'll just have to work to get that kind of buy-in from everybody and, and, you know, and help, help themselves hold each other accountable. And then Marshall, get him in a situation to where he has a little bit more power and control over what his role is to.
Now, is it Gervonta Brown? That does that LaVonia Community Awareness Page? You know, he might be somebody good to get involved with it too, that, you know, he might be able to do some community things with some folks to help, help with it.
That'd be good.
Yeah. Yeah. I know. So, yeah. So I know with us, and I did talk to him when I was at the event. So we're gonna try our best to, any group like that, we do want to try to partner with as much as possible. Because obviously, whatever is good for the community is good for the county. And as I've kind of talked to the city managers or and or mayors, just, you know, letting them know, I mean, the county supports them. We're not here to some overlord. We're not in a, cared as far as a lot of the little things, as far as who's getting the tax dollar, whatever the cases, we want to make sure the focus is, we're focused on the citizens, the services we're providing to them, what we're doing. So however we can support them in that fashion, we want to do that. You know, we don't care as good for your city, it's good for us. Whatever's good for us is good for your city. And that's the way we approach that and the, the relationships. So we need to make sure of what we're doing. Probably as I start to kind of clear up a little bit here than, you know, I've talked to them before about having something to where, you know, we're kind of meeting as city officials, maybe once or something, something of that realm a little bit, just so we can all make sure we're on the same page and try to do. Okay. So I think that is a good start for us there. Like I said, also too, I'll talk to the judges to make sure that they can keep that in mind as they're making those assignments. Anything else we have towards litter or anything of that? All right.
Okay.
All right. This latest items. So kind of first, they kind of look at that and I think I did have a report about that today.
Janitorial.
Yeah, we skipped janitorial first.
It's not on the slides because it's not updated.
Oh, that's, my bad. So I gotta have people to keep me in line. So, all right. So janitorial services, just looking at contract services. So I guess, again, this is another one where as we're thinking about it, if we do get to one building, pretty easy solution. I've been a little hesitant in kind of looking at that right this second just because of us having so many locations. It's a little bit tough because not everybody needs daily cleaning and like not even everybody needs couple of times a week cleaning in a lot of scenarios. But I think it's something we will have to look at. So I guess as we're making that determination as far as moving to one building or if we're gonna stay in separate buildings, we will have to think about that down the line. I think I can sort of pause that for the moment. But I think we will have to sort of think about that again, as if we were in, say, one building, pretty easy solution is one building, you're having one group come in and clean. But it is a little bit difficult with us having the multitude of buildings and saying there were different timeframes. It could still be done. But I, but I wanted to at least kind of get this point to where we're talking about one building first, before I invest too much time into that. Just for the sake of not having staff have to go through and clean themselves and not that nobody's above having done it. But I mean, there's sometimes, there's just these little things, I think, in the course of operations that we have to think about, you know, I think in the course of operations that we have to think about, you know, is it worth our time doing this? Um, you know, so you gotta think about it in, in that way, you know, am I spending my time instead of getting shredder bins, shredding boxes, uh, instead of our clerk of court coming down to our office and spending four hours shredding papers? Why would we want our clerk of court spending four hours shredding papers? It's all that that it's that we will not do. So we have shredder bins on a time, you know, even if it's thirty minutes in a day, you know, can the time be better spent that we're doing it? Just to make sure as everybody's here at work, they're spending the time and maximizing those. That could probably be done in some other fashion. Uh, so we will get to that point. Uh, probably kind of hold off on like, probably.
We said like shredder bins, you mean like document destruction or somebody coming to pick the bins up?
Yeah. Yeah. So, so with them having, well, they, they just got their, uh, ninety-six gallon bin delivered at court yesterday. So thrilled about.
I bet so.
Yeah. So, but yeah, I mean, but it was her, literally rolling down every so, every what couples, something like that. So.
Is that some, is that just something that we've done?
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
So that's just something that we've always done.
That's, that's good improvement.
So, you know, let's, 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 you know, there are people, especially.
Clearly got more paper now than when it started, though.
Yeah, probably.
So, so yeah, so they, they, they got a lot of paper. She's got that ninety-six gallon bin delivered and had a ninety-six gallon full taken away at the same time. So yeah, they, they have a lot of paper, but, um, I think that'll just kind of help to, uh, maximize their time and. All right. Probably almost there. So on to the miscellaneous. So the thing I want to kind of talk about with what we're looking at is just looking at the potential of countywide alcohol sales. Uh, I, I know it's not always necessarily popular measure necessarily for everybody in mind, uh, but just something I think we got to talk through, uh, just because it's, so I guess in my viewpoint of how that looks is, and I actually just got a report from, uh, ACCG today about that and looking at kind of wet versus dry counties. Thought in my mind towards that is it's a little bit limiting in some respects of not having the ability to attract restaurants that maybe we want to sell alcohol, uh, within the county structure. But, uh, but also two, county is not selling, city is selling. So it's one of those things to where we're, I think in some respects, limiting ourselves a little bit. Uh, this would be of course something that would have to have a referendum to it, but, uh, but it's something that I think does limit us in some ways, uh, being that we do have sales within the county, but not in the county. Uh, but I think it's one of those that looking at it, it's, uh, ability to raise some funds without raising taxes. So some minimal tax increase, uh, looking at the attraction of restaurants and other businesses, uh, that do serve alcohol, uh, citizens. Cause I mean, talking to citizens, it's more of an issue now to where they just feel surprised by it, you know, at the end of the day. So, you know, we're sort of bypassing those funds, uh, for the consent. It's kind of had the same situation being Lawrenceville that they were staunchly opposed to having alcohol, having like a liquor store within the city located in Lawrenceville, but they literally would go five minutes to Swannie and then come back to Lawrenceville. So I mean, what's the value to it to us? I mean, that's just a thought to have, uh, restaurants and whatever they have. So I know it's not the, uh, probably most popular topic, but I, but I think it's something to think about as we go forward too. Just because as I was saying, we want to grow the county and we want to bring in those businesses, you know, it does automatically cut off a certain sector of business. And do we want them? The thought for you would be, do we want to cut off that certain sector of business? Um.
It, that might be interesting. I mean, what about if we did a, some kind of county survey, like online and just ask what the interest is in that? I'd be curious to know.
Yeah. Yeah. We can do that. Uh.
Like a Facebook poll?
Here, I want to. Maybe.
The city of Royce did set it up to where the citizens vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. It has to be a referendum.
Yeah.
I'm thinking like online, like survey monkey or something.
Does it require us to vote on it?
No, we, we would need a referendum on that, I believe.
We would have to approve the referendum, I think. Right?
Yes. Bobo, is that right?
Yes, sir. Uh, you, you would have to, uh, pass a resolution to call for the referendum. That would then go on a, go on an election ballot and then the, the folks would, would then vote on it. But you, you would have to take some action to, uh, to begin that process.
If that's something that we pursue, that to me makes sense beside if they want it or not.
Yeah.
I just thought before we did that, we could gauge what, you know, is there public demand? Would people like to see that? Well, I mean, just to get an idea. It can't be a scientific survey, but we might still be able to put some numbers to it. Well, these are the people who bother to do the survey and say, yes, that's what I want.
Yeah.
Okay. Not too long ago, um, and the top two things that they wanted to see were grocery stores and restaurants. Some of the higher chain grocery stores have liquor or alcohol.
But was there a question specifically about, so?
What about alcohol? But, you know, some of those bigger chains that are in there because of that.
Yeah. So that, but that might be something to tell us. We'll.
Yeah.
I, I think too, I mean, I have gotten probably a space looking in the last year, but over the last several years, grocery stores has always been one of the things that people have talked to me about. They want another option.
Right.
And, you know, I've been told, I don't care if it's a Kroger, a Publix, a Ingles, an Audi or whatever. I don't care. I would just like to have another option. And.
We might ask people on that survey, which I don't, people may not be honest about that, but the radio could help us advertise it, but just say, are you a resident of Frank- of Franklin County? Would you like to see, you know, something so that we could have some idea, you know, that not just random people are doing it, but maybe that people were, and you could even ask, what city?
Franklin County and then what city?
Yeah. What? So then we could see was it, cause they're, if they're, what city their address is, even if they're in an incorporated area, so that they would kind of see, is it a certain area or is it countywide?
Besides trash, that's been the biggest thing people have pointed me about is want to open a restaurant in Gumlog or want to sell alcohol at the store out there by the park. They're just going.
Yeah.
Right over the line, the Stevens County and buying it and coming back.
Right.
Or going into the, I guess, the city, city, in the city that's in buying it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I know that the city has done studies on grocery stores. There's not enough rooftops, they say, for, for any of those. That's our problem is there's not enough people in one square mile, however they figure it.
Yeah.
Uh, there was none of them were, were not big enough to have any of those in LaVonia.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause I mean, I know Royce just had that new food line open up a few weeks ago. Um, but I mean, I think as we continue on, then those will be the opportunities that come. I mean, we're not maybe big enough for it right now. Uh, but again, that's just sort of that.
Prepare for it.
Yeah. That thought in the future of, you know, do we want to get big and then say that we have to like hurry to make preparation towards that.
See, I'm going to get on the strike.
Uh, I mean, it's possible.
There's so many people that live there.
I mean, it's, 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 it's a growing population.
Our consolidated, they could, they're condensed.
I'm just thinking.
I was just saying, people at their lake houses.
Yeah.
Want to go to a nice restaurant at night.
Yeah. I had a lady come to me at the, the meeting we had about the water, water deal and said that she owns some, I think she owns a restaurant in, in Lawrenceville, maybe.
Okay.
There's a lady came to me and said that she wanted to open one in Gumlog, but it needed, needed to have the alcohol sales.
Yeah. Yeah. So it can be restrictive, uh, in those terms, uh, cause I mean, you're talking about restaurants, you're talking about, uh, different type of like even golf clubs, uh, or resorts in some situations. So hotels that would want to do that. Uh, so you have a, a multitude of businesses that might want to do that, but you don't want to have something that's telling them, we don't want you. Uh, and it's not also saying that we're trying to promote necessarily. We're, we're not promoting necessarily saying that we want to just give alcohol to our citizens. If it's something they want, then, you know, we want to make sure that's an available option for them. And, and we want to be, have those opportunities to where those businesses do want to come for them, uh, if, if that's what they want to do. Uh, but it's just something that I think we have to think about and look at, uh, and we can gauge the interest towards that. And if the interest is there, then we can proceed with those steps, take a look at it to see if it's, uh, you know, what people want. If they don't want it, then I mean, that's okay. Uh, but I think at least looking at it as options, uh, it does solve, I think, a few of those concerns we have.
On, on Facebook, I wonder if you could do it on Facebook, if they would automatically prevent people from voting twice. So in other words, you do.
One question. It's like a yes or no for the poll. So I would have to create a survey monkey, which is perfectly fine, but it gives more detail. And then you can even put in there a clause of this is just for gauging your information, the, you know, citizenhood. Um, on this. And then it's also shareable and it does create the IP linkage where only one person.
At that, at that spot.
Can, can vote.
Okay. Yeah. So I mean, I think it's at least worth venturing to see what's there and, and see what the interest is. Uh, and then once we know the interest, we can go from there to see whatever path that takes us. Uh, but I think it does open up a lot of, of business opportunities for us down the line and things that I think people do generally want and whatnot. So I think it could be, at least worthwhile seeing what's there. All right. Finally, uh, anything else on alcohol sales?
I'm not interested in it. I'll just tell you upfront, I've got a son that ain't worth knocking in the head on account of alcohol. Creates problems for people. And I'll hush it there.
And not that I like, and again, not that we're trying to cause problems for anybody or trying to push those on anybody.
But I've never known of a restaurant being built in the county. The ones that I know are in cities.
Yeah. Yeah. And again, and like I said, if Gumlog turns into city, kind of resolves itself, uh, in a lot of ways for us, uh, if, if that were to be the case. Um, as currently structured, then we're sort of on account for Gumlog. Uh, still venturing into that to know where it takes us. Uh, so it might be in a situation to where if Gumlog does become a city, then it's not something that we have.
We could do a survey on that too, about Gumlog and see what people think. That may reach a wider audience. Before we have a public ear, you know.
Yeah.
Be interesting to know.
Yeah. Yeah. Like I told them, I mean, if we, if they're interested in it, I mean, we can have a town hall with them to explain what the processes are and whatnot and some of the benefits to that and just what it looks like. Uh, so I mean, I think these are just, just overall questions that we just want to at least get answers to. Uh, so I mean, we just want to know what's there. Cause I mean, if they're, I mean, if you're getting some of these calls restaurant wise, or if we're getting calls as far as issues that Gumlog is having that we just can't put the resources into address. I mean, we just want to make sure we're finding creative ways to be able to help address those. Um, and these are probably, I think about the best options I can come up with as far as.
That's a great idea.
Being able to address those. Um, and if, and if the answer is note all of them, then I'll move, gladly move on to the next topic.
If we made one for Gumlog, what would we want to ask? Like, are roads your concern?
Do you want to be a city?
Yeah. Are you, yeah. Uh, would you, would, if, are you a resident of Gumlog? Would you be interested in, in seeing Gumlog become a corporate, become a city? Uh, you know, it could be pretty simple to you.
Yeah. Yeah. Something to the realm of the interest of being the city. Um, I, I can, I can deal with the comment section on that one. I can deal with, I can deal with comment section on that.
Wondering before you release that, I'm just kidding.
Oh, warn you.
Who's going to bear any mission?
Feeling, why don't you run? Problem solved. Um.
I'm just kidding.
Well.
I'm, I'm interested to see if people are interested in that.
I, I, I'm only interested in comments on that one, just because since it's a yes, no, it's hard to know reasoning and any other thoughts they have to it. So it's kind of hard to.
Could I say, if you say yes, why do you feel would benefit?
But do a radio and just say, which of the following services would, do you feel like you would benefit from a city of Gumlog? And just list police, fire, water, sewage, you know, just listen and see what they say. And that might get them to thinking, oh, that's why it should be a city. Just thought, I don't know.
I don't know if they can, we're all.
Well, I know, but that, that was something that would take time.
Yeah. 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 I mean, but it would be a thought. I mean, they, they maybe couldn't do it initially, but it'd be something that they could work towards down the line. I mean, you could always.
The sky's the limit when they're their own city.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, they, I mean, they can.
They can provide the services they think they're willing to pay for, you know, tax wise.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
That the city would typically provide.
Yeah. They, they would have the opportunity that they could, in theory, you know, get funding to be able to help.
It would give them more controls.
And, and yeah, it does give them a lot more control. So that's, you know, a big plus to it. But I mean, I, I'm willing to take a comment on a yes or a no, honestly, just so we know, uh, just, just what their thought is. I mean, uh, cause I mean, there might be some no's that are thinking something that's not the truth, uh, that we might be able to kind of more, uh, manage through and address. And then if there's yeses, we can still manage through and address. If there's yeses that are unrealistic, yeses too. Uh, so it might just be an opportunity that, that way if, you know, if not just blowing up just because, but then we can specifically kind of know, well.
Well, we put this survey into the county cell phone.
I just wonder if we could even eventually, be- before we proceed that, I mean, if there's, if we, if we start talking to people and there's a lot of interest, if, if we could have a, a, uh, referendum in this, in Gumlog as well, how they want to incorporate, you know, just over in that region, because they're, they're a voting district and just see if that's something, a very densely populated voting. But, but first we would need to gauge interest.
Yeah. And I guess we can do that.
Because if, if they're not, if they're not interested, you know, why go to all that extended trouble to put it together?
Yeah.
If nothing's going to change.
Yeah. Yeah. And, uh, yeah. And, and I've talked to the players of Gumlog. So, so, so hopefully they're going to get the message out and get the understanding. Um, so, so I'll, they'll, they'll, they'll call me back here in a couple of days and, and should kind of tell me what they, they think. Um, and at some degree, but we can still survey. And we can go through all those steps and process just to make sure that they're good to go with that. And cool. All right. Uh, I'll see. Anything else on alcohol sales slash Gumlog? Okay. All right. Finally, uh, and then just talking about bid openings and just the thought that we have towards that. I know we kind of talked about it, um, a little bit of bid openings and what that can look like. Um, and I guess my thought towards, uh, well, I guess, uh, maybe Jason and I had that conversation of wanting to do that in public meeting of opening all the bids. Um, my personal thought would be that might be some long meetings. Uh, uh, my, my personal thought would be maybe if we dedicated a page on our website to give summary information to bid openings. Um, but I mean, that's.
But we do need, I think we do need to, when we're, we've got a bid like for LME, we need to in public say what the other bids are. So people can see what we're, what we're actually considering, rather than we just say, well, we're going to give it to X company at this bid because they had the low bid. So people can see, what exactly are we turning down? Because that ought to just be a matter of transparency.
Yeah. And, and maybe that's a webpage that we can upload the docs. Or, or at least the.
I know that when John and I spoke there, that is still option for citizens to see, think of the state. So if certain things we can, can do for public works, link them to books. But his thinking was who would be, he wasn't able to maintain that with all the due attainment to make sure of it.
We, we can mainly though, we could mention them, but we can definitely talk about them more in open meeting, just so that everybody's aware, you know, what exactly we're looking at, rather than just hearing that we gave a bid for a project to X company.
So maybe, uh, so maybe the idea might be that we use a website, uh, to those sites for the full information. And maybe then the meeting is just providing some information. I'm sure we probably pull together, uh, maybe a list that says company information, bid number and, you know, what it's for. So just some short summary information. Just some, um, other thing I don't have listed on there at all.
I think they like to practice.
I mean, I don't, but I guess I'm full of it. Uh, is, is I think, I think other thing that we'll have to take a look at in the future too, well, probably in the future as in like now, is, uh, the thought of like interns and generating interns type of program for us to where we are, you know, just consistently trying to utilize like UGA or Emmanuel or whoever. Uh, I, I did reach out to UGA, um, looking at theirs. So they have their MPA program and they, they'd be a hundred percent on board with us generating a, a job description and having somebody come and work. It could be various timeframes that they're working, half a summer, summer, semester. Um, you know, like I told, I generated something for him out there to look at that we would be willing to try to focus our energies and also take topics within government, uh, so that there is that value they get as well. Uh, but also obviously on our side of things, having an intern, um, just as an opportunity to help us alleviate some of the workload, uh, as far as the clerical workload. Um, and there might be opportunity within that now, cause if engineers move them back to public works and we have office available, then we might be able to more easily do that. Uh, but I think it'd be a good opportunity for partnership for us to take a look at. Uh, but I think it'd be a good opportunity for partnership for us to take a look at a little bit. But I think it's something that if we did that ongoing and just dedicated some funds towards that, it's, it's something that just gives us a good pipeline of people. Um, we might not necessarily be able to get them hired. The goal for them is yes, to get them hired into that, uh, organization. As we grow, maybe that's a little bit more of an opportunity. Uh, but in the short term, it'd be an opportunity for us to just, uh, get a little bit of assistance, clerical assistance, uh, while also providing. And, and we can look at what the overall kind of cost structure is. Uh, I want to say they pay in between some, they maybe twelve to fifteen dollars an hour. Uh, so we can kind of think about that and budget a number. So, uh, so I get increases. That's just a number, three hundred and twenty hours. We, we want to say that's what we budgeted, that's what we're going to leave it as that or however we want. It's sort of up in our hands. They're, they're, they're a very willing participant, um, and they, they would love to partner with us. Something, uh, I've used in the past with, using, using UGA, uh, to partner with, to be able to get, it just helps you get things done, to be quite honest. Uh, and we can have them sign and do that, uh, for confidentiality, uh, that we can get with Bubba on. Uh, but if we wanted them to handle the non-confidential items, it's still something that frees staff up to be able to handle other things. So.
Sounds good.
So I'll, I'll, I'll work on putting that together. Uh, all I need is job descriptions. I mean, kind of take a look at that. Uh, any, any other miscellaneous thoughts or anything, topics that we did not have listed to cover? I'm, I'm not surprised.
I'd like to mention one thing. I think you may have talked to you, Larry Hanley lives on Hanley Road. He's in the process of wanting the county to close one end of it. One end of it runs over into Madison County and all it is is a cut through road. And so this, this sort of fall out for us to work it. And so I'm letting you know upfront, it, it, he'll probably come before us, you know, at work session or either in June or something, I mean, uh, May. So keep that in mind. If you have a chance, we'll ride over and look at it. It's a pretty good little ride over there. It's Hanley Road.
Yeah, I, I did talk to Mr. Hanley, um, and that'll be something we have to consider for the future too, is just the thought of road abandonments. So, you know, we do want to make sure we're considering location, usability, just a lot of those, um, because the thought of road abandonments, we just want to make sure that it's not something that's going to be of impact for us in the future. Cause obviously if you give it up and it's not maintained at that point, we can't go back and take it back. Uh, it's going to be too difficult, too costly for us at that point. Uh, so we do have to think about just how we want to proceed with road abandonments in the future, what that means for us. Because, you know, just keep in mind as we do grow, that there may be opportunities in certain areas that maybe that could be a useful road to us down the line. Um, you know, I, my general feeling would be, I mean, we just want to be careful about that, just so that we're making sure that it's not areas that we feel like have opportunity to grow in the future, that if we close it off, now all of a sudden we aren't able to, uh, uh, to do anything with that area at, at a later date and time. Uh, but, but I'll probably have, uh, Mr. Hanley, if not, uh, this word session. Oh, of the offices.
I told you, I talked to John Phillips.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, I, I talked to him a couple of times. Uh, so, uh, so I told him I at least wanted to, uh, kind of work through that a little bit. Just so, thinking through with John. Just any other miscellaneous?
Uh, I'm going, I, I think the rec board has a meeting tomorrow and I'm going to talk with Randall some more about it. But I want to see this, uh, moving forward on getting the GM renamed after Michael Metfield. But just making sure that doesn't get pushed out.
Yeah, so, uh, so I, so I was emailing with Randall, um, maybe yesterday or day before, then just making sure that we're shooting for it. The plan is that I want to shoot for, towards the end of May.
Okay.
Uh, with that, um, and, uh, instruction I gave the staff on that is, you know, want us to do that unveiling, but I also want to use that as an opportunity for, uh, sort of building a community event. Uh, so I've told them, I mean, let's look at, let's look at the unveiling, but let's also look at some type of event. I mean, get, rent a couple of bouncy houses, cook some hot dogs, hamburgers or whatever the case. And let's make it a, into a, we can do that portion of it, but then let's then separate it afterwards to make it into a community event. You know, since we kind of don't have econ development within our structure, we can kind of use the rec department to help with that. So that's been my instruction. So we said we're still on pace for that.
Okay.
It's been a little bit of a, a little bit light on the communication. So, so I'm trying to make sure we try to push to get that done. Uh, so I want to make sure that that's something we did.
Yeah, I think that would be a good thing, turn it into a community event too.
Yeah, uh, so I, so, so as far as, uh, emailed me yesterday that they're still on pace for doing that. And, and, and we're probably also too thinking about events, uh, Memorial Day. Depends on, um, I know with the Veterans Memorial, whenever that gets dedicated, uh, if that does happen to be Memorial Day, I think they're still on track to possibly do that. We'll try to partner, uh, I think there's a group, no?
Um, I spoke with Mr. Harris today.
Oh, yeah.
The Memorial Day because of the Burke sale, it's pushing it back for when we're actually dedicating.
Okay, okay.
So.
Okay. Okay, well, whenever we do get to where the Veterans Memorial is dedicated, we'll probably try to do the same thing and see if we can take that into community as well. Uh, we want to try to, you know, since like I said, we don't have econ development or tourism, I guess, then we want to try to do as much as we can to use like rec or whatever other little things we have going on to build community events as much as we possibly can. The goal down the line would be that, uh, you know, we start having like five Ks and we can rec, uh, but we want to like think about five, fifteen K, whatever the case. Uh, so we can have community events as much as possible. We can partner with the cities to do those, but I think that would be something important. Those type of things, I just, uh, down the road, uh, put some effort in so we're doing those things. That's, that's a lot of getting the excitement for the community, the buy-in towards all these other avenues we want to venture down. Is, you know, they're thinking, you know, what is the county doing for me? And, you know, those are the things that we would in turn be doing for them. So, so those, those plans we'll see in the, from the next retreat. All right, anything else, uh, miscellaneous? But if, but if you are seeing them, you can still go ahead and ask them about that though.
Well, I'll keep pushing and make sure he stays on schedule.
Yeah, yeah. So they're tired of.
That's, that's just something that's important to me.
Yeah.
Just, just because I know Michael Metfield.
Yeah.
It is very important, I ain't gonna lie.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we talked about that a couple of weeks ago, but he said, like he told you all, he's, they're working on it.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that and the veterans thing doesn't get, that we have that. Cause that's important.
Yeah, so we're sort of trying to, trying to give us on a relative decent schedule, get to these. I, I wanted to get to where families calling us.
Yeah.
Asking, you know, are you doing it? Uh, you know, we need to get this done before that, we reset. So the plan is hoping, any other miscellaneous?
I think still paving at the memorial across the street in the office. Is that, is that project done or are they still working on that?
Uh, still working on that. Uh, I think I saw them out there taking a look at it. Uh, so I know they're out there looking, so I know that's still on plan. I know, I know some of the things like that, the paving and the concrete where the old flagpole is, some of those I know are behind. Uh, just from the lot of rain that we've had and a lot of issues that we've just had, issues getting behind. Terry probably mentioned that, uh, but I know that some of those are just a little bit behind.
Do, do we know when the, the, uh, first responders memorial is going to be? I mean, we want to do all that together, right? Do we know when that's coming?
He didn't mention when it was going to be completed today, but he said that it was behind.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm going to clarify with him if that's going to be a separate dedication.
I was, I was thinking it would be from what I understood, but I know with these getting behind, it's, it's been a little bit difficult as far as trying to coordinate, uh, everything getting done. But we can double check this to make sure about exactly.
Yeah.
Trying to wrap up as, as quickly as possible. Awesome. Uh, it's about, uh, my brain. So, um, so yeah, so that just wraps up everything that I had retreat wise. Um, you know, just, these are just, like I said, just broad ideas and thoughts that we want to have and think about as we're going forward. Um, it's just important that we do that. Whenever we have our next retreat in the fall, then we'll invite the departments. Um, you know, like I said, I, I mean, I told the departments, I mean, it's not, I didn't feel like it was crucial they be here for this. We'll still send this information out to them. So they'll have all the information that we went through today for, for their viewing. And they can, and we can talk through anything about that. Uh, but this was a little bit more the decision of are we doing this, uh, and not so much departmental wise as, uh, you know, how do they do it? Uh, now that we've kind of made some decisions going forward with the things we are, yes, going to do, now we can go to the departments and we can talk about the how we do and get that type of understanding. Uh, and like I said, as we get to the fall retreat, then we'll invite all departments to make sure they're all here with us. And this might be our meeting room for that, uh, but then we'll have everybody here. Uh, we'll probably have maybe a couple of presentations from departments, uh, that I would encourage, just so they can talk about, uh, specific initiatives they have. But then at that point, we're able to give a little bit more direction towards everything that we're looking to do, uh, within the course of the year. So, uh, that would generally be my idea of how we should do it year to year. Sort of have a separate board retreat, uh, and then have a one with all departments. So just so we can set strategic planning and then we can get, get know what's opposed to that. Uh, but I think those are the ways that, uh, kind of effectively get everything across. So then that way we're all on the same page before we go to departments to give them that direction and, and there'd be like a miscommunication of whatever.
We're good?
Cool, that's all I have to say.
Well, let's get, the, the next items, announcements. I think we pretty much covered that, but does anybody have announcements? Anybody? Let's say, thank you to Derek and to Ashley and to Caleb for putting all this together. That's, this is a good idea. I think we need to do this on a regular basis, cause we covered some good ground. Uh, and just remind everybody, our next meeting is a work session on April twenty seventh. So anybody else have announcements? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to her, Mr. Gerald.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Officer.
All right, Commissioner Foster seconded the motion. All in favor, sign vibration, right hand. Brian on there. All opposed, same sign, motion will carry four to zero and we stand adjourned. Thank y'all for coming today.